Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to call this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees to order, and we are going to start with a roll call. Madam President, yes?
Jeff Church.
Here.
Ellen Minetto.
Here.
Diane Nicolet. Here. Joe Rodriguez.
Here.
Beth Smith.
Here.
Angela Taylor.
I'm here.
Our newest member, Adam Mayberry.
Good afternoon, I'm here.
Thank you. And our student, Victoria Gomez.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
All right. Fantastic. And this is for our Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to have the McQueen High School. Color Guard will present a flag. This is in honor of, we have Veterans Day Week coming up. We're going to ask the audience to please stand. We're going to play a video of the singing sergeants. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remove all hats and remain standing until the color guard has left the floor. The colors are presented by members of the McQueen High School JROTC program. Today's color guard is commanded by Cadet Staff Sergeant Alyssa Damonte and is assisted by Cadet Command Sergeant Rick Rain-Hawkes, Cadet Private Alex Kalamar, and Cadet Corporal Nafisha Hussein. Special thanks to Chief Holler, this year's McQueen High School Color Guard Advisor. We're going to ask our other veteran on the dais today with us, trustee Joe Rodriguez, if he will lead us in the pledge.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to ask you, please stand while we have a little video called the singing sergeants. Please, please remain standing until the flags have left the room.
(Music) If tomorrow all the things were gone, I'd work for all my life. And I had to start again with just my children and my wife. I thank my lucky stars to be living here today where the flag still stands for freedom and they can't take that away. And I'm proud to be an American where at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the men who died who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today. Cause there ain't no doubt I love this land. God bless the USA. God bless the USA. From the lakes of Minnesota to the hills of Tennessee. Across the plains of Texas, oh, from sea to shining sea. From Detroit down to Houston, New York to LA. Where there's pride in every American heart and it's time we stand and say. Oh, and I'm proud to be an American where at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the men who died who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today. Cause there ain't no doubt I love this land. God bless the USA. God bless this country. And I'm proud to be an American where at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the men who died who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today. Cause there ain't no doubt I love this land. God bless the USA.
All right. March. Hope. Well. All right. Thank you to the McQueen High School Color Guard for that special tribute as a gift close to, to Veterans Day. Okay, we're going to go on to Agenda Item 2.01, and this is our consent agenda. We're looking at consent agenda items 2.02 through 2.09 that are before us. And we made sure that Adam had a packet before him so he can catch up and stay up as much as he can on this very first meeting. Welcome again to our newest trustee, asking for the trustees for your pleasure in terms of consent agenda items 2.02 through 2.09. Okay, we do list guest and public comments first. Okay, thank you, JJ.
The board received an email from Dinah Mayer.
Okay. Thank you so much. And none in person, thank you so much. So, public comments now close. Okay, list the pleasure of the board in terms of these agenda items. Trustee Smith?
Sure. I move that the Board of Trustees approves consent agenda items 2.02 through 2.09.
Okay, thank you very much. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
I see trustee Rodriguez leaving in for a second. Okay, we already got public comment. Any discussion on any of the items? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Got you. You can do a thumbs up or something. There we go. Thank you, Adam. All right. And then, any opposition? All right, seeing none. The motion carries. Let the record show that it is unanimous. We're going to go on to, we're going to go on to consent, we're going to go on to Agenda Item 3.
We'll do 4.01.
Yes. We're going to do the resolutions first. We have a couple of resolutions that staff has asked, but we do have some guests here. So, we're going to reorder a little bit. I'll take the chair's privilege to do so, take Agenda Items 4.01 and 4.02. Again, we have resolutions in place and we do have some guests. And so, we're going to start with Agenda Item 4.01, Adoption of the Washoe County School District Board Resolution 21-020, a resolution recognizing school psychology awareness week in the Washoe County School District, and this is for possible action. Dr. Lamarcus. It's like you, you hear me, you hear me reading this, so come, come on up, sir. Okay, Dr. Lamarcus, and I don't know if it's Brandy Olson here? As well as pre, anyway, I'll turn it over to you, sir. Go ahead, Dr. Lamarcus.
Sure. Thank you very much for the record, Paul Lamarcus, Chief Strategies Officer. Our school psychologists are critical members of our safety teams within every building. This is an opportunity where our staff are recognized nationally and within the state, and so, we thank you for your recognition of our school psychologists. I have not seen Brandy, so she might have thought it would be a little bit later on the agenda.
Yeah, I have a staff request to move it up, so, so just, we're sorry that we missed it. We do have a resolution here, and I'm just going to ask the Vice President if she wouldn't mind reading this resolution for psycho. You want to do that? Will we do it? Just give it to our new trustees. We give that one, yes, give that one to, and then we give this one. This is going to be another resolution, which will be next. We'll give that one to trustee Smith. Trustee Rodriguez, do you mind reading that resolution on behalf of school psychologist Awareness Week?
All right, I'll just start from the top.
Yes.
Whereas the Washoe County School District acknowledges students learn best and advance academically when they are healthy, supported, and receive an education that meets their individual needs. Whereas to enhance the whole child, schools must apply sound psychological principles to instruction and learning through multi-tiered systems of support. Students' intellectual, social, and emotional development meet the needs of the culturally diverse population and promote early intervention to ensure academic success. And whereas school psychologists are especially trained to provide the continuum of mental health services and academic supports that provides help to remove the barriers to learning, enable teachers to teach, and students to learn. And whereas student, or school psychologists helps families foster healthy development and our school-based experts in psychology, psychological development and learning. And whereas school psychologists are often the leaders in violence prevention, intervention, response, and safety in our schools. And whereas the Washoe County School District recognizes the vital role that school psychologists plan in the professional and academic development of children in Washoe County. Now, therefore, the Board of Trustees do hereby recognize November 8th through 12th, 2021, as School Psychology Awareness Week in the Washoe County School District.
Well, thank you very much. And I see we do now, we have some guests who have come. Sorry we switched up on you. And I see, anything, Brandy still sitting, whichever others. Dr. Lamarcus, why don't you go ahead and?
This is Brandy Olson, the Director of Psych Services and School of Awareness.
Okay.
We have Emma Dickinson, the school psychologist, and Meredith Barton, school psychologist.
Please, please come on up to the mic, yes.
Yeah, hi. For the record, my name is Emma Dickinson. And so, good afternoon to Superintendent McNeil, Madam President, our trustees, esteemed members, and our community. On behalf of the Washoe County School District's psychologists and our coordinator, Brandy Olson, we'd like to thank you for acknowledging us and recognizing the critical role that we play in our schools and community. These past two years have been unquestionably difficult for all of us, with many of us dealing with loss, significant changes at home and work, and coping with the divided times that we are in. Our families and the communities that we serve have been significantly impacted beyond what any statistics or numbers can tell us. School psychologists have been incredibly busy with being flexible with their role to adapt to these, the challenges of the pandemic. In one school, a school psychologist facilitated food bank distributions which benefited the entire community. In most schools, we have been dealing with more severe behavioral concerns, increased numbers of referrals, and helping schools design systems to address the learning gaps caused by the pandemic. The suggested ratio for school psychologists is 1 to 500 students, according to the National Association of School Psychologists, and the ratios in our state ranges from 1 to 1,000 to 1 to 3,000. With these ratios, it is difficult to practice a comprehensive role in line with our training. However, we do provide an array of services. As school psychologists, our primary goals are to help our students achieve in all aspects of their lives, including academic, social-emotional, and developmental. School psychologists hold a master's level, educational specialist, or PhD degree to provide services and to be licensed by the Nevada Department of Education. Some of the things that we do and are trained to do, provide, include analyzing data to inform interventions, developing training, and implementing threat assessments within our schools and practices at the individual and systems level. We use these data to increase our students' academic and social-emotional functioning. We engage in crisis counseling and intervention in collaboration with our counselors and social workers. We also engage in direct intervention services, social skills support, and counseling with students. In administrative-level positions, we work collaboratively within our school to support multi-tiered systems of support, positive behavior intervention instructions, instructional support, and leadership teams to help reduce behavior challenges, improve classroom and school climate so that all students may access learning. We help administrators effectively identify, collect, and meaningfully interpret data, support accountability, and school improvement efforts. We also collaborate with the English Language Development Department to individualize instruction and monitor student progress to improve behavior and learning and to reduce over-identification of culturally and linguistically diverse students for special education. We work to acknowledge that diversity of thought is a good thing. In closing, school psychological services collaborates at the district, building, and student level to support Washoe County School District's youth and family. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and I think something you said that was really, really important, and I'm sure all of us as just trustees and many families and so on in the community, is the impact that COVID-19 and the changes between the 2019 and even some now, and the 2021, 2022 school year, and just the important role that our school psychologists have played in just helping students navigate and manage and deal and survive and, and then get to thriving during this, this really, really difficult time. If you read any of the research, or just the reports from across the country, I mean, behavior issues have been, have been on the increase during this time as students get back into school, and it's just, it's dealing with all of these things, so your role is so critically important, always has been, but I think really magnified during a time like now. You have, oh, fantastic. Our new trustee with his first comment. Trustee Mayberry, just make sure you get your speaker on, sir. I see your hand.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes.
I hope you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
I did just want to make my first comment and congratulate the school psychologists and counselors and thank them for all that they do. As a dad, I appreciate it. I've utilized some of their services. They do great work, so thank you all so very much. It's a worthy honor. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Mayberry. Thank you very much. We have public comment on this?
The board received an email from Andy Haycock.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Well, we can't appreciate you enough for what you do. Brandy, was there anything else you wanted to add this year? Okay. Well, since this is a presentation, let's just go ahead and give them a round of applause for them and the psychology services, the psychological services that you and your colleagues do in, in our schools across, all across this district. Very much needed. Superintendent?
Thank you very much, President Taylor. School psychs know I'm the daughter of a retired school psychologist, and so, that's near and dear to my heart for everything that you all do. And I also have to say, it's not only for our students, but our other staff members as well, and you all have been tremendous on uplifting all of our staff members and providing those mental health supports for all of us. So, thank you so very, very much, and have a wonderful Appreciation Week. Thank you very much.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. I just recently learned that you are the daughter of a child, a retired child psychologist. Fantastic. Okay, we do have another resolution, and again, we have guests here, so we want to get to that. We're going to go to Agenda Item 4.02.
President Taylor, need to take action on this item.
Oh, it was, it was an action item that we owe. Then absolutely, then, then what I want to do is just see if, if my colleagues are in agreement, I'm sure we are, that we will, oh, yeah, that's right, because we're doing the resolution, that we adopt resolution, Washoe County School Board Resolution 21-020, which is, which is what recognizes School Psychology Awareness Week. Looking for a motion from the floor.
I move that the Board of Trustees adopts Washoe County School District Resolution 21-020, a resolution recognizing School Psychology Awareness Week in the Washoe County School District.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. There's a motion. Is there a second? Second by the Vice President. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? All right, the motion carries. Let the record show it is unanimous, this resolution 21-020 on behalf of School Psychology Awareness Week. Now, we go on to our second, our second resolution for the board to consider. This is Agenda Item 4.02, Adoption of Washoe County School District Board Resolution 21-021, a resolution recognizing National Apprenticeship Week and the importance of career and technical education. This is something we started doing a little bit ago, and so, it's, it's great that we get to do this on the annual basis. So, Dr. Troy Parks, have you down here, sir, as our presenter, and you can bring up Mr. Hartzog or whomever else may be a part of this with you.
Thank you, President Taylor. Yes, we are with the school psychologists, also excited about the National Apprenticeship Week, and we do have soon-to-be Dr. Josh Hartzog, as well as Kathy Smith, and we have some guests here from our local sheet metal workers union. So, would you guys come on up?
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Did you want to do the proclamation first, or do you want to?
It's, what's those best with you, Josh?
I think if we can have some of our, our representatives of the Building and Construction Trades community come up and say a few words first, that'd be great. For the record, my name is Josh Hartzog. I have the privilege of being the Director of the Department of Signature Academies and Career Technical Education. Madam President, Superintendent McNeil, and esteemed members of the board, thank you for having us. I just want to take a little moment to introduce a few of our leads by name. As Dr. Parks alluded to, I'm joined first and foremost by my departmental colleague, Kathy Smith. She is our CTE Coordinator who oversees our skilled and technical programs of which Building and Construction Trades are a part. And then, I have the honor of here being joined by a rather large contingent of our Building and Construction Trades community. Just by name, I'd like to call out Randy, Randy Canaly, President of the Northern Nevada Apprenticeship Coordinators Association, Rob Benner, Secretary-Treasurer of the Building and Construction Trades Council of Northern Nevada, Tom Blotsky, Sheet Metal Workers Training Coordinator, and Diane Chad Rukie, Assistant Training Coordinator for Plumber and Pipe Fitters, and then Diane Vanderwell, Lead Recruiter for the Northern Nevada Apprenticeship Coordinators Association. And with that, I will be happy to turn the mic over.
Okay, would, would love to hear. Who's first?
I guess I'll be the lucky one.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Josh. Appreciate that. Superintendent McNeil, thank you very much for having us. President Taylor, all the other trustees, thank you very much for having us here and for having this resolution and having you recognize the importance and value of the Building Trades Registered Apprenticeship Programs in presenting us with this resolution today. As you may note in the packets that you received, hopefully you have, you all received these, the Northern Nevada Apprenticeship Coordinators Association, also known as NACA, is currently training about 700 or over 700 apprentices in the 11 Building and Construction Trades listed in the pamphlet, which includes such trades as bricklayers, construction craft laborers, electricians, heat and frost insulators, ironworkers, operating engineers, painters and allied tradesmen, plasters and cement masons, plumbers, pipe fitters, pipe welders, and HVAC service technicians, sheet metal workers, and NV Energy apprentices for electrician, linemen, fitters, and welders and the like. We're preparing Northern Nevada's workers for the high-tech, advanced construction jobs, and we are creating the workforce that's going to be needed to continue to attract the many new innovative businesses. Our area is wanting to be able to keep our economy both diversified and thriving. The Building and Construction Trades Council of Northern Nevada and the Training Center is represented by NACA. Thank you and welcome you to come tour our facilities if you would like and see what we do and how we are offering workers an earn while you learn perspective that gives them an opportunity for a construction career that will give them a more than livable wage with health insurance and good retirement plans that aren't just an alternative to college. These programs are actually all accredited with community colleges. They get college credit as they go through these programs. They don't pay for it. It's paid for by the program, so instead of building up debt as they go through these programs, they are actually making money, and most of these apprentices will earn, you know, somewhere $150,000, $200,000 with zero debt as opposed to incurring debt, and they start at mid-level range positions. They aren't starting at the bottom because that's where they've already been. And we even have one program at least, and others that are working on it, that they actually turn out from the program and they get an associate's degree. So, it's very good, and just wanted you to know that we are also partnering with Washoe County School District and seeking grant money to help assist in implementing the North American Building Trades Union's multi-craft core curriculum, which will be able to be taught at CTE level in CTE classes, and it's a type of pre-apprenticeship program that will actually help prevent or present a pathway into these apprenticeship programs for the students coming out. So, I thank you for celebrating National Apprenticeship Week with us and help us put an end to us being the best kept secret in Northern Nevada. We don't want it. We want to get this word out. And we have some other people that would like to speak a little bit, and then, of course, the ones that we would like you to hear from are some of the actual apprentices. But thank you all for the opportunity.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Superintendent McNeil, President Taylor, board. Rob Benner, Secretary-Treasurer of the Northern Nevada Building and Construction Trades Council. I'll keep it short, but I just want to talk about how the opportunities that we're going to see in construction here very soon. As we all know, we just passed a huge infrastructure bill there in Washington DC, and that money's going to be hitting Nevada here pretty soon, and it is going to create so many opportunities in construction. We're talking, they're saying that bill's going to create 140,000 jobs just here in Nevada, and it's going to create tons of opportunities for our students here in Washoe County to get into construction, and if they choose, they can, you know, get into, come into our apprenticeships and go through the four or five-year apprenticeship programs and, and be well on to being a journey person or foreman or superintendent or business owner or whatever they choose, because our programs aren't just, aren't just, you know, aren't, aren't an end when they turn out, but there's, there's paths where they can continue and build on to their career. So, a lot of opportunities coming up for, for the kids coming out of the Washoe School, County School District. I'd like to, I'm not going to take too much more time. I'd like to, we want to have some of the apprentices that we brought from the Sheet Metal Workers Apprenticeship talk and give their, a little bit about their stories. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Just make sure you give us your name for the record.
Definitely. My name is Cody Camacho. Graduated from North Valleys High School. I've been an apprentice for four years now. I'm on my last year of my apprenticeship, and I think it's been a great opportunity for me. I've worked in warehouses, I've worked in all these other places, but nothing's been comparable to the union, so they're, they're one of those workplaces that, you know, you work and you get to go to school as you work, so not only do you learn in school and learn knowledge about sheet metal, you're also doing it hands-on out in the field, which is different than a college. So, I like that they also have annual raises that every six months, you're in the apprentice program. You get a sizable raise instead of getting the little 2% raises as you go. So, it's, it's definitely a great opportunity, and I also think it's a great opportunity that you guys will be willing to teach the Washoe kids at this school, that there's also other trades out there than trade schools and colleges, because unions is actually a really good deal, and I've actually really enjoyed it since I've been here.
Thank you, Mr. Camacho. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Donovan Braxton. I graduated from Foothill High School in Henderson, Nevada. One thing that I didn't realize until I became an adult was how important education is to me, and it's, I'm getting a little teary-eyed because it's, it's very important to me, not only educating myself, but educating others. And I've taken so much away from my family and my community, you know, everybody, and this has given me the opportunity to give back, you know, and it's just been, it's been an extraordinary opportunity for me, because I was a troubled kid. I've been in and out of jail, but I've also been to college. I have three college degrees, you know, and I just didn't find those as fulfilling as, at the end of the day, they weren't as fulfilling to me as what I'm doing now. You know, I, I go to work, I come home, and, and I have money to take care of my family, you know? My daughter just turned one, and I was there because, you know, I, I'm able to, to make money instead of worrying about my college debt. Like, am I going to be able to pay this back and still put food on the table for my family? And, you know, it's just, I, I do hope that you guys end up considering us, because this is a huge, huge opportunity for, for the youth, for kids who don't know what they want to do in their lives, for kids who have been troubled. It's taught me responsibility. It's taught me camaraderie. It's taught me, like, brotherhood. It's taught me everything, and I just, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braxton.
Hello there. My name is Carl Reddington. I went to HUG High School. Yes. Unfortunately, the Yes, unfortunately, the first two years I was there, that was 14 classes, I failed every one of them. So junior year, I got introduced to a program called Jobs for America's Graduates, and if you're familiar with that, you might know that they take struggling kids and introduce them to different avenues of processing their emotions, their difficulties in class. Long story short, that led me to either one of two things, the military, National Guard, great option, or the unions. And the reason I ventured towards the unions, because my father is a union man. And I think the unions, they represent a certain, before I go and say too many things that don't mean much, I think they represent an opportunity for somebody who didn't have the best upbringing, didn't have the best community, and really turns them around. I want to spare you the sad details, of course, but the home life isn't good, you know, before this, and, you know, many, many things that you don't expect somebody to graduate with the 3.5, you know, for the millennium, you know, that's not something I can get, you know, and, you know, right now, I can just say, I'm only 22, but I already bought my first house, I refinanced, actually, and that's because, you know, after three years, I mean, I'm making such a wage that is comparable to a college degree, and as somebody before me said, you know, we actually do get the college degree from this, and the pathways for growth don't just stop after, oh, you did your four years, see you, have a good life, you know, good luck in the trade, you know. We're starting weekly, you know, training sessions, come on back, you're already a journeyman, that doesn't matter, come on back, learn some more, get some more skills, and, you know, I just, I think this is a really good opportunity. And the last thing I will say is I greatly appreciate how fast you guys were, because at Local 26, man, we will be in a meeting forever just waiting to get through all the different segments, and you're just bam, 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 okay. That's all. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Reddington.
Hello, my name is Daniel Braxton. I'm Donovan's brother. I also had somewhat of a troubled childhood, I guess. Education is very important to all of us. The union has a lot of rumors about it, where they say, you know, they're a bunch of lazy guys who do nothing, they go to work, stand there, get paid, go home. That's not true. It takes a lot. You have, you have to have the knowledge to do what we do, and we, we're learning, we're, we're intaking a lot of knowledge down at the JETC, down at these schools. It's not just guys being hired and thrown out into the work field and just hitting things with hammers. There's, you know, I mean, there's a lot of math to it, there's, and a lot of business management skills, too. You have to know how to talk to people. It's, you know, we're not just a bunch of guys grunting and lifting heavy things. But as far as opportunity goes, there's so much opportunity, so much opportunity. I, like my brother, I have a couple of college degrees as well. I wanted to be an animator, I wanted to be a writer, I wanted to do all of these things. Very competitive fields. I worked at an animation studio for a couple of months until it went under, and, you know, I thought, what am I going to do, what am I going to do with my life? And then I worked in a warehouse. That was fun for a bit, and then I felt stuck. And then my brother talks to me about the union. He goes, hey, let's see what the union has to offer. I go down and talk to the union rep, he finds me a job the next day, and I'm thankful for that, because sometimes you're putting in applications and you don't get a call back for weeks. I got a job the next day. I met a lot of people on my first day. I learned a lot of new things on my first day, and it's just been an experience that I haven't been able to compare to anything else. The learning, the tools, the, just having your hands in something, being able to build it, being able to see, like, I'm sure there's guys who have built this building or done maintenance on this building, and they're just like, man, I did that, or when I was a teenager, you know, I put these walls up, you know, it's like, there's nothing like that feeling of helping your community, you know, seeing progress in the city you live in, the neighborhood you care about, things like that. It's just, it's great. I mean, there's a future in the trades, the construction trades. A lot of people don't know it, or maybe they do and they just don't want to see it, but, I mean, the more we, the more you put in, the more you get back. It's that simple. The more you put in, the more you get back, and that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Braxton.
Hi, my name is Tom Blotsky. I'm the Coordinator for the Northern Nevada Sheet Metal Workers 26. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. I started this career in 1993. I was a bartender at Western Village, and it just wasn't for me, so I got into the trades. My grandfather was a teamster for 40 years, and he introduced me into this trade. So I started as an apprentice in 93, and by 95, I turned out, no, 98, I turned out, and then 99, I became an instructor. And then I taught night school for five years. It was grueling. I had small children, and I was a superintendent at Squaw Valley, which, I don't know if you've been up there, the big buildings there, that was my first job. So it was tough, and the reason why I'm telling you that is because what these guys are doing is tough as well. It's hard, it's hard work. So after that, I went into the trades, became a business owner. I had my own business for, until the economy crashed, of course, and then I went back into the trades. I worked for Melrose Heating and RHP, a lot of the bigger contractors here in town. I also worked at Tesla as a project manager. I was in charge of over 100 people doing tool install. I don't know if you've ever been in charge of 100 men, but it's pretty tough. The one thing I can say about my career is I love people, and I love teaching people, and I've spent my whole life learning. So it's been, it's been a blessing just being a coordinator, but I wouldn't have been able to do that if it wasn't for the union, so I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blotsky. Okay, do you have public comment on this item?
Valerie Fianaca.
Welcome, Ms. Fianaca.
Thank you. I got here a little bit late, but I'm so glad I got here right in time, because without this group and this apprenticeship program, my oldest son would not have gotten his Eagle Scout, and that's a weird story, because Chuck here was a part of his troop when he was a little, part of my troop when he was a little guy. But the apprenticeship program, my son decided to build a gigantic barbecue out of brick, and he knows nothing about bricks, but at a church, and the apprenticeship program, I thought, well, Tony, how are you going to do that? And he said, I'll figure it out, Mom, and who did he go to but the apprenticeship program? And they brought all their skills, and they taught him how to lay brick, and they taught him how to do things, and it worked out pretty good for him, and it's still at the church, I think, still standing. And so I just wanted to give a shout out to the apprenticeship program. It's one of the best things that the school district sponsored. I don't know if the school district sponsors it even, but I'm glad to see you all here, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fianaca. One thing I would say, just as we, do we have other public comment on this, JJ? Just on this, this is part of, one of the things I had to learn when I joined the board was I have more of a higher ed background, and I thought, everybody, you go to school and you get out of high school and you go to college, that's what you do. And then as I learned more and more about these other tremendous opportunities in the trades, right, in other applied technology, all kinds of other fields, and it's just, it's just fantastic to see the way that CTE career and technical education has grown in the district since I've been a part of it, and just every year as we just celebrate the apprenticeship program, and then I love that you bring, you bring students with you, and they tell their stories, and it makes a difference in people's lives, and they have great careers and can provide for their families and get them back on track, is that, I mean, all of that is a part of what we do, and so to be able to be in partnership, I believe, and as my colleagues are nodding and as we're looking and really feeling proud, this is part of what, this is part of what we do. Yes, we do, we educate students, absolutely, but part of that is so that they can live here college and career ready. This is the career piece. This is a part of that. This is, you might not necessarily see one of the quote-unquote three Rs as you say in this, but it's hidden in that, because you get that along the way. We've got some college degrees over there, right? You kind of get that along the way, but sometimes you got to hide it, right, to get to some of those students that are really kind of challenging to grab, so I'm just so excited and just so continue to be very proud about the partnership with the apprenticeship program, with the trades, I mean, the others that we work with and so on, just very, very excited and very honored to be a part of it. So if it is the pleasure of the Board, oh, no, we have a, trustee Smith has a resolution, and then I'll ask the Board if we would like to accept this resolution. Trustee Smith?
I do, and thank you so much, President Taylor, for this honor. This is a topic that is very, very dear to me. Both of my grandfathers were machinists. My father is a mechanic. My uncle owns his own drywall business. My younger cousin is also a plumber's apprentice. So my entire family is in the trades, not entire, but most of everyone, so I was definitely very much raised by people in the trades, so it is with great honor that I read this Board resolution. Whereas the Washoe County School District is committed to providing opportunities for all students and recognizes the importance of career and technical education in preparing students for college and career options, and whereas apprenticeships serve an important role in allowing students to obtain work experience, classroom instruction, and transferable credits, and whereas the advancement and well-being of the United States of America depends upon the continued development of skilled workers in their chosen fields, and whereas there are more job openings than job seekers in the United States, and the expansion of apprenticeship will help bridge the skills gap to fill these jobs, whereas the National Apprenticeship Week is celebrating its seventh anniversary of raising awareness of the vital role apprenticeships provide in creating a qualified and highly skilled workforce in diverse industries in Washoe County and across the nation, and whereas the Washoe County School District recognizes that robust apprenticeship programs provide tangible value to both job creators and apprentices with the potential to increase productivity, improve diversity and inclusion, and reduce recruitment and training costs while providing a pathway to prosperous careers for job seekers. Now, therefore, the Board of Trustees do hereby recognize November 15th, 2021 through November 21st, 2021, as National Apprenticeship Week in the Washoe County School District, adopted this ninth day of November 2021.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. I'm going to go to trustee Nicolette.
Before I make my motion, I would like to share that I'm the proud mother of a 42-year-old son who graduated in Washoe County School District and way back when, when it was VICA, and we called it vocational education. He and his friends, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the name of the teacher at Reed for automotive, and they won several awards in automotive, and we're very proud of them, and I too am, I'm a lover of the trades. That's just the truth, and I'm so proud of you. Here I go. I move that the Board of Trustees adopts Washoe County School District Board Resolution 21-021, a resolution recognizing National Apprenticeship Week and the importance of career and technical education.
Thank you very much. Dr. Nicolette, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm going to give it to her, because she, because you're a trades kid, so we'll certainly go with that. There's a motion on the floor, and a second, we've had all the public comment. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition, oops, sorry.
Aye.
But thank you, I'm sorry, didn't want to leave you out there. Trustee Mayberry, all right, any opposition? All right, there is none, so seeing that, the motion carries unanimously, we accept the resolution to recognize National Apprenticeship Week and the importance of CTE. Fantastic. Let's give them a hand as well for all their work, for what you do, keep doing what you're doing, great job, and thank you for taking, thank you for taking the time to be here.
Let me say a couple of words.
Oh, absolutely. Superintendent, Superintendent, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, President Taylor. Randy, you know I'm going to call you up here.
He's trying, he's trying to sneak out, you see him, right?
He is. Randy is very near and dear to my family. He has been a mentor. This happens every year, right? I get emotional. He has been a strong mentor for all of you and for my son as well, and since it's the last time I get to thank you publicly, I'm going to thank you from the bottom of my heart. And then also for all of you, my chief facilities, he's messaging me, so Washoe County School District is actively recruiting for journeymen, skilled tradespeople in electrical, HBAC, and carpentry fields, so please see Mr. Adam Steersey.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you very, very much.
Yes, very good to put that plug in. No, we appreciate you. Thank you so much, and continue to go work in the programs, and, you know, when you finish with that, come see us. Yep, come see us. Thank you. All right. All right, great resolutions, yes, great resolutions, great resolutions. Okay, we're going to jump back a little bit in our agenda to Agenda Item 3.01. 3.01, this is Discussion and Acceptance of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, ACFR, used to be called the CAFR, is now the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the fiscal year ending, for the period that just ended, okay, that ended, that has already ended, June 30th, 2021. And then turn it over to ourselves, I was going to say CFO Mark Mathis, who was not sitting, he was not there, okay. We have our controller here in front of us, controller, right? Ms. Young.
Jessica Young, Controller, for the record.
Yes, that's you, I turned it over to you.
Well, thank you for coming and listening to our presentation today. I wanted to start off by making sure everybody understood what an annual comprehensive financial report is, and it's actually a set of financial statements issued by a governmental entity that conforms to the accounting protocols issued by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. So during the year, the school district reported on 55 different funds, and they are grouped into three types. Governmental funds are used to account for most government functions, and the district reported on 48 government funds this year. The general fund is an example of a governmental fund, as our grants are also recorded that way, capital projects, student activities, and debt service are all considered governmental funds. Proprietary funds are used to account for business-like activities, and the district reported on four proprietary funds this year. The Nutrition Services Fund is an example of a proprietary fund. And lastly, our fiduciary funds, and these are used to account for assets held in a trustee-type relationship. The district reported on three fiduciary funds this year, and the Scholarship Fund is an example of a fiduciary fund. So these funds are all grouped together and reported on based on type and measurement focus and basis of accounting. The ACFR reports on all of the funds that the district has, and it includes, in addition to that, a transmittal letter from our CFO that talks about, like, fiscal policies and other initiatives and events that took place during the year. The Management Discussion and Analysis provides a narrative of the financial statements to walk a user through what the numbers mean, and the statistical section presents historical information about finances, operations, demographics, and the economy. As you are probably aware, NRS 354 requires an annual audit to be performed by a certified public accountant and submitted to the Board of Trustees within four months of the end of the year, and the audit consists of an external review of our financial statements to ensure that they comply with governmental standards and fairly present in all material respects the financial position of the district's funds. This is the second year that we have had our audit performed by Crowe LLP, and here to report on the audit results is Jeff Johnson, partner at the firm.
Great, well, thank you for that introduction. And I try not to take it personally when everyone runs to the exit, when the auditors get interrupted. get interrupted. It happened again today.
It's, it's personal.
Well, good afternoon. Again, I'm Jeff Johnson, a partner with Crowe, and it's my privilege to be here to provide a quick summary for you of the audit results for the year ended June 30th, 2021. I have a brief slide deck that condenses down this 250-page report into about nine slides, so I'm sure everyone will be thankful for that. And, all right, so on the first slide here, we talk about what our responsibilities are as your auditors. Our job is to ultimately express an opinion on the financial statements as well as for federal compliance related to the district for the fiscal year ended. We do our audit on a test basis, which means we start with a risk-based approach, looking at where are the most significant balances within the financial statements, and also the areas that are susceptible to risk related to whether they are properly stated or not, and then design an audit approach accordingly. So part of that is looking at the internal controls of the district, and then ultimately based off of that, determining what further substantive testing, testing of details that we need to do in order to be able to determine that we have enough information to be able to ultimately render that opinion for you. So that work is done over several phases throughout the year. We actually started this work back in May, May and June, and that phase is, like I said, talking about the ultimate, the planning, the risk assessment, as well as looking at internal controls. And then we come back in August after you close the books, and actually we'll do the tests of the numbers and the financial statements related to the district, and that was in the August, September timeframe. And then ultimately completing and working with the district on the final report here to present to you, and that was done in October. And then we met with the Audit Committee last week to summarize the results with the Audit As far as new things in this report for this year, there was a new accounting standard. This is GASB 84 that was required to be adopted for this fiscal year end. And essentially, this standard is a cleanup for all governmental entities on what was considered a fiduciary fund, and you heard Ms. Young talk about how a scholarship fund is a fiduciary fund, and that's correct. In prior years, there were more things that were considered fiduciary funds than under the new standard now or no longer are. An example of that is your student body activity. And so the student body funds in the prior years was a fiduciary fund, and the current year it was moved as part of a special revenue fund. And so that resulted in an effect of about $9.5 million to your opening net position as we brought that fund over to where it would align under the new accounting standard and then rolled it forward for the current fiscal year. The other was GASB 98, and this is a technical correction for us as professionals here. We used to refer to this as the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and we now refer to it as the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. As the previous acronym for Comprehensive Annual Financial Report was not the best thing to be referring it to in the world, so, so we've changed that. Ultimately, management, we start with management providing us numbers to audit, and ultimately, at the end of the day, we come back to you with numbers and our opinion on them. And I'm happy to report that there were no corrected misstatements, so this would be any changes that we had to make, that we discovered as part of our testing, that resulted in some sort of material event that required us to change those numbers that were given to us by management. So that is good news to report to you, that there were no audit adjustments. There also were no uncorrected misstatements, and this is the smaller difference is that we go through the audit, we track them to make sure they don't aggregate into a material number. So again, we have no uncorrected misstatements. So from your numbers perspective, very clean results there, and good news. Some of the other items we're required to communicate to you as your auditors are put in writing here on this slide here, so we had no difficulties in completing the audit. We had no disagreements with management. We were not aware of any of the consultations with other accountants, so that was if management didn't agree with something that we thought and discussed, and they went to our competitors and tried to pit our competitors against us. And so that would be something that would need to be brought to your attention, and so we don't have any of those to bring to your attention. And then there were no other significant or adverse events that happened during the audit, and certainly, as we told the Audit Committee, you know, when those types of situations arise, we don't wait till the end of the, end of the process here to bring those to your attention. That would have been elevated much sooner, and I'm happy to result, or provide you that there were no significant or adverse events related to the audit. All right, so our part of this work ultimately in this, in this big, thick report is really the audit opinions. Those are the pages that we provide our audit opinion on, and so there are two key opinions in this report. There's a financial statement opinion, so the opinion related to your numbers, and you received an unmodified opinion. That's the type of opinion you want on your audit report. So your financial statements comply with all applicable accounting pronouncements, and they're free of material misstatement. The second opinion is a federal compliance opinion. So because you receive more than $750,000 in federal assistance, you're required to have a federal audit done, and so we completed that audit as well this year, and you received an unmodified opinion. So again, a clean opinion related to federal compliance. And then this year, we had to test both of the, really, the funds that come from the coronavirus relief fund, as well as the ESR funds, which are both really the stimulus money there that you received, and so programs that really haven't been audited before because they didn't exist before. So that was a bit of a change versus normally the same types of major programs that the district has and has audited every year. Just a couple of financial highlights for you is, again, trying to pick out some important pieces of this big, thick report that you have. The total assets of the district at the end of the fiscal year were about 1 point, almost $1.9 billion, and your total net position is a negative $319 million. Some of the key reasons for that number being negative, you might wonder, are your net pension liability and your net OPEB liability. And so the net pension liability, that's your proportionate share of the liability for your employees for their pension retirement obligations, and then the net OPEB liability is for your post-employment healthcare and life insurance. And then your net change in net position actually went up $53.4 million for this fiscal year end. So at, more specifically on the general fund, which is your, essentially the fund that you operate with and do business with on a daily basis, your fund balance at June 30th was $58.2 million, which was a positive change by $5.8 million from the prior year. And lastly, as far as significant items of note is you did have a bond issuance in the current year of $130.5 billion, and so that is reflected in this report as well. And just one more comment here on, related to pension and OPEB liabilities, as they are significant balances in your audit report here. You know, for the pension liability, you participate in the PERS plan there at the state level, and so you share proportionally with the rest of the governmental entities that participate in the, in the PERS system. And so on an annual basis, that liability is calculated at the state level, and then your proportionate piece of that is reflected in your financial statements. And just as a perspective, Washoe County School District represents about 5% of the state pool, so your size in relation to everyone in the state that participates in that plan. That plan is actuarial, that liability is actuarially calculated, and then, you know, under the assumption that it'll be amortized over about a 25-year period.
If I may, what's actuary, actuality, actuality?
An actuary is someone that's much brighter than, than me, for sure. It's, you know...
And clearly me, because I can't say it, so...
So, I mean, the use of an actuary is to be able to model essentially what's going to happen in the future, really to be kind of a fortune teller, if you will, based off of modeling of current information, whether that includes mortality, that includes investment rate of return. There's a number of factors, healthcare rates, and what they've done and what they will do, and essentially, they develop very advanced calculations to be able to ultimately spit out a projection of what they think that liability will be either now or at some point in the future.
Okay, understandable. Thank you.
Yep. And they go to the school a long time for that. That's why there's not a lot of them around. Secondly, is your OPEB liability. So this, again, is your healthcare benefits for retirees, as well as your life insurance as well. And again, same deal, or same situation here, except it's on a single employer basis, so these are the, you know, just the district's plans and members that are participating ultimately in this liability. But again, it's actuarially determined based off of a number of different factors that they put together to come to that calculated liability. And on my last slide here, just to bring to a conclusion, my thoughts here, the district's financial statements are presented fairly in all material, excuse me, all material respects. You had no audit adjustments, and you have no findings. So there's also no internal control comments or federal compliance findings that we need to bring to the board's attention. So ultimately, very clean audit report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. And I would just like to close by thanking the district staff, specifically Mark, Jessica, and Robbie in the Fiscal Services area, but also a number of folks throughout the district that helped us complete this audit. There, you know, as you can see, we started back in May, and we just wrapped up a few weeks ago, so it goes on for quite a while. And so, but everyone is very willing to help us and to be able to be very timely, you know, very quick turnaround from a state perspective here is when these reports are due, and so their fast work also helps us to be able to complete on time and to be here today to present it to you. So thank you to everyone, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jensen. Well, first, let me check and see, do we have any public comment? I'll just, JJ?
The board received an email from Dinah Mar.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, public comment is closed, so we'll go ahead and start trustee Church.
I've got a few questions. Excuse me if I stand up, my back, we've been at this at eight this morning, so my back doesn't always accommodate that. I called it an audit before, and somebody corrected me. Can you kind of explain to us, this is an annual report, not an audit, so how do we define that?
I would define this as an audit. This was an audit completed under government auditing standards. I ultimately render an independent auditor's report to you, so I would very much call this an audit. There are pieces of this report, because it's an annual comprehensive financial report, that go above and beyond what's required in a basic governmental audit, such as, you mentioned, the transmittal letter, the statistical information in the back of the report, you know, ultimately, those are pieces of the report that aren't required in a basic audit, but they're required if you want to go to the level of completing an annual comprehensive financial report, but this is an audit.
Turn, turn them, okay.
And, you know, many people consider this dry, but I wait for the day, I read it the day it comes out, and...
Appreciate that.
Yeah, look at our budget and look at the OPEBs, which are a major concern, and you don't really render an opinion on that, on how we deal with it. You just make sure that the reporting is accurate, more or less. Is that correct?
That would be correct. I mean, we ultimately look at the assumptions that the actuary used to determine whether they are reasonable, and question those if they're not, or if we have questions about those, but it's not my job to say what that, or what you should do about your liability.
Okay. And by the way, I should have said this at first, I've seen audits from other local agencies that had material weaknesses, which is like red flags and misstatements, et cetera, et cetera. The staff work on this is awesome. This is just, to come through this with not a single misstatement correction is just incredible. I mean, I don't think the audience really realizes that, or maybe the other trustees do or don't, but it's fantastic. It just really speaks well of our staff, from Mr. Mathers on down, so I think that's just really incredible. One quick thing, and this may be for our controller, page 242, 241 deals about capacity of schools. Do we know where that information came from or what it's based on?
That's going to be a management.
41?
240, JJ has it up on the screen. She's getting it.
Did she read my mind ahead of time?
She had it handy, I can tell you that. So she'll have it on the screen for those who are here who may not have the hard copy. It's pretty big. And then we're just going to ask Ms. Young, who's coming?
Robbie.
Robbie, okay.
Hi.
Thank you, sir, please, just give us your name for the record, Robbie.
Robert Carson, for the record. Those numbers come from our Capital Projects Department.
Okay. I'm just going to, just for the record, I just want to put them on the record. Total elementary school enrollment to capacity ratio, 74%. Middle school, 74%. High school, 85%. So 74, 74, and 85. But I will point out that we have many, many elementary schools, many of them are over 100% capacity, while other ones are not, but, like, you can't bus people to Incline Village, so, you know, you're not going to totally solve that by zoning, but I just wanted to put some of that on the record, because I'm always referencing that when it does come to Capital Projects. But I think that's, I think that's all the questions or comments I had, but again, just excellent job by staff, and thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Church. Other questions, comments? I do think that capacity question is one that's, it's always good to just remind people of how that, how that looks. Kids don't come in certain neighborhoods in neat little packages so we can place everybody and, right, and all of that. And then remember, as modulars are added, they don't count, and that, and that throws the numbers off as well, and some of that. And then, thank you for acknowledging that this is, that this is an extraordinary report for it to be so clean. And Mr. Jensen referred to that quite a few times, it's just, it's so clean and so clean. So just thank you for acknowledging staff for that. We have a great staff here in this, so... Any other questions, comments? And Adam, I think, I was sitting there when JJ gave this to you about two hours ago, so I'm sure you've had a chance, trustee Mayberry, to review the whole thing.
It'll be a quick...
And, yes, so, yeah, I'm sure you've had a chance to... Oh, we have, we have other comments here, so I'm, I think, we just go with trustee Smith, and then we'll go with Dr. Nicolette.
Thank you, President Taylor. This is a phenomenal report, and I feel like this is good news coming from our district. If I had to say, I would put this on a banner outside. I think these are the amazing stories and talent that really represents our district. These are the good messages that we should be putting out to the community. The fact that a report like this, for this much money, came out as clean as it did, is an absolute testament to the talent, professionalism, and trustworthiness of this school district, and thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Smith. Dr. Nicolette?
Sorry.
I will steal a term, ditto, and I will...
Word for the day.
I will also say I am, I am the proud wife of an auditor, a CPA, and been married for 48 years, so he's taught me a lot. And I will say that this report is a classic exemplary book of getting into the weeds and then putting it all together so that people like myself can understand it, and I appreciate that. And I also want to say that there is no doubt in my mind that you, you and the school district have had to create a respectful and trustful working relationship to make this happen, and I appreciate that for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolette. I saw trustee Mayberry, then I think trustee Church has a comment as well, comment, question. Trustee Mayberry?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'll be brief, and I echo trustee Smith and trustee Nicolette said, I, you know, this organization's, in terms of its budgets, the size of a Fortune 500 company, and you just can't create your own revenue, so I really applaud this work and have a lot to learn. The only question I have is, I'm curious, the ending fund balance at the end of the fiscal year, what percent of that was the overall general fund? Can you answer that?
I'm going to take a stab, because we just talked about this. It is just below 12%, and the CFO was nodding. I'd like to, I'd like to say I went through all this and figured that out myself. I didn't. I just remember it from a meeting we had earlier, because I've had enough coffee to remember that. So just, just under 12%, trustee Mayberry. You had another question?
I remember that meeting. I thought it was the, the current budget they were referencing, but that's, that's...
The CFO was nodding, he's nodding and pointing, so, so that's, but if we stay around there anyway, so it would be relatively the same. It's just under 12%, sir. Okay? Other questions? Trustee Mayberry? Nope, hand down, okay. Trustee Church?
I just want to find it again, I lost it. I understand our annual budget is roughly just under a billion, like 900 million. Where do I find that so I can show it to folks when they ask? I mean, that's one of the big questions we get, what's your budget? And I know with the loss of students, we were down just under a billion.
So there's different ways of looking at that. So on, the general fund is presented on page 36, which shows the original budget, the final budget against actual. Beyond that, there, in this report, there is not a spot that would aggregate, as far as I'm aware, district-wide what the budget would be for all of your funds, but the other funds are presented budget to actual further back in the report, back in the, kind of the 100s section of the report. It'll go fund by fund, showing you the budget to actual performance.
So on page 36... So on page thirty-six, what would be the best number on here that I'd look for?
Or is page thirty-six the appropriate page?
Well, so I guess, I'm not sure, I'll take an interpretation of your question here. You know, ultimately, your final budget, you started with a balanced budget at the beginning of the year, which is the third line from the bottom on page thirty-six in the left column, the zero, and then next to that, you have a final budget that was expected to be a negative thirty, thirteen point six million, and you ended up with a favorable ending fund balance change of five point eight million dollars, so. I, beyond that, I would leave it up to, I guess, management to determine what they would consider as important factors in your budget, but that's what I would look at.
How about our controller, would she? You know, that's, I'm a layperson, I'm not an accountant in any way, shape, or form, don't even play one on TV, so what, can you tell us roughly when I, how to answer that question?
Well, if you're, if you're looking
Let's get your mic on, there we go.
If you're looking at page thirty-six, then you see that our final budgeted revenues were four hundred and eighty-two million dollars for the general fund?
You see that at the top of the page?
Third line down, second column, or fourth line down, sorry.
Does that help?
Where did, where did I get that figure of just under a billion?
We're going to ask Mr. Mather.
I think that was total, total assets, if I remember correctly.
And then they include some capital as well, let's look, Mr. Mather, waiting on that.
So you're correct, trustee church, Mark Mather's for the record, you're correct, trustee church, that our budget is usually around a billion dollars the last three years to, so, so for each fund type, when you go to the back, you'll see, just like on page thirty-six, an original budget number, then a modified final budget number, then actuals. And so you would have to add that up. We do not in the annual comprehensive financial report provide a master schedule like that. We do in our PAFR, our public annual financial report, will be coming out by the end of the year.
And I think where I got it, if my memory is right, we submit something to the state every year.
That's right, and, and that's, that's exactly right. And so in that budget, we do tally it up. In the annual comprehensive financial report, it's more of a, again, we do fund accounting here, and so an accounting report will break it up by fund type, but you're absolutely correct, it's shown in our budget and tallied up, and it is just around a billion dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Mather. So it seems, so this, this is a general fund, you find the same page for, for other funds and put them together, that's, that should land you, or you think, or are we waiting until the end of the year when the public one comes out and they'll do it for us?
Thank God for calculators on my cell phone.
Absolutely. Or fingers and toes, I don't know how many you have, so. Okay, any other comments on this? Thank you so much, Mr. Jensen and Ms. Young, and Mr. Mather for weighing in on it. We are, this is a report for us to accept, that is the pleasure of the board. We've received already public comment on it, so if there are no other comments or questions, just looking for a motion to accept the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year, this is the fiscal year that just ended, fiscal year ending June twenty twenty-one. Trustee church?
I move that the board of trustees accept the annual comprehensive financial report, ACFR, for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, trustee church, if there's a motion on the floor, is there a second? Seconded by the vice president, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, I see, I see your thumbs up, trustee Mayberry, thank you. Let the record show that it is unanimous, the motion carries. Usually, you'll usually do a little wrap on this, that's, so I'm going to go ahead and lean to you, because
I would love to do a wrap-up on the ACFR. This is a very exciting day, and I absolutely agree, this is something that should be celebrated. And I'll just say a note, too, with the amount of federal dollars that our district has received and will continue to receive through the American Rescue Plan, it is something, you know, to also do a shout-out to Mark and his team, and then also to our grant staff looking over those federal dollars. So, thank you very, very much, great job.
Thank you, Mather superintendent. Thank you so much, thank you for being here, Ms. Young, thank you so much. That's a really good point, because that's going to piece those numbers up as well when we start looking at those other funds, right, adding the funds together, that's going to, that's going to piece that up a little bit. Okay, looking at agenda item, looking at bridge year reporting, why don't we go ahead and take that one before we jump into a break? Okay, so this is now agenda item three point zero-two, Washoe County School District Strategic Plan Bridge Year Reporting, remember, this is the bridge year reporting, the year that just ended, right, not, not the recovery plan, but the year that just ended. Bridge Year Reporting of Metrics Related to the Following Goals and Possible Action to Provide Direction to Update or Revise Metrics As Needed. Goal four, provide and continuously improve operational systems that are effective, efficient, transparent, and accountable by using meaningful structures and processes. This is for possible action, we're staying in the same financial mode to keep that cellphone and calculator out, and we will turn it over to our CFO, Mr. Mather.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor, Dr. McNeil, and trustees. Happy to present our bridge year reporting of the strategic plan to you. This is for school year and fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one, or as we call it, school year twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-one. Oops. So again, you've seen this before, you've seen other offices come and report on their metrics and outcomes to you, and so we're happy to do that again today. Obviously, you know, our mission is to create an educational system where students achieve academic success, and as you can see, develop personal civic responsibility and so forth. And so perhaps you may be asking, how does finance play a role in that? Why, why are you here, basically, in reporting? And we are, you know, in finance in a support role. We support and service our schools and our other departments to meet, you know, their outcomes, but more than that, you know, the financial status and stability of the organization is incredibly important as kind of a necessary precondition, if you will, to achieve those goals. So if you're in an unstable situation, it's awful hard to make academic progress. And, you know, really, for many years, Dr. McNeil lived through it, and Dr. Taylor did as well, the district found itself overspending its revenues. And so we saw our fund balance decrease from twenty-eleven, I think it was seventy million dollars nearly exactly, to forty-one million dollars in twenty eighteen. So we basically overspent, outspent our revenues by nearly twenty-nine million dollars in seven years. And that led, as, as Dr. Taylor remembers unfortunately, to some really unfortunate years where some of the really difficult budgetary decisions had to be made. There were reductions to positions and staff, there were cost shifts, and just a number of things we did to try to get to a place of financial stability and sustainability. And, and I am happy to report, and we'll get into it, that, that we did achieve that over the last three years, we've had a budget, a balanced budget, we've had mild minor surpluses in our general funds, so we're not, no longer outspending our revenues. And, but, but all of that is to say, you know, these financial metrics and outcomes that we're going to talk about really are incredibly important. We, by having a stable organization with stable funding, we can talk about improvements to the system, right, versus cut, 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 and that makes it really hard, again, to, to be in that mode of, of improvement. So specifically, the objective within the bridge strategic plan that we are responsible for is goal four point one, ensure that operational systems, central services, and finances are integrated and sustainably aligned to best support the needs of students, teachers, schools, staff, and departments. So again, we talk about sustainability, we want to be in a place where our expenditures are roughly in line with our revenues, we're not in an overspending mode, and, and we have an adequate fund balance, right? So that's incredibly important to know, there's enough in the savings account to weather unexpected times, whether those, or recessions, which are somewhat more predictable. But I'll, I'll take us to just merely a year ago, when COVID hit, talk about unexpected, right? No one thought there would be a pandemic like that. And what the school district and all other districts in Nevada were facing was the prospect of state revenues plunging as a result of basically the closure of Las Vegas Strip, and that sales tax and gaming revenues that go into the state coffers that fund K through twelve drying up, and that happened for a few months, but we were looking at severe cuts to our DSA funding, our disruptive school account funding, our per pupil funding, and a number of other scenarios. Without an adequate fund balance, to whether that, that would have meant, again, reductions to teaching staff, other staff here, programs, deferral of things like textbooks that we had to do for many years. So that's why a fund balance is so important to maintain, to act as a buffer, to mitigate or, or even stave off staffing reductions, or cuts to employees' compensation, which we had to do during the Great Recession, and so forth. So, again, you'll hear sustainability and stability a lot when we talk through these issues, and, and what we wanted to do in this bridge year is ensure that we have that stability and have that sustainability to carry us through these difficult times. We know COVID requires additional resources, and you've heard about the psychologists, and we had so many other needs that had to be funded. So being in a better financial place like we are now is incredibly important. And, and again, we're in that support role, we're financially supporting what we do. So with that kind of as context, I will turn it over to Jeff Bazo, our budget director, to talk about the first goal.
Thank you, Mr. Mather. As we, as we get into this, just as a reminder for everyone, would mind, please, wearing their masks, completely covering their nose and mouth, I'd appreciate it. Thank you so much. Mr. Bazo, go ahead.
Thank you. For the record, Jeff Bazo, budget director. So the first metric we're reporting on today is to maintain a structurally balanced general fund budget. So a structurally balanced budget is when budgeted revenues equal budgeted expenditures, so you don't have a surplus, you don't have a deficit, you're not planning on dipping into fund balance or reserves to, to operate through the year. And as Mark explained a few moments ago, over the last several years, the district had to make a lot of difficult decisions to, one, achieve a structurally balanced budget, and two, maintain. So I'm happy to report today that we did meet this metric of maintaining a structurally balanced general fund budget, and it marks the third consecutive year that we've done so. But as you know, that doesn't mean the work is over. Budget staff right now is starting working on the FY twenty-three, or fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget, and we'll be back to you in the winter with presentations on that. And as part of that process, we'll also have a four-year financial plan that will consider the, the wind down of our stimulus funding and how, how the district shifts out of that into, into the future. And with that, I'll hand it back to Mark to discuss the next metric.
Any, any questions as we move through these metrics, as we go? Okay.
Why is this, whoops, there we go. So our next goal is to maintain an ending unrestricted fund balance for the general fund of at least eight to ten percent of operating costs, and the way we measure it here is the actual fund balance compared to actual expenditures and other uses, i.e. transfers to other funds. There are different ways to measure it, but we just go actuals to actuals, so you know it's real. So we just talked about this, but, you know, this is a kind of showing you, not all the way back to twenty-eleven necessarily, but as you can see, our fund balance fell over the last decade, and then began to reverse over the last three years. So we do stand just under twelve percent fund balance when looking at actuals. So we met and actually exceeded this goal. Our board policy three zero five one talks about what we do when we actually exceed that fund balance target of eight to ten percent, and so we have a number of options that we can talk about. We'll actually be coming to you, when I wrote this, I said December, and I didn't realize the board policy committee doesn't meet in December, so we'll actually be coming to you next week with a recommended change to that board policy and that fund balance target, so we can talk about that next week. But, you know, twelve percent's good, but in no ways it, you know, we're not rolling in dough here. It represents basically a month and a half's, a month and a half's expenditures. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends a reserve or fund balance of at least two months of operating expenditures, so we're not there, but certainly, we're a lot better than where we were in twenty eighteen. And so with that, I will turn it over to Jessica for our last goal.
Can we ask questions along the way?
Please, absolutely, trustee church?
If we had a fund balance
I'm sorry?
If we had an additional fund balance above the eleven point nine percent, what's your thoughts on using it for some kind of a trust fund for OPEP and health insurance?
So when we talk about fund balance, that's a one-time source, right, and it should be matched against one-time uses. And, and that, again, is some of the choices we have as a district when we look at this fund balance now that exceeds this fund balance target. So once you, once you spend that fund balance, it's gone, and it's not there for future years, obviously. So when we talk about setting aside monies for OPEP, you can do that on a one-time basis, but, but that's it. It doesn't address any recurring needs or, or long-term liabilities. It is there for one-time purposes, and our fund balance policy says that, that basically ongoing expenses need to be paid with ongoing revenues. And how you get yourself into trouble is you say, oh, great, I'm not suggesting you're saying this, but, you know, oh, great, our fund balance is kind of high, let's go ahead and, and use that for, you know, additional teacher positions, for example. Well, once you burn through that one-time money, then you're stuck with nothing to pay those teacher positions in years two, three, or four. So you have to be really careful. If, if, if the board was inclined to transfer a portion of the fund balance to our OPEP trust, that's certainly something they could consider, but again, it's a one-time use.
Yeah, I said it a little bit differently than like hiring new teachers, because that's a debt. I mean, we owe that debt, and if we can put it in the trust fund to increase that trust fund rather than bill pay-go, so I'm asking, this is not my expertise, so, you know, that's why I asked the question, but, go ahead.
When, when we talk about OPEP liability, it really is complicated, and I'm, I'm getting out of this conversation that you and I are the most fascinated by OPEP probably in, in the, in this room or in the city. So it's very complicated, it is a liability, an actuary calculates, and that liability can change greatly based on the assumed discount rate, for instance, based on the assumed investment return of the, of the assets we have put away for OPEP. So it can go up and down quite a bit, which is what we saw this last year. Our, our financial condition improved by fifty-six million, and that was based mostly on actuarial fluctuations, assumptions, and flutrations and assumptions. So what I want to do is reassure you that we pay our annual OPEP costs every year. And so when we talk about an OPEP liability, we're really more talking about how it gets funded. Do we sock away monies in a reserve to pay those, or do we pay them on a pay-as-you-go basis out of the health insurance fund? And we've kind of used a hybrid or blended approach to do that, and I guess I would, I don't know if I'm answering your question, I guess, you know, I'm happy to talk about it in more depth if you'd like, but it's not an OPEP liability that we're not covering in some way. We're always paying for retirees' healthcare every year, and we have a legal obligation to do so.
Okay, and the other thing, this is going to require your crystal ball, but my crystal ball says inflation is on the horizon. Is now a good time, or should we wait?
I'm sorry, is now a good time?
For Mr. Mather to discuss how we're factoring in the inflation rate.
I think, I think that's, I don't think that's outside the agenda, so I don't, I don't see why not.
Okay, so we, we are seeing inflation right now. It's above five percent currently. So there's a number of ways we, and we're seeing it, for instance, in our diesel, diesel gasoline prices, just like you're seeing it when you go to the pump, right? And so in the current year, certainly, we, we feel that inflation, for instance, in the diesel costs of our buses, which is why we have a sizable general fund contingency account, and, and we actually talked about raising that contingency account back in March when we looked at that, at that fund balance policy. So that's our buffer during the year to absorb increased inflationary costs, whether it's gasoline or elsewhere. There's a real question as to whether inflation is temporary, based on based on all the stimulus in the system and so forth, or whether, you know, maybe the Fed's not doing enough to deal with it, and maybe it'll be here to stay for a while. I'm not sure where we'll be, say, two or three years from now, whether inflation will, you know, will have a handle on it or not. But, you know, we will factor that into the budget discussions that we'll have beginning in January, and there will be some object codes that you will see have, we will have to increase the budget based on inflationary pressures.
Yeah, see, as she said, few will be one, and as you just mentioned, so.
Yeah.
Okay. And then it sounds also that you'll be coming back with some recommendations based on policy in terms of any surplus and what might. And so that might be an opportunity to continue the question you have on OPEB, trustee Church, at that time, so.
That's right.
Okay. Michelle, I think you're up.
Okay. Well, the third metric for business and finances portion of the Bridge Strategic Plan is to receive an unqualified or unmodified opinion.
Sorry.
There we go. Is to receive an unqualified or unmodified opinion for the annual comprehensive financial report with no material weaknesses noted and minimal or no findings. So in fiscal year '20, we did achieve that metric, and as well as in fiscal year '21. I thought it'd be interesting to talk a little bit about what types of opinions auditors can issue on financial reports. So when an auditor issues an opinion, it tells the users of those financial statements what level of confidence that they can have in the financial statements. So when an auditor issues an unmodified or unqualified opinion, by the way, that's as good as it gets. It doesn't sound that exciting, you know, an unmodified opinion, but that's the gold standard that we're striving for. And so when, after gathering and testing samples of transactions, the auditor finds that the financial statements fairly present, in all material respects, the financial position of the district's funds. In other words, the auditors are asserting that there are no material misstatements and that these statements can be relied upon by the users. If the auditor were to issue a modified or qualified opinion, that would mean that after the testing of the samples was done, the auditor would find that the financial statements did contain material misstatements, but that the misstatements are not pervasive in the financial statements. And so there may be some material misstatements, but the auditor, in the auditor's opinion, they would not detrimentally impact the decisions that users would make based on these financial statements. An adverse opinion is when, after gathering and testing the samples of transactions, the auditor finds that not only are there material misstatements, but they are pervasive throughout the financial statements. And that should serve as a warning that these financial statements are not to be relied upon. And then the fourth type of opinion is a disclaimer of opinion. And an auditor would issue this type of opinion if they were unable to gather enough evidence on material items to form an opinion on those financial statements. And so the assumption would be is that the information that they couldn't access would have material misstatements in it. And this normally would only be issued after the auditor has attempted to gain access to this information but has been unsuccessful. So why is it so important to receive an unmodified report? Well, there's two reasons that I came up with. And first of all, it helps members of the public to have confidence that public funds are being managed responsibly. And second of all, it helps investors make decisions about lending money, which impacts the cost of financing projects for the district. So if you're really interested, you can find the Independent Auditor's Report located in the Financial section of the ACFR, and it begins on page one with the opinion being on the top of page two. Okay?
I think that's fantastic. Thank you for that. And we can't see him, but I just believe our new trustee, trustee Mayberry, has a question as well that he'd like to add, so if we can get him back on the screen. JJ, that would be great. And then you're flipping back and forth. Thank you so much for managing that. Okay, trustee Mayberry, you're up, sir.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. And again, I just try to wrap my head around so much, so I'm really trying to limit my questions, and I apologize if this is redundant. But I just wanted to know from the team if, going back to the ending fund balance, if the federal relief funds have kind of allowed us to stay afloat, if that has contributed to the pretty positive financial situation that we're in in terms of the ending fund balance. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee.
Hope that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you, trustee Mayberry. Mr. Mather?
So again, Mark Mather, Chief Financial Officer. So the audited financial statements that we're reporting on here were dated, are dated June 30th of '21. At that point, we had not received as much, certainly as we're going to receive in terms of ESER funding. We did receive, I'm going to say, $7 million or so of CARES Act monies at that point. I don't believe we'd actually received any ESER II money at that point. So as of the date of this report, no, that isn't a reason why you saw a slight mild surplus in the general fund. However, COVID did have an effect, certainly that kind of flowed through to the financial results. And a lot of that was due to vacancies we have, unfortunately. We have seen, the real reason, the most significant single reason why we showed a surplus was salary savings. And so, and we don't want that for our teachers or custodians or our bus drivers. We really don't. But I guess the good side of the coin, if you will, is that does generate vacancy savings. And so we've underspent our budget, and that's why we showed that slight surplus. But no, in terms of ESER monies, that's coming this year, and that certainly will help our situation, but doesn't reflect on June 30th, '21 results.
It's fantastic. That's even better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Mayberry. Good question. So we had a little bit, but not a significant impact as of yet.
That's right.
Okay. All right. And you're, I think you just wrapped, Michelle, right?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, Mr. Mather, back to you.
Yeah, those are our three goals in the Bridge Strategic Plan. I'd be remiss in not mentioning the important role our purchasing department also plays. We don't have a metric for that. But as you know, Andrea Sullivan and her team are incredibly important to getting the work of the district done. If your purchasing department is, you know, lagging, you're not going to get the purchase orders out to do the work. And they are swamped right now. They are really struggling to get purchase orders turned around like we like. And, but they're doing a great job, so I did want to give kudos to them, too. They have done incredible work within trying circumstances, just like the rest of us. So I did want to mention that, and that really concludes our presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Mather. There are plenty of questions along the way, but if there are some now, there's certainly, any questions on the presentation that we've had, we can look to that. Do we have any public comment on this, JJ? No public comment? Okay, we'll close that and see if there are any further questions. Again, great questions so far. Further questions with Vice President Minnetal?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank you so much. It's so nice to see such a nice savings account, and that's the way I view it. It's just like your personal savings account, you don't touch it because you don't know what's going to happen. And it's just so nice to know that we can trust what you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Minnetal. Further questions? I mean, this has been a little financial piece for our last, say, hour or so, and just continue to just be grateful for the job that you're doing. Certainly, I mean, the way that you've managed the funds and keep us with great ratings and allow us to have some fund balance. We saw that kind of dip a little bit and back up to a really, really strong fiscal situation and some really unknown trying times, especially during that first year, first full year of COVID. Just really can't, just can't thank you and your team enough, all of the work that you do. Other, since no other comments, this is an action item, and what we're looking for is a motion to adopt the, to adopt the other report. I see you're getting ready. Dr. Nicolet?
My pleasure. I move that the Board of Trustees accepts the updated measurable outcomes as presented related to Goal Four, Objective 4.1, and for the 2020-21 school year.
Thank you very much. There is a motion on the floor that we accept the outcomes from this piece of the 2020-21 school year metrics. Is there a second? Second, we have a motion on the floor from Dr. Nicolet, seconded by Vice President Minnetal. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Opposition? All right, the motion carries. At the record show, it is unanimous. Again, thank you very much. We do all have a hard copy of this report. By the way, we all saw it's a real big one. And so it's one of those things that as questions come up, and we continue to do these reports. It's right there. Okay, why don't we take a quick break? Let's take just quick 10 minutes. All right, just take 10 on this, and then we will get back together 10 minutes from now. Let's say 3:53, because I know people will be late. All right, here we go. Let's keep on going. We'll get in a couple more things, and then we'll take our dinner break, but let's get a, we have, we know we have some guests here. And we want to go ahead and we're going to jump down, again, chair privilege, we're going to jump down to Agenda Item 4.05. We have some students here. We're very glad that they are here. And this is part of what we'd like to do, just again, it's, one, we want to learn more about our programs. That was the trustee request. And then, secondly, what a better time to find out more about JROTC than Veterans Day Week. So Agenda Item 4.05, I'll ask staff to go ahead and begin to present, where's? Okay, there we are. Okay, there you are, Scott. All right. Agenda Item 4.05, Presentation on the Scope and Sequence of the Washoe County School District Junior Reserve Officers Training Course, or JROTC, Programming to Include an Overview of Staffing, Funding, Course Offerings, and the Mission of JROTC and Associated JROTC Cadet Activities. This is for presentation and discussion only, but I'm pretty excited about this. Very proud of our JROTC program in our district and how students thrive as a part of it. This is coming from a very proud honorary cadet colonel.
That's right. I forgot you outranked me.
That's right. You're lieutenant colonel, buddy. No, I appreciate it. Thank you, Lieutenant Colonel, for being here.
Fantastic. Good afternoon, Dr. Taylor, distinguished members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. McNeil, and other district administrators that are here or watching virtually. It's my privilege to introduce my wingman today, Cadet Colonel Leo Ketchum, who was our Cadet Brigade Commander this year. And I invited him to come in with me, because there's a couple spots in the briefing one. I'm going to ask him to provide a remark or two, and then we have a questions piece at the end. You might want to ask him some things, get a cadet perspective of where we're going. Greatly appreciate the opportunity to share the good news stories from the JRTC world over the last year and a half. And I was told that I only have about 10 minutes or so. Knowing that a picture is worth a thousand words, I've got a set of visually oriented slides, and I'm going to give you a narrative. Usually I don't like to read things, but I give you a narrative to make sure that we, I give you the full monty here. We have a saying in the Army that the train keeps rolling, so you better get on board or you're going to get run over. And despite the restrictions that the learning in the COVID environment has brought to us, the JRTC train has continued to roll throughout and provide rigorous cadet learning and integrated curricular activities to the best of our ability over the last year and a half or so while keeping our instructors and our cadets safe. And you have a picture there of the superintendent's elite color guard from the last, the last time we had the Veterans Day parade in this city. We didn't get to have it again this year, but we're hoping for next year to do that. Next slide, please.
It's moving.
There we go. So just a quick overview of the program. If you're not familiar, we have 31, currently have 31 instructors spread over 11 programs, and they're supported by the three-man team in my office, myself, First Sergeant Vars, who's my Training and Operations Manager, and Sergeant First Class Adams, who's my logistician. Between the three of us, we have over 28 years of combined junior ROTC experience to support our incredible instructor teams with. Our instructors have spent the majority of their careers working in very uncertain environments with ever-changing requirements, support, and missions, whereas we would say the enemy gets a vote. Responding to the changing requirements and the challenges of the COVID learning environment played to their strengths and enabled them to continue to provide rigorous instruction and adapt our integrated curricular activities to continue learning while keeping our cadets safe. Our programs are primarily funded by our military services as well as the district. The district funding has remained steady since my arrival in 2018 and enables us to provide essential support to our cadets that our military funding is not able to. We are also very grateful for the steadfast support. Over 95% of our funding provides direct support to the cadets and intentionally so. The only certainty about our federal military funding is that it is steadily declining, it's unpredictable, and is pushed to us in small amounts at random intervals. It has been reduced by almost 50% in the last four years. As you may know, our military services also provide half of our instructor pay, which is a pretty good bargain for the school district. You're getting a 20- to 30-year experienced instructor for half price. It's better than a Kmart Blue Light Special. This is our first full year with all of our programs transitioned to the Military Science CTE Program. We're so happy and excited about all that comes with it. It's a three-year program that fulfills cadets' high school requirements for PE, Health, Fine Arts and Humanities, two honors credits, a CPR Industry Certification, and a Career Ready Diploma Stamp. And we're currently working on articulated credit for our fourth-year cadets with TMCC. So it provides quite a lot for the time invested. This in comparison to neighboring states such as California, where cadets only receive a PE credit for their enrollment in JRTC. So we're very appreciative that the district recognizes all the pieces that junior ROTC brings for cadets. And just a photo of our, some of our cadet instructor team there. Next slide, please. So this is a blended mission statement encompassing the mission statements of all three services, Army, Navy, and Air Force. We have programs we have in the district. Now, they're all just a little bit different, but together they provide a clear window of what our programs are intended to do for our cadets. The photo there shows all the leadership teams, both at the brigade and all the leaders, the principal leaders from the programs across the district. We have a little over 1,900 cadets in the program this year. That number has jumped back up again, so we're, we are definitely rebuilding. And Cadet Colonel Ketchum has interviewed and selected a staff this year at the brigade of the district level to allow himself and my staff to mentor them at this highest level. So they're basically planning all of our district events, and myself and my team are mentoring them. So that gives, it gives us a little more meat to the position of being the brigade commander. And it's quite a task in a learning environment for them, because the staff comes from different schools, and I didn't know if, wanted to make a comment or two about what it's been like to be the first brigade commander with a staff and how you pull that together.
Fantastic. You turn that towards you and, yeah, so thank you, Colonel.
I'd just like to absolutely make a comment with our staff. It's been providing a lot more inter-school communication, which has been a problem with 11 schools around Washoe County School District in JRTC. Our brigade-level communication has been a problem at times, but having, my staff members are from HUG High School, North Valleys High School, and Demone Ranch High School. And just having them all being able to communicate and then push out orders through there has been a lot of what, dealing with a lot of our issues of communication, as well as also creating a lot more opportunities for cadets to lead and to make, and to create events for the community as a whole. Like, we have our canned food drive going on right now, where we are collecting food. All the schools are collecting food, and we're going to be able to distribute it out and help our community, and the cadets, and especially our brigade staff, can see what a job they're doing in this level.
Fantastic. If I may, Colonel, just ask, the challenge, I mean, it's great to have all the schools, and then you can interview and make some selections. Are you noticing any barriers, because we do have three, three different services?
I would actually say there is no barrier between them, because one of my staff members is from the Air Force School, North Valleys, and one of my staff members is from the Navy School, Demone Ranch. So it is kind of. School, Demone Ranch. So it is kind of, there is a challenge, as we do have eight Army Schools, and then two Navy Schools and one Air Force School. So that does provide, provide a little bit of a challenge. But overall, the, they're still being represented fairly in our brigade and being able to speak out.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
No, it's great. And because those instructors were Navy instructors and Air Force instructors during their career, their cadets reflect them and their experience. And it's different than Army. So it's so fantastic to get them all together, because they do learn from each other in that. Next slide, please. So we have a full schedule of integrated curricular events planned for this year, and the cadets are pumped up to be competing again with more than 20-plus competitions throughout the year. It's significant to note that all of our integrated curricular teams are mixed, males and females competing on the same team together. And I think that provides some great learning opportunities for all and models the team structure they will likely encounter in their post-high school world. It's unique to high school activities outside of the classroom. We've also established partnerships with junior ROTC programs in Churchill, Carson, and Douglas, and they'll be competing with us this year as well. We're hosting the Silver State Brigade JROTC Championships in all of our integrated activities now that we have all the programs in Northern Nevada participating. We're currently finishing up our fall drill season and heading into the final drill competition at Demone Ranch on the 20th. Spanish Springs is leading by a couple points over Reed, followed by Galena. So if you get a chance to head over to Demone Ranch on the 20th, you'll get to see how it comes out, but it's going to be a close one.
Give us a time on that.
It'll start at 8:00, probably run at 8:00 till about 2:00 or 3:00, depending. There's the awards ceremony at the end.
Thank you, sir.
Next slide, please. We're already beginning our transition into our winter three-position 10-meter air rifle season. This is both an NCAA and Olympic sport, which runs through March and includes a combination of shoulder-to-shoulder, virtual, national, and junior Olympic matches. Incline will kick off the season this Saturday. It's their first time hosting an event since 2015. So it's always difficult to get the cadets there. It's expensive for the buses to go there, but we want to make sure we keep them as part of the team. And so we're hosting these matches, this is a shoulder-to-shoulder match, in the gym, 15 lanes, cadets lined up. So there's a lot of tension and excitement in the room, because your competition is right there on your left and right. So if you get a chance, feel free to pop over for that one. Next slide, please. We'll end the year with a four, with four Raider Challenge competitions, which is our most physically demanding integrated curricular, consisting of 5K team run, one-mile cross-country rescue, physical fitness challenge, rope bridge, tractor tire flip. I got to say, this is a new note, just from today, Spanish Springs High School just returned from the National Raider Competition in Georgia, featuring more than 40 schools. Their male team took second place nationally in the 5K. The female team had three top-five finishes, and Cadet Joliet Johnson captured honors as the top female raider in the nation in the individual Ultimate Raider Competition. So that's, that's incredible.
Fantastic.
I would tell you, that competition has a lot of military academies in it, where they're training all year round. If you go onto our, my district website, under Cadets in Action, I got some pictures from that event. They just came back yesterday, so we wanted to, we wanted to give them some kudos. Next slide, please. Many of our programs will also compete in the annual Cyber Patriot series of competitions, sponsored by the Air Force Association and funded by Northrop Grumman Foundation. Cyber Patriot is the national youth cyber education program to inspire K-12 students towards careers in cybersecurity or other science, technology, engineering, and mathematic disciplines critical to our nation's future. At the core of the program is the National Youth Cyber Defense Competition. It's the nation's largest cyber defense competition that puts high school and middle school students in charge of securing virtual networks, which provides teams with computer-based software and network problem-solving challenges, which are time-based and accumulatively scored. Teams compete on both the service, school size, state, and national level. Each competition is mentally stressful, eight-hour, non-stop session, where the game does not stop or pause. So teams have to eat on the run, make decisions, be decisive and reactive throughout. So that's always fun to watch as well. Next slide, please. The annual Junior ROTC Leadership and Academic Bowl, known as JLAB, sponsored by the College Options Foundation, will also be offered this year for all services, which features both an academic competition, which consists of SAT, ACT, and other core subject questions, and a Junior ROTC Leadership Knowledge Competition. The event is organized with two national elimination competitions and a final championship run, where services pay for the top teams to compete at Washington DC over the summer. So Level One is currently underway. Next slide. We're definitely looking forward to conducting our annual Junior ROTC Cadet Leadership Challenge, also known as JCLC. This year, with all the bells and whistles, we'll have repelling land navigation, we'll have raider skills, high ropes course, aquatics, drone-proofing, kayak fundamentals, and safety certification, leadership roles, and leadership evaluations for the cadets. We've already begun planning this culminating event, which is scheduled for 18 to 22 April here in Reno. We invite all the board members and administrators to come out and see the training our cadets are conducting, and we're always happy to harness you up and take you up to the tower and throw you off if that's your cup of tea. Although JCLC is an Army program requirement, we include our Navy and Air Force programs, of course, to come in training with us, as well as utilize their instructors to help perform the training. JCLC provides opportunity to practice leadership in an unfamiliar environment, experience interacting and training with cadets from other schools in a military setting, provides hands-on experiential learning through adventure training, and cadets get to learn while having fun. We're permanently transitioning this event from Parks, Camp Parks, California to the Reno area, because of the unpredictability of our, of the use of the camp, as well as saving the high cost of travel to and from. We're just, we're low on the totem pole to use the facilities there, and with COVID, they've been open and closed, and we have to have this training. It's so critical to the program. So we're, we're figuring out how we can do it here. And my legacy project is to figure out how I can work with some community members in the district and have our own place here with some of the things that we need to do to do that. So I can share more of that as we get a little farther down the road. But this way, you're all able to come and see the, see the training. Next slide. I wanted to provide just a few highlights from support already this year, although it's early in the year. One of our key components to our programs is to teach our cadets the importance of giving back to our community. Our units have already been quite active throughout our community this year, and some of the photos are up there. You see Reed provided a color guard and push support for hot August nights, and the car auctions, as well as a color guard for the National Tailhook Conference, and they supported the balloon and the air races, along with Reno High School this year. The Superintendent's Elite Color Guard also kicked off their year with a massive 11-member color guard in support of the National Liquor Association Conference, where I can assure you, no cadet drinking was authorized, okay? McQueen Lancer Battalion teamed up with local law enforcement and firefighters and conducted a joint color guards at several 9/11 memorial ceremony locations. These are just a few of the things that let you know that the cadets are out there, and they are active. This is only the beginning of a strong level of community support planned for this year, where our cadets are proud to be the face of Washoe County School District in our community. Next slide, please. Just want to change gears for a minute and take a look at the last year to highlight the resilience of our cadets and our instructors. Cadet Jack Armbrecht of McQueen High School, seen there holding this question, was a finalist in the 8th Brigade Army Essay Contest titled "Learning in a COVID Environment." 8th Brigade encompasses programs in Montana, Idaho, California, Washington, Oregon, Nevada, Hawaii, and Guam. He was, his essay was then selected to compete at the national level, so he was one of the top 10 essays in the country, which is pretty incredible. The Reno JROTC Robotics Team was the first JROTC team led by Cadet Colonel Leo Ketchum. Captain, he was the captain of the team, Matthew Gerard, Cooper May, Megan Mello, and Oscar Colwell. They finished 6th in the state of Nevada and 22nd at the Worlds. The competition is by category and service, but the interesting thing is that, you know, our instructors, we're kind of old, and we're new to robotics. The kits showed up, and Leo and his team built the robots themselves, programmed them, built the stadium, and then because of COVID, the whole competition, which was all, they were held in Vegas, were virtual. So they also had to, had to do that piece. So I wanted to say, if you just want to take a second and share anything about your robotics, and they're there on the, in the center-left picture there.
I'd just say robotics was a very important thing to me, because it all started one day, me walking to the supply room and saying, hey, is that a robotics kit? And decided to start it all up. So it was a very big initiative for JROTC to finally get our robotics team up and going, and especially because our regular Reno High robotics team, which isn't affiliated with JROTC, didn't even compete that year. So the fact that we were able to compete that year was very big, and did show that a lot of our cadets are willing to, ah, sorry, keep on moving throughout challenges like COVID.
McQueen competed in Cyber Patriot competitions last year. Two teams from McQueen competed in the All-Service Division, which is JROTC and Civil Air Patrol of the National Cyber Patriot Competition. McQueen's teams finished 1st and 2nd place in the state of Nevada. And additionally, his top team qualified for the Platinum Tier, which is the top 30% of teams in the nation. So not bad for their first year. Colonel Snellson is very big on the, on STEM and cybersecurity and robotics. So that's a fantastic initiative on his part. The Reed Air Rifle Team, in the postal, their postal air rifle team took first place in the Nevada State Air Rifle Championship last year in May. The Reno Air Rifle Team went to compete in some national competitions at Camp Perry, Ohio. They finished 11th in the National Junior Olympic Championships, and 11th at the Civilian Marksmanship Program National Three-Position Championships. Specifically, Cadet Chloe Bonifant, who is our Brigade Command Sergeant Major this year, and Leo's partner on the staff, she finished 14th in the nation at the Junior Olympics, and Lucan Leniz was 28th in the nation at the CMP. So it's a hugely competitive thing for them, and those are amazing results. As well, in air rifle, Spanish Springs finished 16th in the Army Junior ROTC Nationals Competition from more than 1,700 programs, which is incredible. This is one of my favorites. The HUG JLAB Academic Team qualified for the finals in Washington DC last year and traveled there over the summer. They finished 14th among the 1,700 Army Programs at the national level. Those are three levels of competition. So you can see them in the upper right. They had a few days there to travel around DC and see some of the sights there. It's an amazing accomplishment. North Valleys High School Cadet Adele Kukla graduated from Purdue University's Sterling Aviation Program in Jacksonville, Florida last summer, earning her FAA Private Pilot's License as part of the US Air Force Junior ROTC Flight Academy Scholarship Program. All costs associated with the program, including meals, lodging, travel, and all flight training, totaling approximately $25,000, is paid from the scholarship. And she's pictured there in her Sterling airplane. She's about 3 1/2 feet tall, but she, she's incredible, absolutely incredible. Also at North Valleys, the Cyber Academy, Cadet Ethan Hoads attended courses at Norwich University this past summer in cybersecurity as part of the United States Air Force Cyber Academy Initiative. So he earned one of only 100 nationwide scholarships to attend that specific training. Switching just a little bit here, I wanted to share a metric with you. We have something called a lock-in rate, and that is our measurement of how many of our senior cadets are able to validate their acceptance and funding for institutions of higher learning, including university, community college, vocational programs, military service. We were always pushing our cadets to do something more than just graduate and enter the work world. So our goal was 70% lock-in rate, and we were skeptical because of the COVID year, what we ended up at 76% last year. So we busted our goal pretty hard there, and we're very proud of that. And then along those lines, we had several ROTC National Four-Year Scholarships, which is full tuition, books, and a monthly stipend. So Cadet Aubrey Meehan from Galena High School, Matthew Gerard from Reno High School, and Terrell Calino is here at UNR. And it was nice, he was at the drill meet, this last drill meet, helping out with the grading and everything. So that was great to see him back there. So incredible, incredible achievements. And then finally, next slide, please. I want to thank the district, Dr. McNeil, and the other district supporters who approved our request last fall to restart our integrated curricular activities last spring. We conducted our annual Junior ROTC Cadet Leadership Challenge City Camp, training approximately 180 cadets in repelling, obstacle course, land navigation, and raider skills. Schools also conducted end-of-the-year awards ceremonies, both virtually and in person, and we were able to conduct six air rifle competitions, two raider competitions, and two drill, just to try to get cadets back into. We, right now, we've only got really one-year group that has seen what junior ROTC is really all about, and it's infected, affected the units accordingly. So to sum up, junior ROTC train is certainly still on track and rolling at its usual faster-than-the-speed-of-light pace. Cadets are highly motivated, engaging in leadership and curriculum activities, and serving as a positive force for good within their schools and within our community. And so I just wanted to turn it over if there are any questions, either for myself or for the B.C. here.
Well, thank you, Lieutenant Colonel. One thing I would, would say just for, because we do have some new trustees, can you talk a little bit, and I don't think you have a statue in front of you, but as a whole, on the success rate from an academic standpoint that you find with the cadets involved in the program? I mean, one of the things that, as I began to learn about the JROTC program, which I think is incredibly impressive, is the graduation rates and across, can you talk a little bit about that? And then maybe,
Sure.
Maybe Colonel Caldwell, you can, you can throw in as well, because as a student from that, so why, talk about it a little bit, and then why is that the case?
From my experience, I remember when I first took over my program, I was an instructor in Florida, and I had been there about a week, and I, I got an email from a math teacher. And they said, hey, Jimmy's having a really hard time in my class. He's being really disruptive, and can you help me out? And being brand-new, I was like, why is the math teacher asking me for help with, you know, a cadet? Because I wasn't quite ingrained. And so that became a pattern. And I think because we approach our cadets as if they were our soldiers. We're not just interested in them when they're sitting in our classroom. We are monitoring all of their grades and all of their subjects, you know, through the, through the software database. And if we see they're having attendance issues, struggling in a particular class, we pull them in, and we counsel them, and we involve the parents, and we really try to mentor them towards graduation. And I'm not sure if a lot of the other teachers have the ability to do that, because of what they're teaching. We're teaching something that's character development for the cadets. We spend a lot more time with our cadets, because we don't just have them in the classroom. We have them in all these integrated curricular activities. And so I think that, that experience that our instructors bring to the table, that holistic approach to the cadets, I think that impacts. I know my personal story is that the only reason some of my cadets came to school was because they liked junior ROTC. And we use and can leverage that to, to see the value of graduating and, and help them with the other classes. So I think that's probably where the difference is, especially for the graduation rates.
I appreciate that. Colonel Ketchum, you want to weigh in on that a little bit?
I would absolutely love to weigh in that. Like, especially JROTC, we get such a diverse group of cadets, like usually in some classes, you get academically gifted students and some not. But in JROTC, you get both groups, and the, the teachers will look at both groups equally, and then may provide more support for those who need it. So I know my Colonel, Lieutenant Colonel Sarah Folian, will always help out if a student's having problems in classes, and will always talk to you after class if you need it. And she's always there to be open, and if you need help. And especially, I think what JROTC teaches is life skills, just to a certain degree. Like, right now, in our JROTC class, we're doing our Life After High School presentation, which is where we have to brief our life after high school, where we plan it out, we plan out tuition costs if we're going to college, we plan out how we're going to get there. And then just that idea of setting goals is a big part of success, is being able to set goals and to know where you have to go.
Thank you, Colonel. Appreciate that. Other questions, comments? I'm just, again, just so proud of our JROTC program, and disappointed we don't get the Veterans Day Parade. That was such a highlight, just going down and seeing all the, all the, the.
It was. We did have, so when that happened, there's a lot of, about half the schools signed up to go to Virginia City for their parade, and we had some go to the Nevada Day Parade down in Carson, because they want to, they want to do that. But we, we missed that parade. We are that parade. We're out there with, you know, 1,500 cadets in force out there. So we hope that they have that next year. We enjoy that.
Absolutely. Lot of fun, lot of energy, lot of excitement out there. Certainly, certainly going to miss that this year.
Plus, you get to ride in those cool Army vehicles.
Yeah, we do, which is fun. And throw candy. Yes. But it's really fun going around and just seeing, just seeing all the schools, and it's truly fun. Trustee Church?
All right. Thank you, Colonel Caldwell. For the record, I'm retired Air Force Lieutenant Colonel, so won't discuss golf handicaps or anything. or anything like that, but some, uh, I do have some questions. By the way, I may have misunderstood, but the Reno Veterans Parade is a go.
No, my understanding is that it is, it's just not the same. We don't have that.
It is a go. My issue is that I already, I'm very strict on my district funding. It's very precious and I use that to support those schools to go. So I don't have any more funding for that. And we're inside the window for, for bus requests and, and preparing the cadets. So it just was a little bit too late.
Right. And they.
It was a last minute switch, as you know.
Yes. Yeah. But it is a go for those people that do want to attend on November 11th at 11:11 AM. It's a, it's a go. I wasn't invited either, so I, but I may go watch. And I don't have the stats. I tried to look them up while you were talking, but it is fantastic. The graduation rate and the dropout rate for the ROTC is just sky high on how you prevent dropouts and increase graduation rates and just, it's incredible. And I, I kind of a statement, my understanding, you're not a recruiter for the military. You teach discipline and everything, but it's not a military recruiting issue. That said, correct, maybe you know, maybe you don't. My understanding is when you do go to basic, if you do decide to enlist in the military and go to basic, if you graduate from ROTC, I think you get an extra stripe, you get an extra rank or something?
If you finish the four years, currently you can get an extra stripe, you know, when you do go in. Reference to the numbers, so I have developed a five-year plan, which because of COVID became a six-year plan. And our six-year plan consists of retention and recruiting goals to build our, our enrollment back up where it was before. So I get data pulls there after every semester from the district data office and I have a very crazy Excel spreadsheets that I share with all the instructors so they can see their retention rates between each level and where they're losing cadets. So we track the numbers very closely, um, to try to improve.
And then, you know, fantastic that they get to travel because some folks, if they're low income, they don't get to travel. So they, all this, who pays for that? Is it the district? Is it the military or?
Uh, for example, for the group that just traveled to Georgia, that was an Army group. And because they were selected by my brigade to go, they paid for everything for them to travel.
Back East?
I'm sorry?
Who paid?
Uh, the Army did. That was Army fund. So my brigades holds funds for those big national competitions. And then they select the best teams from around the brigade and then they paid for that. Some of the Navy and Air Force programs, they have to fundraise in order to do some required travel events for them, which is tough for them. They have a different budget. Our budget is a little more upfront, but the, some of the other services, the budget is not quite as upfront and it's fundraise, conduct the event, and then ask for reimbursement the following year. And you don't know what you're going to get. So it's, that district budget, we're so appreciative of it because sometimes that has really saved us, uh, based on what's going on.
Awesome. Do they get to visit like military bases? Do they ever, you know, get to ride on the tanks, go into the airplanes, ever get off the ground? Do they get to go to sea?
We don't have a program like that for the Army, but for the Navy programs, they're required to do a trip each year and they go over to San Diego or somewhere on the, on the West Coast and they do stay and visit and do that. And I know that the Air Force program has a summer leadership camp. That's usually held at one of the Air Force bases. Of course, we're kind of out here, kind of far away from any real Army bases, so we don't have anything specifically like that. Camp Parks was kind of like that. It's a small base, but it's just, just too unpredictable for us.
And then a couple more questions. I couldn't get my pen ready fast enough. Can you tell me again what the event is on November 20th and where, as well as the April 18th to 26th event?
Right, so the 20th is our final drill competition. It's the championship and that'll be held at Demone Ranch. High school is starting at eight and usually it goes till about two or three. And then April 18th to the 22nd, that's our five-day, um, JCLC. So that will involve going over to Churchill Rec Center where they've got a high ropes course over there and a swimming pool that we'll use. We'll probably be here in Reno with the fire tower for repelling. We're at Weddington Park for land navigation. What else do we have? Oh, and we'll be over at Sand Harbor, partnering with Clearly Tahoe for, um, kayaking certification, safety training, and things over there. So that'll be a lot of fun for the, for the cadets.
Awesome. And then just a, a final, more of a comment, but maybe you can help us out in the future, maybe a PowerPoint, maybe just send it to the trustees. We go to so many events and they'll have the flag presentation like today or a parade where you've got dozens of flags. And there's a real disconnect, even myself, I get confused when you stand for the flag, when you salute, who can salute, who puts their hand over their heart? Non-resident, non-citizens can stand at attention but don't put their hand over their heart. So a lot of people think they're being disrespectful. They're not. That's the protocol. Um, you know, since they're a citizen of another country, you wouldn't put your hand over your heart for another country's national anthem. So maybe that's something you could help us with, because even I get confused, um, on that, but more of a comment than, you know, but.
Yeah, I could certainly, I've been working really hard on my website. If you Google W C S D J R O T C, that's the first hit that comes up. And I've tried to make it an info center for parents and, you know, middle schoolers, people who want to really know what we do, the curriculum is on there, all of our public affairs stories are on there, but I can certainly put something about the flag courtesy and respect in there. That's, there's a lot of places you can get the information from.
That would be great. You think it's simple and then you're at a parade and there's a bunch of, you have to stand up every time, you know, and a lot of the other folks don't, don't know, when do you put your, you know, hand over your heart, when don't you, et cetera. So that would be really helpful to me and probably to the other trustees. I think that's all I have, but it's just, you know, I did attend your event at Reno High where we got briefed on everything in a little more detail and it's just incredible, just fantastic, the program. That's one of the reasons I was one of the reclusters for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Church. Other questions, comments? Anyone, it's just great to hear, um, about such an amazing program in our, in our, in our district and the numbers. How many students are involved total?
They've got, we're listed over 1,900 this year, so we've jumped back up again. We used to be steadily over 2,000. So we have jumped back up again. It's going to take us several years. I've had a lot of tough battles with Army Cadet Command at Fort Knox because they're looking to close programs and pull instructors to start new programs in other places. And we have to do enrollment reports in October every year. And if your enrollment is below the minimum required for the number of instructors you have, you're on the radar and they could come and take an instructor slot away. So we, I fought really hard the last two years to get waivers and we got an additional waiver for this year. So, because we need that time to recover.
Right.
Uh, we can get, to get the cadets out doing all the amazing things they do, getting fired up about, about what Junior ROTC can do for them. So one more year and then we'll, I think we'll look and be looking good. I did want to also share that Cadet Ketchum is just finishing up his West Point packet with his congressional meetings coming up. And I'm feeling really good that he's probably going to be joining the long gray line at some point. So thanks for your time and interest today. I appreciate it.
Fantastic, very, very proud and become very, very highly recommended, as you know, Colonel Ketchum. So, um, thank you for all your work and your leadership and, and your, and your leadership and it's very much appreciated.
Thank you very much. We will be having JPAs, our accreditation inspections again this year, uh, in March timeframe, as well as our end-of-the-year award ceremonies where you all take turns. We love to have you come out and hand out awards and be present. So we're back on track for that again. So you'll be getting the, the schedule and the invites as well.
And we'll be looking forward to those. Those happen in the spring for those that may not be aware, the inspections and then the, the award ceremonies, a little bit later in the, in UV in the evenings. Superintendent?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you so much for coming here tonight. I think it's just such a testament to the work that you all do for our students and for our families and importantly, for our community. You all are out there, out in our community and helping and supporting in a lot of different ways and not a lot of people know that, that our JORTC program is probably one of the highest, um, number of community events. And when you all do your inspections, you actually go through the number of volunteer hours at each one of the units. And I really appreciate that. And then also I think you're going to be at the UNR game coming up here on the 20th.
I hope so.
Superintendent.
Yes, I hope so, yeah.
So congratulations to both of you.
And I will take that, uh, those nice compliments and share those with the instructor team because they're the ones that are really out there doing the hard work. It's, it's passion for them, late nights, long weekends, but they're always there. And so I'll make sure I pass that on to them.
Certainly do. I think as a, as a, as a board as a whole, you know, as we sit here and nod and, and just feel very proud about, about the work that's being done, um, and with, with those students. And we've seen, especially for those of us who've been around for a little bit, we've seen the impact that JROTC has on those students and the pride when they can, when they do their reports and they, you see them advance and grow and leadership is just, just fantastic. Trustee Nick?
I would be remiss if I didn't say that, um, I'm a proud JROTC mom, Reno High School. On my son, who's 42 now, just retired after 20 years in the Marines, Semper Fi. And, uh, his experience at Reno High really helped solidify for him that serving his country and doing it with honor and pride and joy, um, helped him really be a top-notch Marine. And so thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Church?
Well, I have to get in one more, uh, comment. My, uh, my step-grandson went through ROTC at Galena, spoke extremely highly of it, went in the Air Force, of course, and, uh, made Staff Sergeant E5 within four, under four years, which is off the chart unheard of.
That's fantastic.
Spoken as proud parents and grandparents. Thank you, again, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming.
Thanks, I look forward to seeing you.
And then keep us, keep us on the invitation loop and those things come around, we want to be, you know, we don't want to be a part of it.
We'll certainly do that. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, you bet. Okay, before we say, let's just take, uh, let's go one more. This one is, is only scheduled for a short period of time, so we'll see how that goes. We will go back to, uh, Agenda Item 4.04. Oh wait, no, we, we haven't done three yet, huh? Okay, why don't we do that? Let's go to, incline. Let's do incline, 4.03. Okay, approval of the purchase and so we'll ask staff, Mr. Etchar, here they are, Mr. Cersei. You can thank me later for not going to break. Approval of the purchase and sale agreement and escrow instructions related to the Washoe County School District Board Resolution 20-009, that's the resolution we signed a little bit ago. This was a resolution of intent to sell 6.41 acres of district-owned property located at 771 Southwood Boulevard in Incline Village to the Tahoe Transportation District or TTD for the appraised value of 2.35 million pursuant to Nevada Revised Statute 277.050. And this is the presenters. Uh, right before us, we see our COO and our Facilities Management Chair. We'll turn it over to you. Start with you, Mr. Etchar.
Fantastic. Pete Etchar, Chief Operating Officer. So based on the board's approval in September of 2020 of the board resolution that you just referenced to sell the old Incline Elementary School property to the Tahoe Transportation District and to develop a purchase and sale agreement, we are here today with that final agreement. So for the new trustees, we'll provide a little bit of history of this property disposal. The property was purchased in 1962 from the Crystal Bay Development Company for $76,000, And the Incline Elementary School opened in 1964 and continued to have educational uses until 2010. Since I came here in 2013, we have been having conversations with numerous agencies and private parties in Incline Village in regards to this property. The school itself has been fenced off and the only ongoing use has been the Tahoe Transportation District using the parking lot in the summer months as a park and ride for their Sand Harbor Shell Service through a facility use agreement with the district. This property has clearly been excess property for the district for over a decade. Based on our longstanding relationship with the Incline Village General Improvement District or IFGID, we coordinated with them for many years on this property, including being part of the IFGID Community Services Master Plan in 2018. In 2019, based on this master plan, the property was offered to IFGID for $2 million. In February of 2019, the IFGID Board of Trustees voted to not move forward with the acquisition of the property. After IFGID declined to move forward, Tahoe Transportation District, who again had been utilizing the property during the summer months for many years, approached the district with their interest to purchase the property. So Adam's going to take it from here with our coordination to date with the Tahoe Transportation District.
Good afternoon, for the record, Adam Cersei, Chief of Facilities. So again, dating back to September 2000, or 2020, we, uh, saw the resolution of intent to sell 2000-09, uh, to the Tahoe Transportation District. That specified a resolution of the Board of Trustees that was in the best interest of, uh, the school district for an agreed-upon amount and certain agreed-upon conditions. Since that time, the Tahoe Transportation District primarily has spearheaded an effort to engage the community through a series of at least four town halls regarding this pursuit, as well as to secure all of the appropriate elements of funding pursuant to that agreement. There have been also at least four public meetings of various agencies discussing this matter, um, throughout that, uh, the interim time period. So at this time, uh, staff also has negotiated and finalized the purchase and sale agreement and escrow instructions that are attached to this item. Um, and we've confirmed that all the necessary funding elements or funding components have been, uh, fully approved and are in place. So with that, we've finalized the purchase and sale agreement and have agendized it here. And we're turning, returning to you today recommending immediate execution of this agreement.
Okay, that's the background information. I know that's a lot, especially for those who may be newer to the board, but that generally gives the, the, the look of how we got to where we are, um, where we landed from a financial standpoint and some of the delays that have happened along the way in terms of securing the funding and whatnot. And so that brings us to where we are. Trustee Church, I know you're leaning and you've had some questions about this. I'm just going to go ahead and go to you first, sir.
You're absolutely right. Thank you very much, Madam President. I'm going to come right out and say I'm opposed to it. I'm an absolute no. At a bare minimum, I think we need to postpone it. I was out of town, but I don't, I don't know if we have public comment or what, but I don't think the Incline folks were aware of this meeting. You know, it didn't get posted till Thursday and I was gone. And so I don't think that they're aware of it. My understanding from being on many Zoom meetings or up in Incline and touring the site is they, the community is largely opposed to it. Now, you stated they had a lot of community meetings, but do you have any stats or figures on what that result was?
No, we do not have any stats on what the popularity or non-popularity of this sale agreement is. Tahoe Transportation District had a series of, of meetings regarding this property. And I, my own personal experience of working within Incline Village is that, I'm not sure you'd have any project that's going to find everyone in unifying saying, let's, let's do that project.
But, but this one, let's just say it was 90% opposed. We don't know. We don't know if it was 10% to 90, we don't know.
I, I would also add that the Tahoe Transportation District and the TRPA have taken multiple, uh, actions in support of this sale. So to the extent that that represents the Incline Village community to a degree, I would just contribute that fact.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it does at all. I think it don't. So going through the facts and the matter here, and I really think we need to postpone this, I'm just begging people to do it. This was approved by the Board of Trustees September of 2020, prior to my being on the board representing the district. We are now 14 months forward and they have done nothing. I mean, they've done their meetings, but they, and I couldn't find it, but there was, the only thing I found was in your, when your attachment was from Mr. Caddell that, that we approved it. But there was some agreement with them that I can't find on this computer and I've been looking for it, it's not attached. Was there not some agreement that they signed at the time? And I read that somewhere and it was like they would act with due diligence at that time and it's been 14 months. Can you comment on that?
Sure, I'll take a stab at that. Of course, the staff report details, um, all past action by the Board of Trustees, including multiple occasions in September 2020 where the board directed staff to sell this property to Tahoe Transportation District. In the body of the staff report, it refers to public meetings, public actions taken by Tahoe Transportation District. So, their Board saw this purchase and sale agreement. They saw the resolution of intent from the WCSD Board and they acted on, to approve that in public meetings themselves. Similar items were also acted on in public meetings over the immediately preceding 14 months by the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners, the Washoe County RTC, the TRPA, as I mentioned earlier, and then, of course, the TTD. So, the funding components, as I mentioned, have taken some time to finalize. And because most of them are public in nature, to get those items agendized and appropriately acted upon just take a little bit longer than making some phone calls. So, that's in large part what has extended the process. But yeah, the Tahoe Transportation District in particular has seen all of these documents in detail in a public meeting and voted to approve them.
I get it, a public meeting, but we just don't know what the public said at those meetings. And my feedback is entirely negative. It's for a bus hub in an area that many in the community, many, not just a few minority people, I think majority feel is not appropriate for that community. And that said, maybe that's not our problem, you know? So, let me segue a little bit different. The appraisal, as I understand it, was April of 2019. So, now we're going back another year and a half. April of 2019, the appraisal was given, correct?
That's correct.
Property values have skyrocketed. We have a private entity that offered us just one. We didn't even go to bid. They just wrote us, they said, "We'll write you a check for $2.8 million." Not 2.3 we're selling it for, but if we, that 2.8 could make a lot of money for the school district to pay for teachers and staff and police and everything else. Am I correct on that 2.8?
Actually, not correct on as far as where the money can go. The money has to go to building and sites funds. It cannot be used for teachers or any other uses.
Okay. So, but it could be used for the school district if we sold it.
That's correct.
Would it be fair to say with the escalating housing pricing, real estate market here in Washoe County, especially in Incline, that if we got a reappraisal, it would be significantly higher?
I think that yes, I believe the new appraisal would be significantly higher, or at least higher. I think that many times when you deal with land between agencies, public agencies, it's not always about trying to maximize the exact amount, the highest amount of money you can get. We received a lot of the land that we built our schools on from the federal government and paid almost nothing for that land because we're doing an inter-agency transfer between different public agencies. I think that's why we offered it to IFGID for $2 million when we knew the appraised value was higher, because they wanted to use it for a public good. And I think the same with the Tahoe Transportation District. We're not looking to try to maximize, but we want to make sure we get a fair value back. As I said, we've had this property a long time. We paid $76,000 for it. We're receiving $2.35 million in return.
$2. what?
$3.5 million.
Okay.
I think it's also important to note that the resolution and the purchase and sale agreement specify that the projects or the properties to be sold as is. There is a 50-some-year-old, 60-some-year-old building on the site that has been unoccupied and essentially not maintained for over a decade. There are a number of other native obstacles associated with that property. So, you know, it's one thing for someone to just write us a letter of offer. It's quite another thing for an agency to actually acquire it and then successfully develop it.
All right. So, let me kind of cut to the chase then. I covered the fact that the appraisal's old. I covered the fact that we don't know what the community, we know they had meetings. We just don't know what they said. I don't think it was adequately noticed. I mean, legal, I'm not arguing legal. But I don't think that the community really knows that this meeting is being held tonight because I think we'd have a full house if they did. So, I'm going to cut to the chase on what I want, what I think. And this is why, at a bare minimum, I'm just begging that we at least postpone this. When we give it away, it's gone. Sell it, whatever. It's gone. We don't ever get it back. I toured the schools up there. We have an incredibly hard time getting teachers to work up there, staff, janitors, bus drivers, et cetera, et cetera. We have an incredible recruiting problem district-wide in almost every position. We have, I used to live in Incline and I commuted down to Reno, 35 miles on that windy road in the wintertime treacherous. Sometimes it would be closed. You literally have to go to Carson and up or you have to go to Truckee and down. It's an incredibly difficult problem for teachers. I'm going to share my vision. Number one, we keep it and use it for housing, for teachers and staff and everybody else. Number two, we go back to them and say, "Look, how many acres do you need for the bus hub? Can you, however legally we want to do it, deed back, rent back, 100-year lease, whatever it is, an acre or two that we could use for teacher housing and staff?" I say teacher housing, I misspeak. Staff housing, whatever. I envision housing for the, you know, and again, it's all subject to union contracts. Who gets to stay there? I get that. But I envision a housing program for our staff that they can live there, you know, for some time, depending on however we work it out with the unions. I envision, number two, that when you've got a late football game, you've got a late band recital, you've got late parent-teacher conferences, and somebody wants to spend the night, maybe it's snowing, you know, that they can have like a motel room, part of the housing, but, you know, okay, here's your key. And I've seen it done in many other agencies that I've worked with, where you got a place to stay just for the night because of the conditions or whatever. I also envision it, maybe that so-called hotel room is a little perk where somebody, us Flatlanders, can say, "Hey, can I take, you know, the wife or husband up and spend the night and, you know, he go to the lake and enjoy?" Or maybe take the kids and the family up, almost like a perk. But if it's, you know, that's going to help us recruit. Any of that would really, really help the recruiting and the retention because I toured the schools up there and I don't see any ability to build on any of those schools. And we don't own any other land. Even if we had excess land, we could partnership with the county because they have the exact problem for their library, for their deputies, the state with their Highway Patrol, with their road workers. They could maybe sublease from us for their housing. I don't want it for housing for just somebody that works at Rayleigh's. I want it for us and then surplus would be other government agencies. So, and I'm looking at you folks, but I'm talking, I think, to the fellow trustees. If we give it away, it's gone and we're never going to get it back. And there's, things have changed since 2019 when that appraisal came in. Things have changed since September 2020 when this agreement was made. And it's almost a brand-new board that hasn't had time to look at this. So, I guess I've done my spiel, but I really, really would, at bare minimum, like to either postpone it or like to discuss going back to them and saying, "Hey, what can we do? Do you need that whole six acre, six plate, whatever acres? Or is there room at the table for us to maybe have some housing there?" You know?
Trustee Church, I'm going to move you because you're talking in circles here now, sir.
Yeah, okay. All right. But that's basically my thought. We, A, postpone it, B, say no, or C, kind of renegotiate that maybe there's some housing available. So, thank you very much.
I appreciate that. No, I think your points are well-made, but, you know, okay. All right, awesome. We have some other comments and we want to hear from them as well. Then I know we have some public comment on this. Trustee Smith, I'll shine your light. Okay, Trustee Rodriguez. Okay, and then we'll go to Trustee Smith. And then we will go to Vice President Menedo.
All right. So, like this obviously did happen before my appointment, so I'm trying to catch up on all of this, but I'm just trying to understand. Like I'm looking at the Tahoe Transportation District. It looks like there's a lot of representatives of the community up there that are elected or whatnot. I mean, you've got City of South Lake. You have one of our Washoe County Commissioners. And so, it looks like there's a lot of people up there that represent the people up there. Have you heard anything in objection to this? Or, I think I'm maybe piggybacking maybe a little bit of the Trustee Church, but it seems like this Board up there are representing people up there. And then there's been Board meetings about purchasing this land, correct?
One thing I guess I could offer is the Executive Director for the Tahoe Transportation District is here, Mr. Carl Hasty. So, if you'd like to hear from him as far as the public comment on this property, he could probably address that better than I. I mean, we approached them to, we've gone into this process with them and they held a series of public meetings about this property where they received comments. I can say one thing on this property is that they are buying it in such a way is that they recognize that a lot of government purchases of property take a long, long time to get through. And so, they're buying it in such a way that they're buying it because they know if they don't buy it quickly, then all of a sudden it could be gone. So, they're using that process. They have to go now through another formal process, is my understanding, and that could be asked to Mr. Hasty, in regards to public, more public comment. Is this the right site for their transportation hub and other uses that could be done on the property? That's part of their process, I understand, and maybe that'd be best addressed by him.
I would.
No, I hear you saying, and I think we can all benefit from that piece. So, why don't we have some more comments because there may be other things for Mr. Hasty. And then we'll go to him first as we get into public comment. We like to certainly sense he's here. And thank you for being here, Mr. Hasty. Who was, uh, Trustee Smith?
Thank you so much, President Taylor. Just a couple thoughts. I am personally favorable towards this sale. Going to Trustee Church's comment, and I have a little bit of concern about this. You know, he mentioned, was this adequately noticed? Have we followed all of the legal requirements of noticing for this meeting?
Yes, we have.
Then, I'm not really sure that I understand that basis because it kind of concerns me because we start placing ideas that perhaps we're not following protocols, we're doing things in a way that are not fully transparent to the public. But as far as I can see, that is not accurate here. We have been following everything in accordance to all of those protocols. Something that was also said is that it's a public good. And then I'd also like to connect that to not overstepping. This body's decision is whether or not to sell the property. It's as simple as that. We have other governing bodies that are making decisions over their constituents and their community members. Certainly, we should not be blind to the way that this is also a product of public good for another community. But it is my personal opinion that our decision here is whether or not to sell this property. It is not to try to attempt to govern another body or to make decisions that they've clearly already passed and have decided on for themselves. So, I'll just offer that.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. We'll go to Vice President Menedo.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't know if I would be opposed to teacher housing. My thinking is, where does the money come from? We've got to get things working right, right? It's been vacant for 10 years, 15 years, something. And if you don't keep something up, it needs to be brought back. And we committed ourselves to sell this for this price. And I know, I think you and I were the only ones on the Board at the time. But we have to uphold what other Boards, at least I feel like we have to uphold what the previous Board put out there. Although, I'm not opposed to having a conversation with them if we need to. So, that is what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Menedo. Before we go to Dr. Nicolet, I may not have some comments to make. And then we'll ask Mr. Hasty to come and then lead to other public comment.
Thank you, President Taylor. This is a very complex issue. It's heartfelt. I will tell you that as I was running for District G seat, there was a lot of conversation around this issue. And I participated in the Incline forums. I also participated in two, I will call them information sessions that TRPA held virtually. I learned quite a bit and it spurred me to look at the title of this document, which is Linking Tahoe Regional Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy, Horizon Year 2017-2040. And I'll just kind of, it's an extremely comprehensive plan that is based on, number one, I would say it's based on need because there has been a lot of concerned voices in the Incline area about the traffic, about parking, safety, all very valid issues. By the same token, there are some very strong, informed, caring voices in Tahoe, up in Incline, who don't want this to happen. And I understand their concerns. And there's always that element of kind of, I hope people won't take this as an insult. I've felt it myself, as a "not in my backyard." And people worry about having a bus hub in that area and on that particular site. I would have to say that this plan does an excellent job of articulating a long-range future. And if, in fact, TRPA and TTD are going to continue along the pathway of community input, this is, I believe, extremely important for the integrity of all of us concerned. And I totally agree with you, Trustee Church. This is a valuable piece of land and it kind of hurts me to even think about letting it go, but I understand it. I would have to say that as long as the entities who are going to be involved in this after we sell it and move on, I would reiterate, I feel very strongly about the process that involves the community because I think the only way to get to a good place is identify that common ground, which I believe is really important. So, I am not inclined to hold off on it, but I do want to hear from Mr. Hasty because this is really important.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. And just before we hear from Mr. Hasty and then we'll go to other public comment, here, just hear my thoughts on it. I think a couple of things, because we went through this process before, as you said, Vice President Menedo. And one, I think, I think it's really important to remember that part of it, when you go from a public entity to a public entity, is you consider the public good. And I think you mentioned this earlier, Mr. Etchar, is that we have benefited from that in building our schools. We will continue to need to benefit from that as we, you know, meet more need to build more schools. And so, I don't think, because there might be another half a million dollars on the line, not because it doesn't matter, absolutely it does, that we say, "Well, now, wait a minute. We know we made a commitment, but heck, we have another offer out there for another half a mil-" That's not good faith. People haven't negotiated with us in good faith because sometimes it's taken us quite a while to obtain property and get the clearance for it and the price hasn't moved on us. It's just continue to do the work. And I think we should be the same kind of good partner in terms of that. Public entity to public entity, we ask for their help and their assistance as we're making those decisions in terms of other public entities. You mentioned the Forest Department and so on. And I think it's good faith for us to do the same unless there's some really big extenuating circumstance that should interrupt that. And I haven't heard that as of now. I think we should keep that in mind. I also think that it is our responsibility to do our best due diligence as we move forward with this. We want to see that TTD and TRPA have, that they've done theirs and we see that. If not for us to get involved in then, that we are not going to get land from the Forest Division and then have them get involved with what we do with that land. We're not going to let that happen because we know it's best for us as we build schools and make those kinds of decisions. And so, I think that's a little bit of overreach for us. I mean, I think it's important to see what it is that's going on. We see that there have been multiple public meetings. I'm glad Mr. Hasty is here. We can ask, we can, certainly, we've asked some questions about what that feedback has been. But I think that we need to be careful about that because we start bleeding over, then we open the door for others to do the same. And I don't think we want that to be the case because we're the ones, we're the experts on schools, right? And we want to continue to do that. We don't mind hearing from people, but ultimately, we get to decide. And I also think that, one thing, and I think Trustee Church referred to this, is this is, the bus hub is a small piece of a large property, over six acres, I believe. And the hub that they're considering is a piece of that. There are other things that will be a part of it. As I've done research and read some things and so on, and some of the things that they're considering is affordable housing. And I think that's an important thing to consider is affordable housing. It's all, we don't call it, we call it housing for Washoe County School District staff, but that's, it's the same, is the same concept, affordable housing. In Incline Village, a place where housing can be expensive. And I do think that there's an opening to be involved in some conversations around that because that is our business, right? As it turns out, and how we have it available for people who work for the district, who may reside up there or who may need to do that temporarily, whatever the case may be. So, it doesn't take that off the table. I'm going to be in the, we're not in the housing business. But heck, if someone else is doing it and they can- But heck, if someone else is doing it and they can have some consideration for what our needs are in this as well, because we're being good partners and we're dealing with each other in good faith, then that, I believe that conversation is still available. In fact, I was told that, quite honestly, because from a phone call I had a little bit ago on this very issue. And so I do think that it doesn't take the housing piece. I think that's a valid concern off the table. We can be part of that, but that's part of working together and being good partners and all of that. At least that's, that's my two cents on it. So at this point, I'm certainly inclined to support it, but I'd like to hear from Mr. Hasty. If you hear Mr. Hasty, please, if you wouldn't mind, sir. If you can share specifically information about public meetings that you've had, it's certainly input that you've had as well. We appreciate that. Thank you.
You bet. Happy to do it. Good afternoon. I'm Carl Hasty. I'm the district manager for the Tahoe Transportation District. And I will do my best to tackle some of the questions that I've heard here today, give you a little bit of background. To start with Mr. or trustee Church's comment, there is a group in the community who's definitely very concerned about the idea of a mobility hub. That's what we call it. In Tahoe, for example, in transportation, we deal with our capacity and trying to get people out of the car by providing different modes of transport. We are not in the business of expanding highways up at the lake. So a mobility hub is a concept that is intended to fit in with the community and can be co-located with other needs. And that's part of the process that we will continue to engage the community on as we go forward. We slowed down after the September 2020 approval from you all with our process up at the lake in order to have these virtual town halls that we did, put together committee of the TTD Board. And it wasn't until March of 2021 that the TTD Board looked and reviewed the documents and gave me the okay to proceed on the acquisition of this property. At that time, I also made a very strong commitment to the community of being very engaged in a robust process from here on out. There's a couple of drivers there. One is to satisfy another partner in this, which is the Federal Transit Administration, whose dollars we are using for the purchase of the property, the bulk of the purchase of the property. So we will be doing a site assessment process in the community. We will be looking at the school site as well as any other locations that may be viable. It is rare to find a developed public piece of property at the lake that is available. And it is rare to find one of this size as well. So this is a tremendous opportunity in that way of turning a former school asset into another public asset that can serve both the community and the region. And that's the intent for TTD as a by-state compact organization looking at the region and for the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. So we will be very engaged with the community. Commissioner Hill has also been a very strong advocate and been very instrumental in engaging Washoe County, the community development, to be involved with the Incline area. For years, there's been a lot of discussion about needs of the community when it comes to transportation, including parking. This is an opportunity to address those. So the county is also engaging in a additional, more detailed, specific planning exercise, if you will, relevant to the transportation needs of the Incline Crystal Bay community and partnering with us. And this is where we will coordinate and working with the community on how does this all work together or what are those needs so we can kind of marry up addressing local and regional aspects when it comes to transportation. TTD has been involved in the SR 28 corridor for 13 years now. That trail segment and that highway or the off-highway parking that's there at the trail ahead by the old Ponerosa, that was a TTD-led project to get that project approved and funded. And that did the construction of that project, and we're looking at the next eight miles to going down to the junction with 50. So this fits a, you know, putting together a set of assets that start to improve the situation. Unfortunately for us at Tahoe, it's very incremental. It's not as quick as everyone would like, but we were very conditioned to work with everyone because that's the only way we get things done. And to get that trail, for example, and that parking there, I was getting agreement between 13 organizations as well as the public to move forward on that. We won't take any less of an effort to do this in Incline because these are long-term solutions that require that kind of engagement, and that's what we will be doing as an organization. And my board has made a commitment to do that. So I think I've kind of covered a bunch of what you've asked, but I'll be happy to answer anything, any more specific that you might have.
If I may, Mr. Hasty, and thank you very much for providing that information, and thank you for being here. If I may, you have anything that you can share in terms of the public meetings that you've had and some of the comments that you've that you've gotten? Just as a whole, I know you can't think about every other meeting, but you know, just as a whole, I think that was a question that came up.
Well, there's definitely a very vocal group who's opposed to the idea of a mobility hub. There's people who support different ideas for that location, housing to, I would like to park my boats there. I mean, it ranges quite broadly. So again, you know, pieces of property like that are rare to find. So I fully expect as we go through, the idea here is to work with the community on what can work with that mobility hub and fit with the community and go through that public process. There's, you know, there'll be a lot of opinion, and it's our job to go make sure we're reaching for those folks, not only the ones who are vocal, but the ones who tend not to also poke their head up, but have a great interest in a lot of good ideas. And that's what we're going to want to do, and we have a lot of practice at doing that kind of outreach.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hasty. Any other questions for Mr. Hasty since he's, we have him with your trustee Church?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Is it Hastings?
Hasty, H-A-S-T-Y.
Thank you, Mr. Hasty. And I'm a little abrupt, I apologize, but I just tried to save time. Was there any scientific study? A lot of our people come, and we've got 83% for this, 20% for that. So you had all these meetings. Do you have any studies? Do you have any, that's not the right word, but you know, did feedback from the community?
Yes, yes, we got a lot of feedback from the community.
And do you have any numbers?
I don't have numbers. Numbers in what way? Who's for, who's against?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, we certainly have a number of public comments that I don't have the figures on that.
Was there a survey that was done?
There was not a survey.
Okay, because that's the only thing you can really glean some stats from.
There's been no, there's been no scientific, you know, statistical survey done of that community.
Okay, okay. Trustee Church?
Yes. Has IFGID rendered a support or non-support?
IFGID formally has not rendered either.
And you mentioned Washoe County. Any other boards or local governments that have formally approved or opposed the plan?
Well, my board is comprised of all the local jurisdictions of Lake Tahoe, as well as the, well, two-state DOT sit on our board, but they are non-voting, as well as some private sector organizations, transportation management associations, nonprofits. So through that vote on my board, there has been that support. We've also been before Washoe RTC, because that's part of where the funding has come from, in addition. And then there's the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency.
So did RTC or Washoe County actually support formally?
That wasn't what they were asked. Washoe County, where we went was Washoe RTC to approve some contribution for the match, for the federal dollars, and that was approved.
And I'm in no way suggesting, as I made clear before, that we were violating OML. We've clearly noticed the meeting appropriately for this meeting. But was there any notice to the community other than our standard OML agenda? Was there anything put out to the community you're aware of about this meeting tonight?
Other than your notice, that's what I know. Here's one other thing that I failed to bring up, which is we are a long way from a project. So this is an acquisition of a piece of property, and then we are just, we haven't even begun the kind of project planning process. And the kind of public process, the kind of analysis, the kind of rigor that's going to be required to get through both TRPA rules and regulations as well as the federal rules and regulations, those are all to come when we arrive at a project after getting community input on what that project's all going to be.
And that that concerns me. There's so much that concerns me greatly, but that concerns me. You could be used for boat parking. Would it be possible that you would sell it for a profit? That you wouldn't, that if this wouldn't go through and the community opposes the bus hub, that you just sell it to a developer?
We, we, if, that is not what I'm, my board is interested in. We are here to do a transportation improvement and to work with the community to find what that best fit is.
But let's pretend there's some major glitch, some government agency, maybe the feds pull out, what, something happens and the bus hub dies. What would happen to the property?
That's a lot of speculative what-ifs. I can't, I don't have answers for that. And I can't even fathom that.
Okay. And I'll, I'll make clear, the transportation plan is wonderful, that they need it. I mean, she'll live there. It's that Route 28 is congested. I love, probably not feasible there, but an electric monorail, sky, whatever they call them, sky cars, tram, I mean, you name it. I'm a big believer in environmentally friendly stuff like that, and it's also very tourist-friendly. But my point is, that's not dependent on this exact location. Would that be correct? If this got, if we didn't sell it, there are alternative sites for the mobility hub that you call it, correct?
In Incline Village?
Yes, sir.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. In the area?
In Incline Village?
No, the whole general area. It's Kings Beach, Incline, Highway 50.
Well, I'll say, again, the reason this property is so attractive is because it is public, because it is developed, because it is of size. And then, quite honestly, that location for a mobility hub to be integrated with the community adjacent to multifamily residential and commercial is a really good fit. So locations like that around Tahoe, no. You want to talk about parking rides outside of Tahoe? That's a different thing. That's not a mobility hub that's integrated with the community, and we need those as well.
Okay. And I think, I think it's my final question. The board president mentioned some assurance that it might be used, and I'll make this extremely clear. I don't want affordable housing. I don't want affordable housing there. Rayleigh's, the other people, the casinos, that's their problem. I want staff housing and maybe to let some other government agencies onboard. I don't want to sell this for affordable housing. Totally opposed to that. I want, I don't want to lose it for our staff housing. That said, is it possible that your board would consider some of that acreage for our purpose if we so ask them?
That's possible. I mean, workforce housing is even harder up there than it is here.
But remember, I'm not talking affordable housing for the casino.
We would call workforce because you're talking about housing specific for your teachers. That's your workforce.
I'm sorry, that's the phrase I should have used, was workforce housing. Because that's the phrase that was given. I said affordable housing, that's the, I just wanted to, I just wanted to, I shouldn't use workforce housing because that's my, that's the conversation we had.
School district workforce.
And these are the ideas that I'm referring to when we go through this public process because there is, I believe there's some room there. And so those opportunities, I've been approached by at least three developers or the representatives about that idea. So we are eager to get to the process post the acquisition in order to work on that and to see what's possible.
You're scaring me, though, because you said three developers. You used the D-word. I don't want affordable housing for the casinos. I don't want developers.
Okay, trustee Church, I'm going to try to bring you in here a little bit.
I know, but I'm, but he scared me with the developers.
I understand that, but we, I'm trying to move us to a motion one way or another.
I guess my thing is, we've got promises, we could put it in writing. And once we make, once we approve this, they're under no pressure to put anything in writing or to give us anything back.
No, I hear you.
So, all right, I guess I have a few more comments to my fellow trustees, but I think...
Well, that's why we have Mr. Hasty here.
Yeah, I think I'm done with Mr. Hasty.
So we can go there, and then I'm going to, I'm going to move us toward the motion. Okay, move us toward the motion. All right, trustee Rodriguez. Oh, no, I'm sorry, we have more public comment. Well, let's get this, let's get this conference, since we have Mr. Hasty here, I'm sorry. Let's take advantage of asking questions. Please, go ahead.
So my main concern was that, understanding that, you know, I'll be honest with you, it wasn't until just, you know, about a few days ago, I heard, I knew what TD was, and then trying to understand and get brought to speed on all of this. So my main concern is that, and I don't want to cross lanes, you know, I don't expect you to come here and tell us what the school board trustees to do, but I just want to make sure I understand this. So you guys had a board meeting, I'm going to assume, and I'm going to assume that you guys did pass something and say, yes, we as a board agreed to pay the school district.
That's correct.
Okay. And I'm going to assume you had public comment at that time.
That's correct.
I'm going to assume that you guys have constituents that you listen to or whatnot.
That's correct.
Okay. That's my main concern. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, trustee Rodriguez. Anything else for Mr. Hasty? Okay, well, Mr. Hasty, thank you so much for being here.
Yeah, thank you for consideration.
Hang around in case they may come back up. Let's get to other public comment. I'm going to bring it back to the board and ask for any new insights that may happen. We don't need to be repetitive of any new insights. And then we can, so we, because we need to be deliberating toward an action one way or another. My job is I got to push this a little bit better because we will beat the heck out of a dead horse. So let's, let's, let's all manage ourselves around that. And that's for everybody. That's not for any one trustee, that's for everybody. Okay? JJ, please.
The board received an email from Andy Chapman.
Okay, that's it for public comment? Okay, let's bring it right back here to the board. I'm looking for a motion, and in a second, we can have a discussion.
I can make a few more comments?
Yeah, I'm not going to leave you. I know you have some comments, I'm not going to leave you. All right, looking for a motion, and second for discussion, or if there are any other comment or question. We're looking, looking for new information as much as you can for every side of the issue. Okay? Yes, trustee Church?
Four, four brief comments. There's no survey, there's no plan, there's no restriction on what they can do with it, and they can sell it to a developer, and we're going to feel really bad when that gets sold just to some developer.
Thank you, trustee Church. Trustee Smith? Same rules apply, write new stuff.
I think I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, please go right ahead.
For item 4.03, I move that the Board of Trustees directs the superintendent to execute the purchased sale agreement and ESCO instructions regarding the 6.41 acres of district-owned property located at 771 Southwood Boulevard in Incline Village, and approve the sale of the property for $2.35 million to the Tahoe Transportation District pursuant to the Washoe County School District Board Resolution 20-009.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor.
Second.
There's, okay, there's a second? Okay, let's go, any further discussion? Again, looking for new stuff.
New stuff.
I think it's important. Yes, sir, trustee Church?
Give me one second to find the contract. This is my fallback position. I didn't want to play this card yet. I think it's number 12 on the contract. It might be number eight. I'm trying to find it, I'm trying to find it. I think it's number 12.
Is that a question?
No, don't. Give me one more spot, I think I know where I have it here.
Just while he's doing that, just as a, as a bit of a reminder that when the, when we passed the resolution back in 2020, the law requires that that is posted several, several times as well. So it was, it has certainly been noticed quite a few times since between then and now. Because I think we all agree it's important that the public knows what's going on. Just want to share that that, it has been noticed quite a bit.
So my fallback position, I know, I'm seeing I'm going to lose this, but 8.1, 8.2, the buyer has 30 days to conduct their due diligence, and then we have 30 days to obtain formal approval from the Board of Trustees. So I see this is going to pass, but I want to make really clear, they have to act in 30 days, and we have to, if I read this right, maybe legal can set me straight, we can still readdress it at that point because there's also a thing in there about anybody can get out and there's nobody can sue anybody, but...
Right, let's get, let's get legal comment on that.
I have no idea. I can't, I'll take a recess, I can't make that, I can't, I can't be asked to interpret a land sale contract.
Right, on the fly.
On the fly, so.
Okay, so that's unclear at this point, and you...
Yeah, I don't think we need a recess. I mean, I can read it, but it does say, buyer shall have 30 days from the date of execution to obtain formal approval of this purchase from the Board of Trustees, so.
From, from, from...
The Board of Trustees. So I'm not sure if that, I assume that means us.
Yeah, we're, I believe we're making this, we're doing that as of right now.
Sounds like it.
Okay, so I believe that's what we're doing as of right now. All right, so look, and we have a motion on the floor? Okay, and the motion was already, there was, there was a second to that motion?
Yeah.
Trustee Rodriguez, I was gonna say, who made that, trustee Rodriguez? Okay, further discussion, new stuff, new stuff. All right, thank you for being disciplined, all of us, to stay with new stuff. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposition?
Oh, yes, nay.
Okay, let the record show, the motion carries six to one. Six to one. Thank you very much. Thank you again, Mr. Hasty, and thank you, staff, for, for your work and for being here.
Thank you, Pete, thank you, Adam.
Okay, now we will take, we'll take a 20-minute break. We'll take a 20-minute break, this little dinner break, dinner's here, so let's take a 20-minute break and we'll come back, we have some important items before us. Thank you, everybody. All right, everyone, let's go ahead and get started. Because of the lateness of the hour, and we always want to make sure that our students can get home and get the rest and get their homework done and all of that, we're gonna ask student trustee Victoria to go ahead with the, with the student representative report now. We order that, get that, and then you stay as long as you can, but when you need to go, homework first, school first. You take care of that, okay?
Thank you.
So go right ahead.
All right, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to let everyone know that Student Voice will be having an event this upcoming November 16th, so next Tuesday, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. We are gonna be hosting a virtual meet and greet for our Student Voice, so students can get to know a little bit more about what Student Voice is. And we're gonna be presenting our committees. Student council representatives and Student Voice committee leaders will be talking about the important topics that we're talking about in our committees. Some of the topics will be mental health, safe and healthy schools, student engagement, and equity and inclusion. And this will be hosted on Zoom. Students can email SAC@wachoschools.org or scan the QR code that will be sent to all, that was sent to all principals this morning. So if principals are able to let their students know of this event that is happening, we hope to see many middle schoolers and high schoolers there. We also know that past support nights are happening currently, and it is that same night at the same time. But we will hopefully be hosting different ones throughout the year for more students to join. And if they, they aren't able to join, but they want to join SAC or any committees, they can also email us and let us know that they want to join even they can't, even if they can't attend the event. Thank you.
All right, pay attention to that one or you will miss it, I'm telling you. But that's, that's really, that's really, really cool stuff though, that our, our students are, are getting going and starting to have events. And Student Voice is so important to us in this district, as you know. So thank you very much, student trustee Victoria. Okay, now we're gonna go to agenda item 4.04. We've just been all out of order on this agenda, just, you know, just stay with us. This is presentation and discussion to, to update the board of trustees on the office of school leadership activities surrounding the special education services. This is really important. Some things were done, some changes were made, and a one, a part of that is to continue to get updates on those changes and how we're serving some of our most vulnerable students in special ed. And this is an update on the West Ed project for implementation of a systematic support plan to address the needs of Washoe County School District's children with disabilities. This is just for presentation and discussion only, but it's really good, especially for new trustees, to, to learn about the supports that are in place for this vulnerable population. So we're gonna start, are we starting with the superintendent? Are we starting with our, with the lead area superintendent? Are we starting with the special ed?
Go ahead and start with, go ahead and start with May and then we'll, there we go.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much, President Taylor, members of the board. And I'm, I'm so glad that we have our new trustee on, on the screen there, trustee Mayberry. So if you want to go back in time, and what's being displayed right now on the screen is the pathway to positive progress. And when I became interim superintendent, we did a lot of community outreach, both to our staff, to our community, to our students, to our parents. And one of the areas that we really wanted to take a real deep dive into was around special education services and how we provided that direct support to our schools in order to make sure that we had the support that our students and our families needed. And so what you see there are part of the areas, the pathway to positive progress. And importantly, we had done a lot of work around special education, but what we weren't really good at is coming back and monitoring and progress monitoring and making those implementation checks on how efforts were going within the schools. And so we've contracted with West Ed, who is a national, and, and they will go into, Jen Van Tress will go into a little bit about West Ed. But what they're able to do is actually take a look at how we are implementing special education services across our district and how we're providing those supports to our students with special needs. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to our lead area superintendent Lauren Ford and to Ms. Jen Van Tress.
Thank you, Madam President, Superintendent McNeil, board of trustees, lead area superintendent Lauren Ford for the record. I would like to just kind of orient you to this slide. In 2019, we combined special education under Office of School Leadership, OSL, with the philosophy of, philosophy of all students. Having special education in one area, having all students, other students in another area was not what we envisioned for our school district as an Office of School Leadership. We believe in all children. So we based feedback on our next steps from administrators, teachers, families. It was determined that a reorganization of supports was needed. We needed supports for principals. Teachers needed immediate support. At the time, we only had one special education administrator, well, they were different names, but I'm gonna use the current names so I don't confuse everybody. But we only had one special education administrator and one special education facilitator for each area. But what we did was we looked at the number of special education teachers, the number of special education students, the number of special education programs in each area. And then we looked at how many special education facilitators to support teachers were needed. We stuck with one special education administrator. So for example, in my area, I have one special education administrator who supports all 23 of my principals. But I have four special education facilitators because of the number of programs, teachers, and students in my area. So we tried to make it responsive. We also embedded the special education facilitators in schools. So my four are embedded within my schools, within my area. So the response and the need for help can happen right away. During the 2019, sorry, during the 2019-20 school year, West Ed worked with Washoe County School District to develop a plan to review our practices for students with disabilities and create a special education improvement plan also.
Good evening, Jennifer Van Tress, area superintendent for the record. So this improvement plan that we worked with West Ed was actually broken into three phases. Phase one was January to April 2020, where we collected the information, reviewed how our students were performing, and then developed, developed our plan. You'll note, we started this in January, the COVID hit in March, and we worked through a lot of this work during the pandemic while we were closed. We worked, we learned Zoom really fast. We learned how to do all digital work, so it was really exciting to see the work that came out of that. Phase two started in May, again, while we were still technically closed. But we, we were working with our staff, we were working with our teachers on how, how, what are we doing to help support our students with disabilities? This led into the work all the way through July, right before we started back to school for the 2020, 2021 school year. So phase three, which is the phase we're in now, started in August 2020 and will continue through July 2023 and actually on, because once we make these systemic changes, we expect to continue to build on them. So we are currently in phase three. During this phase, what, you can see, we, part of the alignment also included bringing early childhood into the, under Office of School Leadership. Early childhood programs were a separate program, well, were, were under a different department. And again, we believe that all, all children mean all. And so the concept was if you have programs in your building, it starts at age three and goes technically for special education goes to age 22. So what we wanted to do is provide a full support system through the Office of School Leadership. So during the 2020, 2021 school year, early childhood, including the grants programs, so our children in early childhood programs that receive, that attend early childhood programs through a grant, so our kids who are considered at risk can attend early childhood preschool programs and our special education preschool, preschoolers. We also worked to develop, and we're very excited, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but our post-secondary transition program for our 18 to 22-year-old students who have graduated with an adjusted diploma, but not necessarily a standard diploma. So we've also.
Just for new trustees, can you talk a little bit about the adjusted diploma?
Yes. So an adjusted diploma are for students with disabilities that did not receive what would be considered a standard diploma. But these are, and these are students who have met state guidelines for, because they have participated in an alternate assessment. So we have the SBACK, so, and you guys are familiar with SBACK, I'm not gonna try and explain that to you, but the NAW, which is the Nevada Alternative Assessment, is the alternative to the SBACK for students with disabilities that are, are more impacted, where they can't access the SBACK. But they, we still want to make sure that they are making progress on standards to meet guidelines and be vocational or college or career ready. So that pathway takes them to an adj, what we call an adjusted diploma. That makes, okay, sure. So phase three. So our implementation plan is broken into four components, special education programming, policies, procedures, site leadership capacity, and district leadership capacity. So our department is, is constantly working on all of these areas to make sure that we're improving our, our services for our students with disabilities. Site leadership, we're working directly with our school principals, our school teachers, our school staff members. District leadership capacity includes other departments such as EL, MTSS, budget, grants, all, office accountability. We work with all of them to help build their capacity and our capacity in helping our students with disabilities. So just some highlights from component one with our special education programming. So we opened our new transition academy located at Inspire, at Washoe Inspire School. This is serving our students from 18 to 22 who are still eligible for services. They're working on their vocational skills. So these are the students that I was talking about that have received an adjusted diploma, but are working on their vocation skills. We, we opened the program this school year. We have already hired, had three students hired out of the program in our community working full-time. So yay, we're really excited about that. So we will continue to help our students make these, have these huge successes. Uh, let's see, we've also started some very in-depth conversations with our school administrators about data. I know, and during the last board meeting, you guys had a lot of information about SBACK and progress. Well, we have broken, we broke it down for school administrators to really truly see how their students with disabilities are being successful. We took that information on a vertical alignment. So during our vertical PLC work with all of our area superintendents, each principal was able to look at the vertical work. So let's say for my area, I had Silver Lake, Gomes, Enskeep, Desert Heights, Sted, et cetera, et cetera. We looked at it as a, as a group of elementary principals. Then we looked at the work, how is this flowing into our middle schools? Cold Springs, O'Brien. And then how, what ultimately does that look like at a high school? So where are our strengths and where are our concerns? And how are we gonna better support our students moving forward? We also, with North Star being identified as our online school for the Washoe County School District, we've worked with staff at, at North Star and providing a full continuum of services. This means students that would, may attend, may have typically attended in-person in Pacollo, do have access to online schooling through North Star. So we're excited about that. And we're also continuing our summer school and extended school year work, again, with the summer school program this year. So extended school year is the special education extension of a school year, so it goes through summer. Typically in the past, those programs were located throughout the district. It wasn't necessarily provided at a student's zone school or their local school. Because we're now collaborating and that, all of the work that was done over the summer with summer school, we were able to incorporate all of our programs back into the zone schools so kids are attending where they go during the school year. So really excited about that. This slide was provided by the Office of Accountability and it's, oh, for staff surveys? So at the beginning of last year, Office of Accountability did some teacher confidence survey work. And what this showed, at the beginning of last school year, the confidence of teachers to teach students with special needs was about 35%. We've raised that over, from last year to teacher confidence for in-person learning up to 71% and an overall of 68%. So huge increase on our teachers feeling confident in how to teach students with disabilities.
If I, if I can just, just, I remember, because, because I've been here so long, when, when, when we first began to really adopt West Ed and, and the model being a little bit, can you talk, just because we have, can you talk a little bit about the model, the shift and, and like you said, all students, all teachers being, can you talk just a little bit about that, that shift? Cause some people still remember the model when, you know, yet, 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 all your, all our special ed kids, all the kids with disabilities, they're all over here versus, you know, so can you talk a little bit about that?
The continuum?
Yeah.
Yeah, the continuum of services. So for students with disabilities, they all have what is called an IEP or an individual's education program. That is because they've been found eligible for special education with a disability under the 13 eligibility categories in Nevada. In addition, they need, they have a need for specially designed instruction. And so students with disabilities have something that, we like to call it like the cherry on top of your ice cream sundae when we're providing services for students. So the continuum is that based on the child's disability, you could have services that are fully included in the general education class where a special education teacher may co-teach with the general education teacher. And that's what the student needs to, to make, to make progress in their classes. From there, we have, we may have a resource room where students can receive an additional support where they pre-teach or reteach skills that they're learning in their general education classroom. We also have programs that are considered specialized programs like our social intervention programs, which are designed for students with behavior concerns, typically some emotional needs. Our CLS programs are our comprehensive life skills programs. Those are, those are programs designed for students with a, a more functional curriculum. Our strategies programs are designed for students that typically are on the autism spectrum, where they need more communication and more ability to learn how to generalize their skills. So it's a very, it starts off very rote in a discreet trial format, and when they learn the skills, then we generally, we're able to generalize that to the general, to the general setting. We also provide related services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, adaptive PE, and then we have speech and language services, which can be a related service, or it can be direct services. So kids with articulation errors would be considered speech and language. From there, we have Pacollo, which is our, more, is our, it's our specialized school for kids that are considered a little more severe, they need a lot of support and help, some of them may be more medically fragile. We also have Turning Point and Pass, which is also designed for students that have more significant mental health or behavioral concerns. Is that kind of what you're getting at?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I think I got the continuum. Yeah.
I just wanted to kind of share so that we, the comprehensive nature of, of providing this kind of support for our students that need it.
Yes, it's, 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 it's very in-depth. Every IEP is individualized, it's, and unique to the needs of the student and the needs of the families and how to make sure that we make sure all of our kids are on the pathway to success and graduation.
Thank you, I kind of got you off track, so thank you for that.
No, you're fine. That's, yeah, I, I'm, I'm good. I just went.
I see.
Now, you should get me, don't get me started on special ed. Under component two, we've had some really great, exciting work going on there, and I'll just kind of hit some of the highlights. We have started a virtual job shadowing program, which came, it came really out of COVID with the Nevada Department of Education. So students in a comprehensive campus or even our specialized programs can job shadow someone in their job, in their position and learn how to become whatever it is they want to do. This is a brand new program that we're working with NDE, and so we've been doing a lot of training with our department leads at the high schools and the middle schools to really develop this program and give students access to more opportunities to see what happens out there.
That's great.
We have a, a great working relationship with the High Sierra Industries, and they've been doing a lot of work with us as far as teacher training and working with. been doing a lot of work with us as far as teacher training and working with our transition services. Oh, yes, and the last one up there, we are working, so many of you may have heard, we have a, and our IEP system is an online program, and we are working on an RFP, so a...
Request for Proposal.
Yes, Request for Proposal, I'm like Request for, something, Request for Proposal, to double, double-check that this is the best program out there for us to be able to using to write our IEPs. It is an electronic system, it, and teachers will, it's, it's how we build our IEPs, and we make sure that we are meeting all of our components that are required by federal and state law, and this has gone out to bid. And so we'll be working with it in the next couple of months to see what other options or if there are other options out there besides the program we're currently using, and whether or not it best meets the needs for Washoe County families, teachers, and students. Site leadership capacity, I hit on a couple of these already about the work that we've been doing with our principals and really targeted data-driven decision-making through the PLC process. Our special education teachers, or our special education facilitators have been working very closely with our special ed teachers on how to interpret the data and work with the data to make sure that we're providing the, the most effective instruction in the least restrictive environment. We're also really excited that we have adopted a couple of curriculums, research-based curriculums for the Washoe County School District. That includes the Unique Curriculum and the STAR Curriculum, which are designed for our students with, in our CLS programs and our strategies programs. We've also adopted the Wilson Reading Program, which is a research-based reading program designed for students with reading difficulties, including dyslexia. So we're really, that is in every school, and every teacher has either been trained or is in the process of being trained. District, District Leadership Capacity, we're doing a lot of work with our family school partnerships, obviously during the last school year, getting out and working with our families was a little challenging, and so we're really excited with the work that we're doing with our family school partnerships with Dilly Sue Crane and Maria Fernandez. We'll be starting to offer classes called Exec, addressing executive functioning for families starting in January. We'll also be working with families to collect data as to what they see as their area of needs and get their feedback on how we've been providing services for students. And then just continuing to work with all of the other departments. And that's it, there's, it's a lot, and those were just the highlights.
No, it, it certainly is a lot, but it's really good to, to just see the progress as those, I know some big changes happened and needed to happen, and then the restructuring around it and really under your, your leadership, Jen, and I think, just from my perspective with one trustee is, is as we make these, these changes, the, the staff training that goes along with that. And so I'm really glad you made a point to say everyone has been trained or will be trained, because, you know, we have to support our teachers as we're asking, and we want students to be in the least restrictive environment, those that need, that, that are some of our most vulnerable, but teachers have to know how, so how do I do this? And I think a lot of the early concern about making these changes is, I'm not equipped to do this, I don't know how to do this. So having the support as well as the facilitators, I think, right? Because, you know, like I said, names have changed, right? They are in, in the schools there to help, I think, has, has, has made a difference. So I look forward to continuing to see this and then watch out how, when we measure, when those things come back, to see how our students are progressing is really going to be the telltale.
And with that, Dr. Taylor, our special education administrators and facilitators provide professional development onsite once a month with their whole, with the entire special education department at each school site. That professional development is planned with Jen Van Tress and her directors, and they plan out the professional development and the, they provide it with the special education administrators first. Of course, they have input into that, and then, as Jen said at our PLC vertical meeting with our principals, the special education department provided PD this, this month around data. But each month, we have a time slotted for one hour of focused professional development for our principals as well.
That's good.
And principals do attend the monthly training with their teachers.
Good, that's, that's important as well. Let's see, I know that our new trustee, trustee Mayberry, has a question or slash comment or both on this.
Work, you know, this is an issue that's, it's really important to me, and, but admittedly, I don't know what I don't know, so this, this helps. You said something about a program addressing dyslexia, I, I think I missed that, could you just help me understand that again?
Sure, sure. We have adopted the Wilson Reading Program, which is an Orton-Gillingham-based methodology designed to address students' needs with dyslexia. We also...
Okay, it was a...
Yep. We've also adopted some other, based on individual needs of the student, for students throughout the district. It, we have a, kind of a global, but based upon student needs, we will, we've, we've done some other things as well.
And the standard diploma, and then there's an adjusted diploma, is there something in the middle? Is, is there, isn't there an alternative?
Alternative.
Diploma?
Yeah, so...
Okay.
Yes. The alternate diploma.
Alternate, thank you. Again, thank you, Madam President, and thank you very much for, for what you two are doing and your team, and I'd like to learn more at some point, and anything I can do to support, please let me know.
Thank you.
Fantastic, thank, thank you so much, trustee Mayberry. Vice President Menel.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I might be jumping the gun here, but when will we hear about some student data?
We, uh, we can't, I'm phoning...
No, I mentioned as well, I look forward to it, yeah, so.
It's coming to a school board meeting near you soon. So, there was...
In January, we'll be coming, we'll be coming with, with data as far as graduation rates, we'll be coming around with eight advanced placement, IV, those types of data points for the trustees, and that's in January, on January 11th, I believe.
Thank you. Thank you very much, it will be soon. It's just, it's great to see the, the adjustments and the changes and then see the impact it has on the students. At the end of the day, that's really what that's about, so.
And I, I did forget, I, you know, we have over 1,000 preschool students, ages three to five, in our early childhood special education and grant-funded programs at this time.
Wow.
So that's really exciting. We're really, we're really seeing this impact at an earlier age to where we can really have them ready when they start kindergarten.
I mean, to be able to get in and just do some intervention right then, just to, you know, allow them to not have to have it, once they get, you know, to more of the traditional K-12, 112, fantastic. Other questions, comments? Can I, do we have, do we have any public comment on this? Oh, you, it's not an action item, so don't worry about it, we don't want, we won't have it. Go ahead.
Thank you for that, you spurred me to a question, so the preschool kiddos, do they, two parts, do they come through our Child Find or maybe NEIS, et cetera? And then do each one of those kiddos have an IEP or an IFSP?
So in our, in our early chi... Um, in our, sorry, in our early childhood special education programs, all of the, our children come either through the Child Find process or through Part C, which is the NF, the Individualized Family Service Plans, which is basically an IEP for zero to three. So we work with the NEIS, which is the Nevada Early Intervention Services Program, I get, okay, zero to two, and then when they turn three, then they change over into Washoe County School District. So we have about...
Three.
At three, starting at age three. Then, so yes, they either come through NEIS or they come through the Child Find process. Now that is around 500, 450, 450, 500 students are students with IEPs from three to five. Then the rest of the students are through our pre-K Nevada Ready Grant Programs that, that are serving our students at more of the at-risk, high-risk schools. So, and we have programs scattered throughout the school district providing services for those students as well. Sure.
Good, good, okay, I think it's, Superintendent?
Thank you very much, and just in closing, I, I really want to, you know, compliment Jen and her team. She is, she is running 9,000 miles an hour as an area superintendent, and she couldn't do it without her colleagues. And one thing that I am exceptionally proud about this team is that it really is a, a group think, and they, they problem solve, they get together, and one thing that we've really worked on over the years is that people need to feel comfortable asking questions. In special education, there's a lot of laws, there's a lot of policies, it's extremely complex, and no one should, you know, feel that they can't ask a question, because we, if we provide that support and we train and we, you know, make sure that everybody feels good, that's where we're going to be able to see some, some dividends down the road. So I just want to thank Deputy Superintendent Byersdorf, who's been a tremendous person to put all of this together, but then also Jen and her team, and Jessica Medulla, Dr. Medulla, Ms. Flores...
Angela Flora.
Angela Flora.
And Tina Springmeyer.
Yeah, and there's just Tina Springmeyer in early childhood education, there's just, there's a huge component behind this. So just thank you so very, very much for everything, and obviously all of our special education teachers, our school psychologists, our counselors, and our aides-in-assistants, who our teachers could not do what they do without our aides-in-assistants, importantly.
Okay, well, thank you so much, we, we look forward to, when it comes back around, we can see how our students are being impacted, but this, this is awesome, so thank you very much for your work, both of you. Okay? All right, we'll go on to Agenda Item 4.06, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Former Trustee Calvert's Residency, Particularly to Conduct Further Investigation to Include Any Additional Pertinent Interviews, Information and Questions Not Included in the Original Investigation. Additionally, to possibly take action to have an independent legal review of other legal matters related to serving as a trustee, including votes cast, compensation, and any paid benefits such as health insurance when it is determined that a trustee does not live in the district that they were elected to serve, and to possibly take action to use the Gunderson Law Firm to complete the investigation and conduct the legal research. This is for possible action. I'm the presenter, I'm just going to do that from here. And this is, this is really in response to a couple of things, one, there was, we'll take the, this, in my mind, there are two parts to this, one is the, the independent investigation, there was more information that I, I got from our, from the trustees, from our colleagues at our meeting a couple of weeks ago, that that was the first step based upon the scope, the scope was fairly limited on that, but more information, more interviews to be, you know, to be conducted. Let's see, what else, do we have any other questions that may have been out there? Many questions came out before, and so that was, again, I got that from, that was a desire of, of my colleagues, and I think we all pretty much felt like, hey, let's, let's, let's go further, let's not stop based upon that. So that's the first piece of this. So why don't we have a conversation around that, and then we'll go into the second piece of this. The first piece, though, is, is continuing, continuing the independent investigation and, and, and including those things that, again, some questions came up, he may find other things as he digs a little deeper and goes into others. This is specifically on the who knew what and when piece, not the other piece, that's the second piece, that's going to be discussed as well, but that's the second piece as well. So just looking for, again, comments, I picked this up from, thinking that that was the desire of the board from our, from our last meeting, so my recommendation, just so that there's no, that's not a superintendent recommendation, this is pretty, this is pretty much a board item, my recommendation is, let's say, let's go further, any other interview that may be important, any other questions, I think some questions came out last time, hey, you know, that's a really good question, let's, let's go deeper, let's find that out, to, to pick that up and to, and to go further. My recommendation is that we certainly do that, because I think it's important information and we all, we all want to know. It's important, who knew what and when. Great comments, questions? Eventually, I'd like to have a motion to that name, but we'll start with Dr. Nicolet.
I hope this is the...
Okay, oh, yeah.
Public comment first, yep.
Well, just before the mo, we can have public comment now, and then we can bring it back here, why don't we do that?
So the little ditty I would like to throw in there is, is I want, I personally, and I'm sure we all do, I want to understand any law around this, any NRS, any NAC, so that...
Around, what do you mean by this?
Around, for example, the votes coming out.
Right, that's the second piece.
That's the second piece, thank you.
That's the second, so that, that is not lost, it's in here, but that's the second piece. Okay, but why don't we just take, take any public comment on this agenda item at all as we get into the conversation? And then we'll get into, the first piece is the independent investigation, the second piece would be in the legal review in terms of those things, Dr. Nicolet, so a public, public comment?
Morgan Lydic.
Lydick? Mr. Lydic, welcome.
Hi, how are you? Morgan Lydic Sparks. Well, the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees appeared in the Reno Gazette-Journal today, front page, big picture, and despite the old saw about publicity, I don't think it was very good publicity, despite the fact that they spelled all the words right. We know what's going on. Trustee Calvert moved, notified Human Resources, and there the issue sat, until a member of the public told a member of the board that she was probably living outside the district, that information was carried to the president of the board. There ensued a pretty singular period of incuriosity, until the whole issue boiled into the light in that very contentious issue, meeting a few weeks ago. In that meeting, a lot was made of violation of policy, but as I noted then, the oversight of Ms. Calvert's violation deliberate or the product of an administrative laxity doesn't exactly enhance the public's confidence in the administration of the school district, the point of Board Policy 9051. Your note refers to possible action. Possible? No. At a minimum, amelioration should involve reimbursement of all public monies paid, revisitation of every single issue on which trustee Calvert voted, at least those which were decided by one vote, and the development of a strict policy for Human Resources which would prevent recurrence of this sort of foolishness. Once is an anomaly, twice is a pattern. It's just common sense, and I would hope to God that it becomes a decision of this board tonight. Doesn't look good, folks, doesn't look good, not even if they spell all the words right. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lydic.
The board received emails from Joe Morabito, Dinah Mayer, and Pablo Navad Duran.
Okay, thank you very much, we'll close that public comment, bring it back here to the table. Again, there are two issues before us, so let's take them, we're taking them one at a time. My opinion, I think, two issues before us, one, let's, let's just get right to continuation of the, of the investigation, just as a, as a, as a, you know, we, I just went through all the review, I don't need to do that again, so I'm trying to keep our, I'm trying to keep our meetings kind of focused, so just looking for feedback, questions, comments, motions on behalf of my colleagues, what is your, what is your, what is your desire? I'm going to start with the vice, with the vice president, then we'll go to trustee Rodriguez, then we'll go to trustee Church, you were on and off, right? Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I would agree with you that we, and if we want to use, the previously-used law firm, I would not have an issue with that, yes, but I, I would agree with you that there needs to be more looked into, perhaps.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Vice President. Trustee Rodriguez?
I venture to say that most of us can agree that a mistake occurred, whether whose fault that is, I think it's one person's personally, but I, I've only been here hundreds of times in all days, and we have some biggest issues that we're tackling, today we accomplished one, we appointed a new trustee, we're looking, we got another agenda, an item that's a big one, we're getting a new superintendent. My brief time here, I really want to focus on our kids. I mean, we could go around and around with this, who knew what, when, when what, who? I, we have a full board right now, and I just want to get to work so badly, and spending money on further investigation on... And spending money on further investigation on where the information's out there, I just, I can't, I'm done, really. I mean, if we want to get into, if there's a state agency or something like that that can see what her validity, former trustee Calvert's votes were for me and the other trustees as well, let's look at that. That's a valid concern for people, you know. But further investigation, further, as some trustees said, beating a dead horse. I just want to get to work. I've been here hundreds of times in all days, and this has been the, it's like the same three topics. So I would really, would like to try to move forward, deal with our community, town halls, I know we've all talked about them, rebuilding trust, but I think to do that, we need to close this and move forward as a board. There's seven of us now, we're coming to a new year, let's try to work together, people. And, I don't know, throw more money at more lawyers, it's not something that I'm behind anymore.
Thank you, Trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Church?
Thank you. First of all, I want to read into the email that was brought up at the last meeting when we discussed Ms. Calvert, from the superintendent, quote, "I believe and have decided it is appropriate for outside counsel to be hired to continue and complete looking into the former trustee Calvert matter, including the issue of residency, when we became aware of the matter, and any all information related unto," and then the quote goes on. I agree with that, in essence, and that's what we were promised, and we didn't get that in this terrible report, this waste of money report. And I wouldn't hire, I'm a no if it's for the Gunderson Law Firm. This is absolutely the biggest waste of money I've seen since I've been following the school board issues. So, number one, I do want an investigation, like we promised the community, and we promised them at the last meeting, we promised them in this email, and I don't want the Gunderson Law Firm. So in that regards, I'm, I agree with Mr. Rodriguez. Hell, what do we do? First of all, I have complete confidence in our legal counsel, in his opinion on whether the votes were legal or not, and if somebody wants to file action, they can file action, but we have legal counsel that can address that. The fact that she reported her move, albeit to the HR folks, makes it really difficult legally, probably, just in my layman's opinion, to say, well, you kept collecting, she told us she moved. The right hand didn't know what the left hand was doing, right hand didn't know what the left hand was doing, but, you know, that presents, essentially, she was honest, she reported her move, she didn't turn any fake vouchers or anything else. So I don't think we need to spend a lot of money on a attorney. One thing we don't know, I don't know how much this cost us so far, but, so, getting back to my comment, what do we do? From my previous agency work, it's not uncommon to reach out to the AG, the district attorney, the Washtau County Sheriff, and say, would you, as a favor, and, you know, we do things for them, it's very common, when I was on the Reno Police Department, officer-involved shootings were never investigated by our agency, to reach out and ask if they will do an investigation, either for free or at cost, by a professional investigator, all three of them have them, and ask them to look into it. If they don't, we can bring it back and say, okay, well, they won't do it, we can discuss it later. But they're trained investigators.
Okay, I'm gonna interrupt you just a minute. Ask them to, I just want to be clear on what you're saying, Trustee Church, ask them to look into...
An investigation and...
The residency issue, is that what you're saying?
Well, to quote, to quote the superintendent, any all information related unto.
Yeah, that's the residency issue. Am I right? That's what the email says.
The residency, who knew... Who else knew what, when?
Right, and regarding the, isn't that the context of that? I just want to be very clear, because this is an important decision, so I want to, just help me jump into your brain a little bit.
Anything related to it, you know, who knew what, when? We already know when she moved, we already know that she reported it to HR, but we don't know who else was told. The last, and it was per the agenda, when you read the agenda item last time, it was focused on Jeff Church, Angela Taylor, and Mr. Rombardo. That was the focus of the agenda item. So now we need to know the, and I forget the exact title, she uses executive assistant to the Board of Trustees, what was she told? Did she have any conversations? Was anybody else told?
Right, right, I'm sorry, you're right? I just want to get to, again, so you're talking about an investigation that includes who else may have known, this is still back to who knew what, when, but more broadly, right?
Basically, yes, basically, yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to get my arms around what you're saying.
If something comes up, you know, we want them to have free rein to take it to the next step.
Yeah, where it leads, yeah.
But we don't need, we don't need a legal opinion from anybody outside on whether it was illegal or not. I trust Mr. Rombardo's competence and abilities to, or his staff, to look into that. You know, I think he already has been, I don't know, but I thought we had, he was already looking into it, I thought there were some emails to that. So yeah, basically, that's it. So I'm saying, no, no more $400 attorneys, but if we can get one of the cooperating local agencies to do it either at cost or for free, that would be the logical way to do it, independent, to the point, you know, hopefully wrap it up soon. But I do think we made a promise to the public at the last board meeting, as well as in that email, too, that was made to us, to me as a trustee, you know, I took that to say we are gonna look into everything, which we haven't. So I'd like to fulfill that promise.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Church. Other comments? I will add on this piece, I will say this, and this is no indictment or reflection on Mr. Rombardo or his team. I think, and certainly as trustees, you can, everyone can disagree, and I think that you will, Trustee Church, it's not bad, I just think that you will, I think that as long as we're still in the who knew what, when, and if Mr. Rombardo had any involvement in that at all, just because you said the investigation, clearly, there's some question around the investigation that happened before, then I think anything that comes out of his office will be questionable. I do, I understand what you're saying, personally, I trust that, but I don't think that's enough for the community. I think we need to say, you know what, it is absolutely 100% independent. I think that is, I think that is critically important. In my opinion, otherwise, we're spending money to, yeah, well, you know. And we've had, we're here because of that. I mean, you'd be surprised at the stuff that people are saying that I knew about, we're here because, oh, yeah, well, no. And as long as there's anything in that questionable, then I think, again, certainly, nothing personal, no, I'm not trying to attack, I believe in our legal team and all that stuff as well, but I agree, we need to bring this thing to a close, we need to do it sooner rather than later. The only thing I would disagree with you, sir, is that I do not think the office, the general counsel's office should be involved. I think that credibility can be questioned, and that's not where we want to be. That's my opinion. Okay? And it's okay that you disagree, and that's okay, that's my opinion. Otherwise, I'm on the same page as you, we gotta do this thing. Trustee Smith?
Thank you, President Taylor. I share Trustee Rodriguez's interest in moving on, but I also share President Taylor's opinion that we should stay with an outside investigator with this, so that there is that degree of separation. So personally, I thought that the investigator, specific to the scope that was provided to him, provided something that was well-done, where there's obviously more to it, and I'm very interested in learning what else there is. But I'm curious, so my question really, for you, Trustee Church, because I am genuinely curious, you said it was a terrible report, but to my knowledge, no one that was interviewed disputes the accuracy of anything in this report. So as we make a decision about engaging the Gunderson Firm again, can you help me understand what parts were terrible? Because again, I am unaware of anything that's being disputed as being inaccurate.
Please, go ahead, Trustee Church.
I think we could be here all night tearing that report apart, that's water under the bridge. I mean, I could do it, but I don't think it serves any real purpose for me to spend 15 minutes on tearing that apart. I was very disappointed, extremely disappointed that Calvert wasn't interviewed, didn't even try, extremely disappointed that the executive assistant to the trustees wasn't interviewed, and I was extremely disappointed in the wording of the report. But again, I think that's water under the bridge, as opposed to looking forward. And one other comment I will make, if they won't do it, I think there's private investigative firms that are one-third the price of a, and they're experienced investigators, most of them are retired law enforcement, and we've used, other agencies have used them before. So a lawyer's just not an investigator, and they're expensive, and they're just not investigators, they're not trained in that, they're not trained in interviewing and interrogation. And so I'd rather have a private eye do it if we can't get a local agency to do it. But I think it doesn't hurt to reach out to the local agencies.
Thank you, Trustee Church. I see two lights over here, I don't know who came on first.
Ladies first.
He said ladies first, so we'll go to Vice President Menedo, and then we'll go to Trustee Rodriguez. Thank you, Trustee Church, if I didn't do that, I meant to.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a major concern that no matter who we hire, they are going to be pricked over the coals, and called liars, and mistreated. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Menedo. Trustee Rodriguez?
I wonder if this is something with this investigation that we've done, can we just hand this over to the, you know, state AG or something like that, let a public entity, outside public entity, if there's a criminal matter that occurred, let that agency handle it. And if there's found guilty, then we can go after for civil, so we can, we see about the funds, okay, you took this in wrongful.
Okay, remember, those are two different things.
Well, odds are, if you're convicted of a criminal case, you could go for civil.
Oh, yeah, no, no. I'm just... Oh, no, so go ahead, go ahead.
But we're...
Please, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I mean, no disrespect, but we're going back and forth about who knew what, when, it's like, he told her that, that you told, I mean, it's just, I really want to move forward, I can't stress enough, I have to agree with Trustee Church on this, if there's a criminal matter that occurred, just take this investigation, hand it to the AG, and let them do their job. And we can hopefully move on, because, I mean, we got two more board meetings this year, January's just around the corner, I really want us to start fresh, really badly. Is that something that you guys are open to? Let's give this investigation, it was done. AG, is there anything validity here?
Well, the only thing, reason I said that, and I would love to be done, and starting fresh sounds amazing, I think we would all like to do that. The only thing in terms of what is the criminal versus civil is that, if there's any wrongdoing, so to speak, on behalf of former trustee Calvert, that's found in the legal review, not in the investigations as much, you see what I mean? In terms of what we've had, that's why I said, oh, no, those are two different things, not because we shouldn't be looked into, by any means, absolutely. We need, and this back to one of the things Trustee Church said, when I first asked, said, hey, we need to look at, and all things involved in this case, I forgot, I actually, I brought the emails, right? This goes back to the middle of September, when I asked Chief General Counsel, hey, would your office take a look at, what's the statute say, what's the law around when someone moves outside their district, and yada, yada, yada? Because it's unusual, right? So how do we do that? But there's something out there, we should figure out what it is, right? And I shared that with Trustee Church, a couple of days after that, then I shared it with the entire board, we're gonna look at all of these things, and then it was three or four days after that, when everything hit the fan, well, I remember that board meeting, we're gonna bring in an independent investigator, so let's stop with the office of general counsel, because if there's any involvement in that, in the who knew, then that's not credible. So that's why we are where we are. So that's like, nope, can't come out of that office, because it needs to be credible. But the independent investigation is going on longer than anticipated, again, back to the scope piece. Now, can we, I guess, I'll ask Chief General Counsel, I don't know if your recommendation, which is kind of in line with Trustee Church, can we say, AG? One is finishing the investigation, I think is where Trustee Church came from, and you were saying, no, don't finish it, just have them look and see what's legal. Don't need to put words in your mouth, I want to make sure I'm framing what Trustee Church said correctly, and framing what you said correctly.
I believe that would be almost in tandem with Trustee Church, you know, like, have the AG finish it, along with, is there any validity to what we have, and close this out.
And then, what about the votes and stuff? That's something different, that's not, that's more of a legal review.
Yeah.
What's the law say?
Right, and I guess I'm not on that topic yet, because...
Oh, you're not on that yet, okay, good. No, no, that's, okay, I don't know if that's the role of the, I guess I can look to general counsel, I don't know if that's even the role that, hey, will the AG investigate who knew what, when, which is that piece? I don't...
The appropriate party to investigate is the DA's office, and the DA's office is, as I understand it, were contacted, and they didn't really want to handle the case under, I can't remember the statute, but they have authority to take action to remove somebody from office. They're not going to come in here and say, who knew what, when? That's not their business.
So that had more to do with the legal review than the, than if anything comes from, if there's any potential criminal activity or anything like that, that's when it gets to the DA's office?
If the DA's office could look at criminal activity, I mean, as a former DA, they're not gonna look at this, I'm just telling you, but you can ask them, but they're just not going to, they're gonna say it's a civil matter, you know? So that's what I think they'll say.
Okay, well, again, and that's...
But that's not for me to decide, that's for them to decide.
Right, sure. And that's basis, that's what it comes down to, hey, is there, was there some legal wrongdoing from that standpoint? It's not the who knew what, when, so that, it doesn't seem likely that that will happen from a public entity. So then we're back to, really, I said, there are two issues, there are really three, is do we finish this investigation, right? Do we do a legal review? The investigation is the who knew what, when, right? Because as Trustee Church pointed out, there are other people that should have been included, and that were not, and it was based upon the scope, so we know that, but that could have been included, I'll say, and were not, to make that thorough. And then the legal review, you know, what happens? What's the culpability, all of that? And then the third thing is, if we're going to do those things, who is going to do it? Do we retain the Gunderson organization, the Gunderson Firm, to, hey, let's pick it up, let's keep it going? And in my mind, I, one of the reasons why I say yes, is because they're almost done with the investigation. I mean, there are more people, let's say there are five more people interviewed, let's say, I don't know how many, let's just say that, right? Couple of names came up tonight, then they're almost done. Okay, great, and instead of having someone start all over, they're gonna want to start all over, should we do that? And I do think, we know we owe the legal review, what's the law say about this? And I do think it needs to be independent, as I said, for the reasons I've already said. So that's where we are, that's where we are, from this standpoint. Trustee Church?
I saw another light on earlier.
Was there? Did I miss something? Okay, I think there was, that's right, Dr. Nicolet, and then Trustee Church, thank you, Trustee Church.
Thank you. I think this is wonderful discussion, and I will tell you that I've given this a lot of thought, done a little bit of reading. I believe that the Gunderson Law Firm has laid a good foundation. I appreciate what Trustee Smith pointed out, was that there's, someone may argue with some of the information in here, but it seems to be factual, and not to point any fingers, but again, Gunderson Law Firm has done, I believe, a good job laying the first layer of the foundation. There is more to do. I would like nothing more than to have a reputable agency group of people do something for free, I'll raise my hand on that, but I don't know how that looks, and I do believe that Mr. Funk pointed out that, as did some other people who made some public comment, that the DA's office and the Secretary of State, no, the AG's office, they're not gonna look at this. This is kind of like our situation, and I believe that it's for us to tackle. Again, I think the Gunderson Law Firm has laid a strong foundation to continue the investigation.
So, Trustee Church, I'm sorry, I almost jumped in. Trustee Church?
My back's spasming, so if we don't do something, we are gonna look terrible, and we deservedly would look terrible that we're covering something up, so I think we have to do something. I'm not suggesting this is a criminal probe and whose jurisdiction it is, it's a courtesy facts-finding investigation. If we don't ask the sheriff, the AG, or the DA, then we don't know the answer, and perhaps in the motion, it could say, and if they decline, A, the Gunderson Law Firm, or B, a private investigative firm, whatever we decide on. But we need to continue on it. If we do the Gunderson Law Firm, and I'm not happy with that, but maybe we could ask them to use a qualified investigator that they pick, either within their office or without, where they supervise that. where they supervise that for independence. But, yeah, we have to do something. We don't know if we don't ask for a courtesy investigation, but I want to be clear, I'm not saying this is a criminal investigation. It's a courtesy fact-finding investigation.
Yeah, I think you.
If it leads criminal, that's great, but I, I think the odds of that are slim to none and some left town. Ms. Calvert told us she moved in 2019.
Yeah, I don't, thank you, Trustee Church, and I certainly didn't want to imply that, 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 that's it. Again, if you look at the agenda item, we really have three things before us. One is, do we continue the investigation? Right? Because there's some, there's some questions of who wasn't involved, number one. That's one, I shouldn't say, not in order priority. The second thing was, do we, do we do an independent legal review so we can look at those things such as pay and yada, yada, yada? Right? And then the third thing, who does it? So that, that has nothing to do with criminal, it's just, those are the three things that are before us. And so based upon that, we've already gotten public comment, we've already shared, and looking for a motion, and we have three different things, so ideally, we have three different motions, if, if that's the desire of the board.
Thank you, President Taylor. I think you laid that out beautifully, and so I will make a motion. I move that we continue the investigation into, I want to look at this here. Continue the investigation, I want to get the.
Just say regarding residency or something along those lines.
That's what I'm going to do here.
Okay.
Continue an independent investigation regarding former trustee Jacqueline Calvert's residence.
Okay. Is that motion, that motion one? There's a motion on the floor that we continue the investigation into former trustee Calvert's residency.
I think trustee Mayberry has a hand up.
Okay, we'll do that. Let's see if we get a second, and then we'll have discussion. Okay? Because then that doesn't end it. Okay? Is there a second? There's a second, trustee Smith? Okay, thank you very much. Trustee Mayberry? Thank you, Trustee Rodriguez.
I'm here, Madam Chair.
Did you have your hand up?
I'm here, Madam President. I, I did it one moment, but I, you know, I'm good, thank you.
You'll be thinking, okay. Sorry, sorry, I may have missed you. Thank you for making the picture bigger, bigger J again. Thank you for seeing that, trustee Rodriguez. Okay, so there is a motion on the floor that we continue the investigation into trustee Calvert's residency. There is a second. Now we're in discussion. Trustee Church?
So discussion, what does that mean? Does that mean Gunderson? Does that mean private eye?
That's, that, we haven't decided. That's, that will be number three, sir.
Okay, so we just.
Right now, is it, are we going to do it?
Got it.
Okay? Other questions? Okay, and I will add, and this may be friendly, may not, that we want this done. I see his hand. Thank you. No, eyes up there, help me, trust me, they help me, is that we want this done as soon as possible, because we, I think all of us want this thing to be done. And I think that's in the best interest. I think the public wants it done. I think we want it, I think that's just the best thing. So if that, if that can be friendly?
Yes.
And both, okay, so then as soon as possible. Okay. Trustee Mayberry?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, you know, just kind of a fresh perspective, I tend to agree with some of the comments that trustee Smith and trustee Rodriguez have made. I just, I just don't know where this is really realistically going to end. It just seems to be centered on, you know, one individual. I mean, it really has become a distraction, so I'm interested in learning a little bit more, but I truly want to, would like to put this to bed as, as a new trustee. I just, I don't think we're going to go anywhere with this. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Mayberry. Other comments? I would, yeah, trustee Church?
I'll just answer that question. Without maybe saying it in black and white, we made a promise to the community, we were going to investigate this further. It's in that email, it's in the comments that are on the record from the last meeting on this issue, and if we don't, then it really looks bad.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, trustee Church. Right. And that was part, yeah, I understand. Trustee Rodriguez?
If we can put a timeline on this, to have this investigation done and try to have this resolved by December's board meeting, because I think it'll look equally as bad, if not worse, if we continue to roll with this into the next year, which is around the corner. So if we can, if we can try to get this done before the end of the year, I will be even full support of it.
So are you recommending then the friendly not be as soon as possible, but the friendly be before the end of the year?
Yes.
Is that what you're recommending? It's up to, up to the maker of the motion and the, and the, and the secondor?
I'm not opposed to it, and I understand where you're coming from. I truly do. I, I worry a little bit about this time of year. This is a very busy family get-together, et cetera, time of year, and I am certain that whomever we hire could make this happen, but probably at an expedited cost. That's just a guess. This is a very busy time of year. If we could get it done tomorrow, I would say let's do it. I think as soon as possible is reasonable. By the end of the year might be putting on some handcuffs that are impossible. I, I don't know.
I sure hope as soon as possible, before the end of the year. I will certainly say that. That's just, as a one trustee, trustee Rodriguez?
As we have this great groundwork that's done, I mean, in theory, five more people interview. I mean, I'm an investigator, I can interview five people in one day. You know, so I don't think that's unreasonable, in my opinion. And again, I think those look just as bad if we're dragging the son, because, I mean, we've already started this a while ago, and we're continuing, and we're going back and forth, in my opinion.
I accept your friendly.
By the end of the year?
Before the end of the year.
Before the end of the year, trustee Smith? Okay, so that's the, so the motion has, the motion has been changed to that? Okay? All right, so now we have the motion that, that we continue the investigation regarding former trustee Calvert's residency to be completed before the end of the year. That is a motion after the friendlies. Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion?
You might want to say calendar year.
The end of the calendar year, to be, to be, so that it's not school year, not to be confused. Thank you, Madam Superintendent, because I don't think that's your intention. Okay, looks like, and I think, I think we're all on that same page, so let's, okay? All right, so let's take a vote. All those in favor, that we, to continue the investigation, indicate so by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, come on, all right. Opposition? All right, the motion carries, seven zip. I almost said six zip. It's good to have seven again. Okay. The second piece, second piece is to the legal review, which is, what does the law say, law, statute, legal precedence about when someone is in an elected position, but they have moved outside of the residency area? That, that's not an investigation, that's not interviewing people, that's doing a legal review, what's the law say? And so I, I'm asking, I think that's also a part of, really something that I think we didn't take, we didn't take any action and take any vote, but I think that's certainly implied by the conversation we had last time as well. And so if it is the pleasure of the board, I'm looking for a motion to that effect.
Let me try this one, because I'm, I'm so for this. Tell me if you think this makes sense. So my motion would be, is that we direct whomever conducts the independent investigation regarding former trustee Calvert's residence includes a legal review.
Um, it, it, what you could, what you could really just do is do the legal review, and then the next thing we would talk about, who does it?
Okay, so I make a motion.
That's my recommendation, that way it stays really clean.
I want to be clear, though, that it's, that the independent investigation includes a legal review.
It's, it's two different things. One is an independent investigation, one is a legal review.
Oh, so you're.
Just a motion to do.
If I might, what if we hire a private investigator who's not an attorney? What if we, what if the DA says, yeah, we'll look into it, but they're looking into it in a fact-finding?
Well, again, it's up, it's up to motion. My, my request to the board in this is, because I do think this is something that we said we wanted to happen, is that we do the legal review, period. Not the who yet. I would like to keep them separate, because I would like it to stay clean. Right? And that we do is an independent legal review.
Okay, I'll try that. Sold. I move that we conduct an independent legal review. On what? Right? On Jacqueline Calvert's?
It's right here, of other legal matters related to serving as a trustee. It's right there in the, in the agenda item.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I'm bad at that.
It's okay.
Forgive me, I'm sorry. All right, let's go back to this. So you're wanting me to use part of that?
Go down to the fifth line, that, that might get you where you're trying to go.
Thank you.
But if not, you change it to what you want.
Thank you. I move to have an independent legal review of the other legal matters relating to serving as a trustee, including votes cast, compensation, and any paid benefits such as health insurance, when it is determined that a trustee does not live in the residence they were elected to serve.
In the district.
In the district, that they were elected to serve.
Okay. That's the motion on the floor. Okay, that we have an independent legal review.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, it's right, it's from there. And it's important that it's what the board wants to happen. Right? But we don't have a second. Is there a second? There's a second? Trustee Rodriguez, yes. Trustee Church?
Just, that didn't mention Jackie Calvert. It just said legal review. I mean, we're looking at the Calvert issue.
Okay, it certainly can. It's, it isn't, the review is just going to be, what does the law say? The law isn't going to say anything about Jackie Calvert. The law is going to say what happens when the trustee does not live in the district they're elected to serve. So it isn't, it isn't, the legal review is not specific to Jackie Calvert. It's about what is out there in the law. It can be, it can be certainly, that's okay. It's totally up to the maker of the motion and the secondor, if you want to.
Well, that, I just have, would that include restitution? Would they look into legal?
The legal issues around, around that, just the legal matters around that.
Okay, great, I'm comfortable.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, we have a second, okay? As stated, okay, I'm looking up, make sure I don't leave trustee Mayberry out. Okay. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye?
Aye.
Pausing, no? Okay, okay. Give me, uh, uh, opposition? Give me a thumbs up or thumbs down, trustee Mayberry, so I know where you are. Okay, thank you, sir.
I apologize.
That's okay, I'm looking, I'm like, everybody's watching you on the screen, it's like, okay. All right, thank you. Let's, right, something, give me something, all right.
President Taylor, may I have a request? Could JJ read that back? I want to make sure I have that down, right?
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Which you would. The motion just carried, by the way, seven zip, so.
Yes.
Be on the screen, just a second.
Thank you, JJ.
You see it? Nope, that's the other one. You see it? Get your phone out and take a picture, so you don't have to write it down, so we don't have to wait for you to write it down. Yeah, it's right out of the agenda item. Yeah, it's right out of the agenda item. Okay. All right, thank you. So now the third item, the, the third item on this, in terms of my putting this forward, let's, let's say, let's, let's, let's say, let's say this, the third item is, my, my recommendation is because I want this done as soon as we possibly can, is that we engage the Gunderson Law Firm without the limited scope to, to pick up and continue the independent investigation. And additionally, it may be involving, if they involve someone else on their staff, investigator, whatever the case may be, to, to, to complete the, the legal review based upon the second motion. So that's for consideration, that's, that's just a recommendation from, from me, based upon the conversation we had before. But I'm, 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 we've already had plenty of discussion about the Gunderson Law Firm, so let me hear what's the desire of the board. Trustee, Vice President Minneto.
Thank you, Madam President. What if we say, yeah, we want them to do it, and then they say, no, thank you? Can we just say?
If available.
Them or somebody else?
We can't, we could.
That's a little vague.
We could, because it's not, I haven't had a conversation with them or anything, so because before the superintendent, it was, it was her investigation, she asked Chief, Chief Legal Counsel's office to do that. They will, they will not conduct it. Deputy Reich was the one who was the contact, and I would imagine you might do that same thing, the contact with the Gundersons, again, so we can keep Chief Legal Counsel out of it. So if there, it can be, the motion can be in such a way so that, if available, right, if that's the pleasure of the board. Trustee Church?
The only bone I'd ask is, if we do the Gunderson Law Firm, would be to ask them to use a qualified investigator.
Okay, I've, I don't, I've never really worked, is that, is that appropriate? Is that not appropriate? I don't, from, in terms of asking a, a team to, maybe their attorney is the qualified investigator.
I'm sure they could probably contract out to a private investigator to handle infield stuff or something like that, which is, I think.
Well, yeah, maybe, maybe, maybe what I might say is, because we haven't spoken with Gunderson, and I don't really want to tie their hand, but maybe we can make the recommendation from that standpoint, that we, we, we make, that means they handle it in the way that they think is best. They obviously want to do a good job, it's with their client, it's their product, and that can certainly be in terms of a, from a recommendation standpoint, so, but it's really going to be up to them to do it in the best way, in the way that they feel best. Should they, should they do it? Should they be available? So, okay, we're talking around the motion, but we don't have one yet, so my job is to move us to something like that. Trustee Church?
I'll make one, even though I'm opposed to the Gunderson Law Firm, I think it's a good compromise.
Okay.
So my motion would be that we direct the superintendent to contract with the Gunderson Law Firm to complete an investigation into former trustee Calvert's residency to include any additional pertinent interviews, pertinent interviews, information, and questions, not included in the original investigation, and to also conduct legal analysis, oh, God.
Legal research, you're good.
Legal research into related matters thereto. Is that enough, you think, or? And that we request that they.
With the recommendation?
With the recommendation that they utilize a qualified investigator and.
I think that covers it.
And complete the investigation by the end of the calendar year.
Okay. Okay, for a person who doesn't make a lot of motions, you did good. Okay, and we have a second, there's a motion on the floor, trustee Church, and there's a second by trustee Smith, discussion. Okay, in a nutshell, what we're voting on is retaining the Gunderson Law Firm to complete the investigation, okay, that we made our first motion for the investigation. We don't have to repeat, although trustee Church did, and I think that's appropriate. Additionally, to conduct the legal research. And we recommend that they use a qualified investigator, and that is completed by the end of the calendar year.
And I forgot one part, because Vice President Minneto is absolutely right. And that if they decline, that the superintendent be directed to contract with the appropriate agency or firm.
That leaves that open in case they're unavailable, whatever. Okay, you're okay with that? We have friendly, we're okay with that? Okay, anybody unsure, unclear? Okay, sounds great. There's a motion on the floor to continue the investigation and to conduct legal research by the Gunderson Law Firm, if available. If not, the superintendent will act accordingly. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Okay, the motion carries, so the record shows unanimous, seven, zero. All right, thank you, everybody. Okay, we're gonna go on to agenda item 4.07. 4.07, discussion and possible action to review and provide direction on current COVID mitigation measures in effect for the 2021-22 school year, including facilities management, transportation, staff and student exclusions, and face coverings for the district, for district facilities and school sites, based on current federal, state, and local guidance. And of course, this is for possible actions should we choose to. But I do know that there's some updates, I believe there's some updates in testing. So, Dr. Lamarcus?
President Taylor, Superintendent Neal, members of the board, for the record, Paul Lamarcus, chief strategies officer, and I believe Dr. McNeil is kicking us off.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lamarcus. So as we typically do when we have our COVID item, well, I'm not going to read through all of our guiding principles. And then what we've started to do is to catalog all of the previous board actions. So there you see a summary of all the previous board actions. No action has changed. The Board of Trustees directed the superintendent to continue the current COVID-19 mitigation measures. The last time that you heard this item, back on October 12th, and no changes have happened since then. And the Governor's Directive 048 is still in play. No changes to the Governor's Directive around face coverings and such. But what we will do tonight is to do some updates around testing, as well as some updates around vaccination clinics and work with the Washoe County Health District. So with that, Dr. Lamarcus?
Thank you. So we do have just a couple of quick data slides for you. We have been kind of rising a little bit in the community, so the risk meter is now at the red level. The overall score is a 10.5. Our, this is the state dashboard. You'll remember, I think, two meetings ago, we decided to begin using this as opposed to our local dashboard. This gives you overall cases for the year, number of student cases so far this year, staff cases, and the weekly case count is up compared to last week. Here is our trend of case rates per 100,000 by different age groups. And again, we aren't where we were, thank goodness, at the end of August, beginning of September, but we are starting to see a little bit of an uprise. And given that it's flu season, unfortunately, the trend may continue. Test positivity, this indicator has remained down, which is a good sign. So hopefully, with increased vaccinations, we will continue to see test positivity at a low level. So as Dr. McNeil indicated, we wanted to provide you with a brief update regarding testing and then some changes to the testing program. This is the testing program that, as she mentioned, was mandated through Directive 048. Let me just quickly summarize Sections 6 and 7. So Section 6 of that mandate required that for athletes or students participating in activities and adults that are associated with those programs who are leaving the county, they must be tested in the week prior to leaving the county. The Directive, Section 7, also required that the NIAA develop some rules around high school athletics, and in particular, close contact athletics, such as football for the fall season. In the winter season, that would be basketball and wrestling. To date, not counting this week, we did have testing yesterday. We've tested nearly 15,000 students. Just over 100 of those students tested positive. Of the 100 that tested positive, 14 were vaccinated students. The approximate cost, not including this week and next week, is just under $1.2 million. The board will remember that we received a grant through the state Department of Health and Human Services, and you allowed us to use $3.2 million nearly for this purpose. So we're well under budget at this point. At the urging of the Department of Health and Human Services, we are switching test vendors. Washoe County Health District has also recommended this switch. This is a switch that will create a situation which there's no expense to the school district, with the exception of potential modest staffing costs. If we have to have staff that are available at a testing site for a long period of time, there'll be some compensation, but it'll be very low-level compensation. We would use this new vendor, which is North Shore Clinical Laboratories, instead of Health Screening Solutions, because of a grant that they received through the federal government that allows them to do all the testing, both PCR testing and antigen testing at no cost to students and/or staff. We would continue to do the athletic and activities testing. We would also now expand this in the next couple of weeks to staff and students who've been excluded due to close contact within the environment, the learning environment. And as necessary, we could expand testing to broader numbers of staff. For example, if the OSHA requirements come in and require some sort of testing. The tentative schedule is essentially, there will be testing at each of our comprehensive high schools, two nights a week, Monday or Wednesday. And then half our schools, it'll be Tuesday, Thursday. The testing window will be approximately 1:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon, or 1:00 to 6:00. First couple hours will be for athletics and activities. There'll be a break, and then there'll be opportunity for community to receive testing, meaning staff and students who have been excluded and/or, and also, and I should have mentioned it, who are symptomatic and need to get a test in order to return to school. So that's the testing update. I will now turn it over to Ms. Doug Byersdorf.
Thank you, Dr. Lamarcus. Deborah Byersdorf, Deputy Superintendent for the Record, Trustees, and Dr. McNeil. I wanted to provide an academic-related update to you this evening, specifically our district's work in collaboration with the Nevada System of Higher Education, ENSI, and how that is providing some considerations for two of our high schools. You may know that approximately two months ago, ENSI passed a requirement that all of their students who are attending in-person, classes in-person, will be required to provide documentation of a completed vaccination series against COVID-19 before they're allowed to enroll for the spring 2022 semester. Their spring semester starts on January 17th, I believe it is. And actually, students aren't, once they enter the enrollment portal, they're not allowed to continue through without providing that documentation. Additionally, all ENSI employees are also required to provide documentation of their completed vaccination series against COVID-19 on or before December 1st. There are limited exemptions, there's an exemption process for medical or religious reasons, and that also includes a weekly testing requirement or protocol that goes along with that. And we've included on the slide here just information, ENSI's website, that explains that for both their students and their employees. So why we're bringing this forward to you this evening, as we have two high schools where our students do intend in-person classes at an ENSI institution, and it's specifically TMCC. The first one, of course, is TMCC High School, where we have approximately 222 students enrolled. And then the other site is AACT, which is located over on Edison. And right now, there are 62 students in their manufacturing welding pathway that actually cross, literally cross the street over to TMCC's Pennington facility in order to actually do their hands-on welding work there as well. The second semester for our school, for the school district, starts on January 3rd. We do have, obviously, we have staff at both sites. We have one teacher, actually, at AACT, who crosses the street with the students for their classes. And we have approximately 12 staff members, teachers and support staff up at Truckee Meadows High School. So where we're at right now, we're working, you can see the various departments, offices that are working together right now to pull together clear communication to send out to our families. Our students are, to be honest with you, our kids know, and their parents know as well, and are just waiting for the guidance at both sites. And we have, we're working very closely with both Principal David Kitchen up at TMCC and our Principal Tiffany McMaster at AACT. So my goal is to get that guidance out to our families by the end of this week, and then shortly followed thereafter to our employees as well.
So P.H.R., Chief Operating Officer, so I'm here to give you just an update, as I do usually most of these, about vaccination opportunities for our employees. So initial vaccinations, boosters, and additional doses are available at local pharmacies and through community agencies, such as the Health District and Community Health Alliance. Now, I know there's some confusion on this. There is a difference between boosters and additional doses. So anyone who is immune-compromised is eligible and may receive an additional dose of Moderna or Pfizer at least 28 days after their last dose, regardless of age or occupation. Now, if you work for the Washoe County School District and you're a staff member who is not immunocompromised and received Moderna or Pfizer, you are absolutely eligible for a booster, as long as it has been six months since you received your second dose. If you received Janssen, Jansen, or Johnson, Jansen, or Johnson and Johnson, I should say, you may receive a booster of any brand, as long as it's been two months since you received the vaccine. You can keep this same brand, or you can swap for Pfizer, or Moderna, or vice versa. Now, as far as students, in partnership with the Health District, as I kind of mentioned last two weeks ago, and also the Community Health Alliance, Washoe County School District has been hosting COVID-19 vaccine clinics for the community at school sites, free of charge to anyone 12 years old or older who has not received a vaccine. Now, at our school vaccination clinics, there are two time periods. One is for students and staff, that's kind of near the end of the school day. The second one is for the community, held after school ends. Now, vaccinations for youth 5 to 11, as we all know, has now been approved. So the Washoe County Health District is currently recommending going through your pediatricians, family practice clinics, or other healthcare providers for these vaccinations. But at the same time, the Health District is starting to have community pods for vaccinations. That will include our school sites, but we are working through that. What I heard today is that the sites we have next week, they will have 50 opportunities for children 5 to 11. Now, they have to be there with their parent. That would only be during the community time. So we'll have 50 available. We are working on elementary school events. It'll be at our, mostly at our walk-up schools to begin with. That'll probably be sometime around winter break where we will start that. We are coordinating, again, with Washoe County Health District and Community Health Alliance on that. And with that, I'll turn this back over to Dr. McNeil.
Thank you very much. And so I just wanted to give a very brief update on what we know as far as the vaccination mandate through President Biden's plan. So I have a call with the Nevada Department of Education and Department of Health and Human Services and the Governor's Office this Friday, to where we are hoping that we are going to learn additional guidance that will be coming down, as far as what those particular mandates will be. You all know, we have expressed, we have stated that Nevada is an OSHA state, and so Nevada is in the Department of Labor, as far as following what those OSHA guidelines are. If the public wants to make public comment, we know that the federal register is open, I believe, for 30 days. I'm not sure for 30 days, but I know that the federal register is open if people want to make federal or public comment regarding the OSHA plan. But we will be communicating, and we also very much so want to work with our employee associations as far as any type of guidance that will be coming down from the Governor's Office around employee vaccinations and testing. And as far as I know, that it would be a dual program to where vaccinations would be available, but also testing, weekly testing. And that was one of the reasons why we wanted to switch to the new testing vendor, is because their capacity is much greater than the previous vendor. And so we will bring forth information to the board. But it's my understanding that this OSHA plan is going to come into effect in January. So we want to get as much information as we possibly can from the Governor's Office, NDE and DHHS, on what that's gonna look like.
Okay, thank you, Madam Superintendent. So we'll bring it back here to the table, to the, so we do have public comment. Let's start with her then. Thank you, JJ.
Kathy Reyes.
Welcome, Ms. Reyes.
Thank you. And to the men and women in blue, thank you, appreciate you, you guys, we appreciate you. And to the board that doesn't want to listen to science or anybody else, there was an article in Newsmax by Dr. Malone, Robert Malone, for vaccinated children. Dr. Malone, the self-proclaimed inventor of the mRNA vaccines, told Newsmax that for a child, the risk of taking a COVID-19 vaccine far outweigh the benefit. You guys are not getting the exact information, and you're running head into a catastrophe. They've already broke down the numbers. For the kids that get COVID, they have underlying issues. And if they have to go into the hospital, it's because they have a compromised immune system, or they're suffering from something else. But for you to vaccinate the kids, the vaccine, the vaccine that has been authorized hasn't even been put to market yet, that's not available. So what they're calling a vaccine is not a vaccine. And for you guys to run headstrong in not allowing kids to go into further education and requiring, mandating, I think you're putting the cart before the horse, instead of waiting to let it play out. You are not required to move forward with this, and I think you should wait. The other thing, the pharmaceutical can't be sued, but you can. You can be sued. So whoever institutes this and puts it in motion, and families come home with a child in a body bag and a toe tag and planning their funeral, I think some of you will be held accountable for it. Shame on you when you don't want to listen to the science, but you want to run scared like everybody else. If you're vaccinated, you shouldn't worry whether I am or not. That vaccine should be protecting you. Why do you have to run out for another booster? A polio shot vaccine? You don't get polio. None of you question why every six months is there a requirement that you need another booster, and then another booster, and another booster? How many of you guys brought a peer review of the vaccine? How many? Have you seen a peer review on that? Five years out, 20 years out? And yet you want to institute shots for the kids, mandating it? And again, you were lied to, two weeks, and we'd have a handle on it. Get the vaccination, and we could get rid of these stupid diapers. But nope, that's not the case. Get your booster, keep wearing your little diapers, and stay six feet away. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes.
That's all I have for this item.
Thank you very much. We'll bring it back here to the table then. Okay, is there any desire for any change in where we are now? There are a lot of things that are happening. Really appreciate the changes in the testing, and appreciate the data on the testing as well. I think that was of interest as well when we got into it. And we, as a board, decided, let's just go as far as we can to make sure people are safe as we can. But I think the data is important as well. So, yeah, we'll bring it here, and you're gonna keep us up to date? And what else has happened nationally? I'm not done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I saw you. I saw you, I saw you. The Superintendent will keep us up to date as things develop on the state, connected to the federal level as well. Trustee Church?
Thank you. So first of all, nobody in the school district is thinking or discussing mandatory vaccines for staff or students, is that correct?
At this point in time, vaccinations are not mandatory for students, and the information that we're trying to find out now is through OSHA for the employees, is where that is.
So we don't, as of today, there's no?
As of today, there is no mandate.
And as far as the people that attend the TMCC, as students or staff, it's very probable they'll say, yeah, I got the vaccine, no problem. For those that say, no, I'm not gonna get tested every week, I'm not gonna get the vaccine, what do we do?
So again, Deborah, Byersdorf Deputy Superintendent. Or there could also be a situation, trustee Church, where a student or staff member applies for one of the exemptions, and it's not approved either. So that's what we're working through right now. We want to get the information relative to our students out as soon as possible, because it could mean that a student needs to return to their zoned high school in time for the new semester, starting on January the 3rd. And then Chief HR Officer Emily Ellison, myself, and a few others, too, are also working through potential implications, maybe for staff.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood, because I am, at this point, pending, trying to have an open mind, 100% opposed to mandatory vaccines for staff or students. So nothing's, am I correct? Nothing's going to happen without a vote of the board at some point? I mean, we're not gonna, nothing's gonna be imposed without coming back to the board?
I, and if you're talking specifically about the Truckee Meadows Community College situation, the two campuses, we need to adhere to ENSI's requirements. So that's why we wanted to bring it forward today, specific to those two schools.
And if a staff member says, I'm not gonna do it, then they're not gonna be punished. They may be reassigned, but they're not gonna.
Yes, that could definitely be the next step. So Emily and I are working through that. And we'll work with our associations, too.
And even if OSHA says something about everybody has, staff has to have them, or whatever, I assume that would come back to the board at some point?
I would imagine.
We'll bring it back to the board.
Yeah.
Whether there will be flexibility on that is another story.
I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, trustee Church. Other questions, comments? No, I think, I think, just where you stood, Deputy Byersdorf, is kind of where I thought you were getting at in terms of TMCC, it's their facility, right? It's their building, and it's their campus, so that's, it's not, we don't have a lot of flexibility in that. But they'll have some, you know, it's not punitive. If some other things happen, you can still go to school, you can still have a job. And I think that's important.
The only other comment popped into my head, if we were to make a motion, and something happens between now and the next board meeting, perhaps grant the superintendent some authority to, if it got easier, do we need to discuss that? If 048 directive goes the way?
Well, I think, I will say this, I don't, I don't, I don't know that, at this point, I don't get the feeling from the board that there's any shift that would, so no motion would be in place. that there's any shift that would, so no motion would be in place. And one of the things you may recall is previously, in between, if there are some shifts in mandates from a federal or level, then in between time, the Superintendent does have the ability to shift accordingly in between board meetings, because it's two weeks between when we meet. And so that, that's still, we haven't taken that back, so that is certainly still in place. Okay, but this, again, her, the information she's getting, and then information I'm getting on, on School Board President, national calls from the Council of Gray City Schools, is the anticipation for any kind of impact from what may happen from a OSHA standpoint is not before January. So there's still, there's still some time. They're still figuring it out, right? Still figuring it out, so. But those decisions, they come back here. Okay? All right, it looks like we're good with this. Thank you, staff. Thank you very much for the updates. Thank you, Deputy Byersdorf. I didn't think about how ENCE requirements impact our students and staff, but of course it does, right? Of course they do. Okay. Agenda item 4.08, discussion and possible action to approve the official job description for the Superintendent of Schools of the Washoe County School District. And before us is Chief HR Officer Emily Ellison. And as you'll recall, this is a, we, we put ourselves on a pretty aggressive schedule so that we're in the best position possible when it comes down to the search, the recruiting and search process. The first piece is this, and then we're looking, I think we may even already have scheduled a special meeting to review the proposals from potential recruiting/hiring firms or people to be involved in this. So this keeps us moving at that pace. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Ms. Ellison.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Taylor, President Taylor. Emily Ellison, Chief Human Resources Officer for the record. And we are here this evening to discuss the job description for the position of Superintendent. Really, the purpose of the job description in this case, because it's a little bit different in that this is also a contracted employee of the board, is to support and clarify contractual obligations, give candidates an idea of the role and expectations specific to this organization. I think it helps communicate organizational culture and, and the like, and is not intended to be an exhaustive list of responsibilities. So I think that's another important consideration, is, you know, trustees may have individual things that they feel very passionate about, and that's the purpose of this discussion tonight, to determine whether or not it makes sense to include that in a job description document, which is not intended to be exhaustive. So I'll start just by sharing a little bit about my approach to developing this description. Obviously, feedback gathered during the last superintendent's search process was used to inform the initial draft of this document. We also looked to school districts that were currently hiring and other publicly available job descriptions, a mix of large and small districts, both in-state and out-of-state, and nine in total with many common themes that you'll see reflected in the, in the document that I've assembled. The job description was developed in late 2019, and so given, you know, the, the amount of time that has passed since then, I'm not recommending any changes at this point. I think it's a comprehensive job description that, that describes the work of the CEO of our organization, but certainly wanted to bring it forward for discussion and final approval. The document itself is consistent with job description formatting for other positions. You will see that there is a summary description that provides an overview of the position, and then exemplary duties and responsibilities are really divided up into thematic paragraphs, if you will. So for example, the first paragraph is focused on, or the first item is focused on organizational culture. The theme of the second is educational vision and instructional leadership. I combined finance into the third, and, and funding, and the role that the superintendent plays in advocacy for funding into the fourth bullet. Stakeholder engagement as a priority or responsibility is reflected in the fifth bullet. The theme of six is change management. Then we have the Board of Trustees' relationship, and then Board of Trustees' duties. There are some operational tasks that the superintendent is responsible for. There's certainly a policy component to this position, and so item number nine talks about representing the interests of and advocating for the district's students and staff at a local and national level. The 10th bullet, 10th section refers to the relationship with the Nevada Department of Education, which is obviously very important to our work. Number 11 refers to human resources and human capital leadership, which is also an important component of the superintendent's role. Operations and capital projects responsibility is the theme of number 12. 13 is legal. Emergencies in 14, and then delegation in 15. So again, kind of organized into themes with more specific information provided in each section. And then the employment standards reflect the minimum qualifications, experiencing, and licensing required for the position. One of the changes that was made last time, and I left it the same this time based on the previous conversations that were had around wanting a wide variety of candidate types. And so you'll notice that although the education refers to a master's degree in educational administration, you'll see a notation around or-related field. And then same thing with an experience. We've indicated an interest in five years or more experience as an executive-level leader, and then of course, educational experience desired. The other important sentence here is in the, in the top, under education and experience, any combination of education and experience that could provide the required skills is qualifying. So a candidate doesn't necessarily have to check every single box specifically, but you look at candidates in, in the totality of their experience. The other thing that I'd like to point out is that Nevada revised statute does require that if the superintendent is not a licensed school administrator, that a licensed school administrator will be, will need to be named by this board and put, given responsibility for all academic matters. So it, it would potentially change the makeup of the school district leadership team if the academic and operational responsibilities needed to be split apart because you hired someone who was not a licensed school administrator. But we did create room for that in the job description, and so you'll see under licenses and certifications that current possession of, or possession within three years of a valid school administrator license would be considered qualifying. Um, let's see here. I think that is all that I wanted to highlight for you. The competencies for successful performance of job duties are really more descriptions of knowledge and skills that would help someone be successful in the position, whereas the top half of the job description really focuses on the responsibilities of the position and the role. And so based on my experience last time, I'm hoping my computer will fire up so that if you guys have a lot of comments, I can take typed notes. It got a little bit hard to follow when I was doing handwritten notes last time. So with that, I will open it up for discussion, questions and comments.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Ellison. Why don't we, do we have public comment on this, JJ? None on this? Okay, we'll go ahead and bring it here to the board. I see you first, Vice President Manette.
Thank you, Madam President. I have heard from several principals that, and I don't know if it would belong in here, that the schools would really like to continue TMSS and PLCs, because there's nothing like you're teaching along, you're getting used to this, you get it down, and yeah, and then something happens, and it's gone, and it was working. So I, I don't know if that's what we put in there, but it's valuable.
I think the comment that I would make around that is, we might not want to list specific programming, but I think the, kind of the core of what educators are communicating, right, is that maybe they want some consistency in terms of kind of the vision, right? Like what we're doing, and where we're heading, and how we're going to get there? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
Yeah, and I think I would, I would also think that, I agree, I don't know that we want it here per se, but I do think those are the kinds of things that can be fleshed out, a little bit as we're talking to candidates and interviewing them about, about their vision, how do they see those types of things? I think that, that's the kind of thing that can be fleshed out as well. Dr. Nicolet?
I will concur with that. I've heard almost those exact words to, the PLCs, we work very hard, we want to continue those. And so however you have to word it, I trust your judgment. I'll tell you something I feel extremely strong about, and I've thought a lot about this, and so it goes back up to, to begin with minimum qualifications. Number two, experience serving pre-K through 12 educational systems, I would say a must.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying to follow you. What, where?
It, it's, let me get you the page of the document.
Yeah, if you can get the page, that'd be awesome.
You betcha. It is page three.
Okay.
Right there, minimum, right in the middle, minimum, minimum qualifications.
Oh, yeah, 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 I got you.
Okay. Number two, and then.
Can you say what you said again?
Sure, you bet. Under experience, in the parentheses, experience serving pre-K through 12 education systems, a must.
So you would change it from desire to a must?
That's what I would say.
Okay, that's your recommendation? Okay.
And then I have two more recommendations, and I feel extremely, I mean, just like, I don't know how you could get me to budge on these, but I, I can be, I can be persuaded. Under knowledge of, I would add, knowledge of teaching and learning best practices. Skilled in, and I know this narrows it, again, I feel very strongly about it, a fourth bullet under skilled in, page three, would be teaching practices. My point being is I feel very strongly about the person who is honored to, to receive this position needs to have been in the classroom, walk in teacher's shoes, if you will.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Nicolet. Trustee Church?
Thank you. Couple of brief things. First, number 11, I think it needs to say more definitively that you got to be able to deal with the labor unions, associations. It's in there vaguely, but that is, I don't want to put a percent on it, but that is a big part of the job, is the labor contract.
Do you don't think labor relations covers that sufficiently?
I don't think so. I don't think it does. I think it needs to be really.
What would you say?
Well, you always put me on the spot like this.
I'm sorry.
I got, I have the problem, I don't have the solution, but I just.
Well, that's not that good.
Much more definitive on, and now I got to put on my glasses.
Wait, can your mic on, please? Go ahead, go ahead. Trustee Church, there may be a reference in section three that meets your needs. At the end of the last sentence, it talks about protection and maintenance of the district's assets and limiting the district's exposure to liability, and oversight and responsibility for contract negotiations, including collective bargaining agreements.
Okay, I can live with it.
Does that not get there, Trustee Church?
More or less. I mean, I, I didn't see that, so I could probably live with it, but I do think there needs to be a strong emphasis that they understand they're, that's a big part of the job. And I'll move on. Number eight, deliberates on section eight. Really, they, they don't really deliberate. That's the board's, you know, if, if asked a question or whatever, they respond and offer input, but I, I don't like that word deliberate, so I'll let the other trustees consider that. And then a minor thing, when you get way towards the bottom, it doesn't have a number, and I think you probably cut and pasted it, it talks about doing whatever your supervisor says. It's in big, black, bold capitals, the last word supervisor. Well, we're the, shouldn't it just say Board of Trustees, or trustees rather than supervisor? Very minor, but I put that in. And then I'll get into the, the big one that I feel very strongly about. So maybe I can nudge my colleague to my right. I feel exactly the opposite, and I think that we're limiting.
I'm sorry, on which one?
On the minimum qualifications.
Oh.
And I think.
No, I mean you, I meant which one of the things that she said. Okay.
My, my colleague, two to my right, Dr. Nicolet, and I don't think, and I'm going to all go into detail on this, that that should be a requirement. Let's see what we get, and then we can decide. So let me give a hypothetical, or a couple. When, when Lowe's, or Home Depot, or Domino's Pizza gets a CEO, or CEO, they've never made pizza in their life, they've never driven a nail, they're there to run the billion-dollar, in our case, a billion-dollar organization, as we just talked about, from labor on down, they have, or may have, an assistant, as Ms. Byersdorf is, you know.
Deputy.
Deputy Director for Education, or her title, I don't, she's not looking at me, so she's not helping out.
She's a deputy superintendent.
Deputy Superintendent for, you know, so let's hypothetically say that you were, you get a applicant who says, I'm a three-star general, I ran the Air Force Academy, or I ran West Point for 10 years, and after I retired, I was a trustee for six years with the Denver School District, and, you know, I have a PhD in management, and a master's in management, or something, you know, you know what I'm saying? I want to talk to that person. I want them to be eligible to apply, so I don't want to limit us here. I mean, this is something we can talk about when we get the applicants in. And obviously, I'm biased, you know, Air Force General, Navy Admiral, a CO, what about, here's a good example, a city manager who has run a big city. They know, I think, depending on their qualifications, I want them to apply. A county manager, maybe a Washoe County manager, we had seated here earlier today, who also was a trustee, would be limiting that person from applying because they don't have that education background. It's a billion-dollar business, from labor to bus drivers, to everything that you're financed. I mean, I'd rather have a person with a management degree in finance, I think. So at the risk of going round and round.
I was just about to say, all righty.
I saw you.
Okay, you felt me, you felt me leaning in.
I got, that's my opinion, that we don't want to limit it. We, we want to cast a wide net. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Church. Other, Dr., I mean, Dr., Vice President Manette.
Thank you, Madam President. I understand that, but in 29 years of teaching the district, during those 29 years, the best superintendent we had, in a humble teacher's view, and many other people I talked to, came from within and rose up because they got it, because we're not a business. We're, we have a business part to us, but we're a bunch of children who just need to learn. And so I, I guess I don't necessarily agree with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Trustee Rodriguez?
I like to think there's part of some sort of common ground here. I hear Trustee Church is saying, I mean, there's a lot to be said about, you know, a military officer, or a transfer major, things of that nature, that have run large, complex organizations. But at the same time, you don't want a sheriff that's never answered a domestic violence call. So is there a way we can see about a mixture of college, education, and experience? You know, I mean, I mean, I hear you're saying, you get, you know, you get someone that's retired from the military or whatnot, or CEO, but, you know, there was a substitute teacher for a while, like, you know what, maybe I could be a superintendent. So is there a way we can see about mixing some, some of that?
Well, thank you, Trustee Rodriguez. I, I will, and I'm just, just, I, I'm actually going to say that I would rather leave it open so that we can attract that applicant. Now, that applicant may not be the one who we end up hiring, but if we, if we put it on here, then we can't even talk to that person. And that's the difference. I want to be able to talk to that person. This is my personal opinion, right? Not because I don't think the educational piece is extremely important, I think it absolutely is. The academic piece, it absolutely is. But if we get that unique person that doesn't quite check that box, they don't have, they don't have to be a finalist, they don't have to, well, this, if, if we put it in here, they can't even apply. I mean, we can't even talk to that person if, if we restrict it here. And we might get that unique person with that unique set of this, and this, and this, like, you know what? Let's talk. I mean, that's my piece. I'd rather, it isn't going to cost us an educational candidate if we, if we don't put it in here, because it's a school district superintendent, right? But it could cost us that one that has a, that has a unique perspective. I mean, it's, now, is it, is it, I think it's okay if we talk about it, which we say here in a couple of places, that like doctors in educational administration or related field prefer, but that doesn't mean the person who doesn't have this can't apply. mean the person who doesn't have this can't apply. I don't mind it being preferred, I think it is preferred. But I do, I do think it is preferred. But I think when we say required, that means we can't even consider that person that might be, you know what, if we, and I, I want, I want, to me, part of a, a successful search starts, starts with having, having a great pool. And I would, I would like to not eliminate that person from even being in the pool in the event, right? We might have five finalists, and one of them is not from K-12. But hey, you know what, let's talk. I would rather leave that open. I think, I think that, that just, that gives us an opportunity to talk to somebody, maybe to have a different perspective, and there, if you're not, if you don't have an educational background, then yes, it's more of an uphill battle because that is preferred. But if somebody is really good, you know, I'd hate to eliminate them before we can get a chance to have a conversation.
I like the idea of educational background, but not limiting it to K-12, i.e. the general that ran the Air Force Academy, the Mr. Gaultney, who probably wouldn't apply, but he ran Truckee Meadows Community College, and he's got a PhD. So we don't, yeah, we want to cast a wide net.
Comments on that. So this is part of, as we look at, and to me, in my, in my, in my comments on this too, I think that, I think that if we were to say that they have to know the best practices in teaching, it's like, we want them to, right? It's going to be hard if you don't, right? I prefer someone who's been a principal. I prefer someone who's been a teacher, they've been a principal, that is my, that is my preference. I don't want to not be able to talk to somebody, talk to somebody who maybe they don't, maybe it's a little untraditional, you know, maybe it's a different kind of educational background, maybe it's something that, we can't even talk to that person. And it is a very competitive superintendent search field. Regardless of what happens in Clark, there are two, maybe three, the three largest districts in the state, about 20% of the superintendents nationwide are, is turning, they're turning over this year. 20%. They're turning over this year. That's huge. That's huge. And so I would hate to limit us, because of something we say in our job description, and it's something that we prefer, but maybe, just maybe.
If I may, this is similar to the conversation that occurred during the last time that we updated this job description, and that's how we landed on the broader language. So, you know, again, any combination of skills and experience that could likely provide the required knowledge opens it up to possibilities that you may bring a different combination of background to the table. And to your point, Dr. Taylor, it's not so narrow that it's exclusionary. And so, that, from a, from a human resources perspective, I always tell people, don't make it narrow unless you have to, right? There are very specific jobs that have very specific qualifications that have to be narrow, but so that you can cast a wide net, more general is better, and then communicate what preferences are.
Thank you, Ms. Ellison. Dr. Nicolet?
I'm getting closer. I, knock it off. Oh, wait, I didn't say that. I, I do believe that whether it's a general, or whether it's a person running, you know, Tesla, that the, that they're, the person must come to us with an ability to understand teaching and learning. Whether it's, I was just going to say Tesla. Whether it's about how we ensure that all of our employees know what they're supposed to be doing, and how do we help them be able to do that, teaching and learning? I just, I need those two words in there, teaching and learning. We're education. Somehow, work your magic.
And now I'm going to do, for you, I don't, I don't disagree, but I'm going to do like I do with, where? How would you say that? I mean, I'm certainly not opposed to teaching and learning at all.
Sure.
I just, I just want to remind us too, this is, we want them to, to, this is a different skill set than the person that's in the classroom.
Yes, I can answer your question.
Right, right. Doesn't, doesn't mean it's better or anything like that, right? But it's just different, and so we don't want to lose those, those pieces. So you have a recommendation for where?
I do.
Oh, that's how she has a recommendation, Trustee Church? For where? Okay, okay, just, okay, all right.
Under knowledge. It's just knowledge, it's not ability, although I would like that too, but I'm going to acquiesce. Knowledge of teaching and learning practices.
Is there, what's, what's some thinking around that, Trustee Church?
So we would take that, so that would be number one, little bullet, number one, best practices, teaching and learning, take out school district administration.
No, that's a different bullet, I think.
Different, different bullet.
That's how I'm hearing you, Dr. Nicolet.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good with it, as long as it's not K-12.
Yes, I see him. Thank you. Okay, all right, we'll go to, Trustee Mayberry.
Good evening, thank you. I, great discussion by everybody. I agree with everything that's been said, and I favor, you know, something, providing some flexibility too, so you can cast a net as wide as possible. I guess the only question I have, and it's strictly a question, it comes out as a criticism, it's not intended to, I, again, I just, I just don't know what I don't know. But on the minimum qualifications, Ms. Ellison, experienced five years for a size of a school district as large as ours, is, is five years a good minimum? Should, should it be, should it be more?
I think that's a fair question, Trustee Mayberry. Again, Emily Ellison for the record. Really, that number comes from, again, a focus on executive level leadership, so not necessarily five years in education, but really five years in that top-level leadership role. And then the other thing is, as it relates to licensure, there are some requirements for obtaining the school administrator license, and so I believe, I want to say that it's also three years of experience, possibly five. But nonetheless, that there was a connection between the licensure requirements and then a focus on five years of experience at the kind of C level.
Thank you.
That's, that's, good question, Trustee Mayberry. I was going to say the same thing, the focus there is executive level. So if someone has been a superintendent, let's say a smaller district, for five years, that person, someone like that would be, would be a great applicant for us, great candidate. Other comments, feedback on this, Trustee Church?
Sure. Couple of ways I've been thinking in my brain how to approach what I'm about to say, but one of them, let me give you a hypothetical, but it's a little more than a hypothetical, and I'm not suggesting, if you can read between the lines, a particular person, but I'm looking at a resume, bachelor's degree, master's from UNR, budget director for a big local hospital, 15 years as a county manager, six years on a school, large school board, Board of Trustees, including president for two years of the Board of Trustees, now with the Economic Development Agency, is a hypothetical, but again.
That's not hypothetical, though. We know whose, we know whose resume that is. That's not hypothetical.
But, you know what I'm saying, it's like, I would want to talk to that person, and I, I don't want them excluded because of some technicality. So, if, maybe take it one by one. I'd like to see the license certificate thing go away. We'll deal with that when we hire.
I think that's state law?
No, but again, you said we can do a, they could have a subordinate do it.
But I think they should know coming in that within three years, this says within three years. So that within three years, you're going to have to get this, because state law says you're going to have to get this in three years.
I thought there was an exception.
There is an exception, that if the superintendent is not a licensed school administrator, a licensed school administrator has to be hired and designated for the supervision of all academic affairs. So you essentially have two superintendents at that point, one for operations and one for academics.
Well, in essence, wouldn't say Ms. Byersdorf's present position cover that?
No, the job description for the current deputy superintendent does not reflect full responsibility for all academic affairs, right? So the superintendent's job description is different from the deputy superintendent, and so I believe a new job description would need to be formulated and compensation determined.
All right, I guess I lost that one. Number two, I would, on minimum qualifications, number two, I literally would just take out the parentheses, experience pre-K, I'd just take out that whole section. In other words, five years executive level leader, yes, but experience serving pre-K to 12, again, I want to cast a wide net like that hypothetical I just mentioned, so.
But it says desired, not required. It says desired. And I do think it is desired, because it's an educational.
I just don't want to scare anybody away.
No, but we have, we have a search firm. We'll have a search firm and some variety in there working with that, and we'll have, and by the time we select that, we haven't selected that person or firm yet, they'll be able to get a feel for as a board. We want it to be open. We want to make sure we don't eliminate people. But we are, this is what, we, it's like, you know, if you're, you're Kentucky Fried Chicken, and you're going to hire somebody to take over, you, we want, I want some, we do chicken. I desire somebody who knows how to do chicken. Now, if you, if you, if you do fish, you might be good, but I desire somebody that does chicken.
All right, I'm zero for two. And under education, I'll go, I'll go oh for three, I'll strike out. Do we have to say educational administration or related field?
I think that's a good question. I, I'll be open to leave that open.
It says or related. You can relate almost anything.
Well, but again, it might scare them away. Could you take it out and just, again, a PhD and a master's in public administration?
That's related.
Well, I think that could be interpretation. I mean, obviously, if you have someone that has a PhD in airborne claim-making, we're probably not going to look at them very hard. But I mean, I hear what he's saying, because I mean, if I'm a CEO of Tesla, I may not have a, you know, doctorate in educational administration, I might have it in chemical engineering or something like that, which is something to be looked at.
But the doctorate is preferred, so if you don't have a doctorate, that doesn't matter. Right? The doctorate is preferred.
Yeah, I was, you know, I would, I would like to leave that open as well. You know, master's degree, and, you know, you know, is required, but then, you know, a doctorate in any field, or a doctorate or PhD is preferred. Because that does give us a wide net, you know. Again, the Tesla engineer or Tesla CEO may not have these degrees, but.
Well, maybe the, the middle ground on that is master's degree in educational administration or related field, and then doctorate preferred. And then you don't have any field behind the doctorate, is that what you're saying?
You know, not necessarily, because.
Just, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what you're saying, so what do you say?
I guess my mind is, master's degree is, I would say, should be required, in my opinion.
I agree.
But again, I was, I would leave that open.
So just master's degree required, doctor's degree preferred?
Yeah.
Because again, I think we do go to the CEOs or the generals out there, or, you
know, the sheriff that never did a traffic stop, but, you know, it does leave it open. And again, we're getting that wide net. You know, and I'll be honest, anyone that has a doctorate degree in any field, I think is noteworthy.
If I might.
I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
What if it's in leadership? That's not education, but that's definitely a great thing I'd look at. What if it's in organizational management?
That's where the related piece comes in, quite honestly. But it's, that's, that's the intention of the related, if it's management, if it's leadership, if it, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, it could be, let's say, I mean, if someone, that's, I'm not, that's, personally, that's not something for me to lay on the sword. Honestly, is with the, if we say master's degree required, doctorate preferred.
Could we maybe leave examples like, or related fields such as?
Well, I'll tell you what, let's, 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 let's see what the, what's, what's the recommendation for change on this, and then we begin, we got to begin to make motions on these changes as we go.
Could we add leadership or management?
We can do whatever we want to.
What about that? I mean, I'm striking, I got two strikes on me, and the next pitch is coming. Master's degree in education, leadership, or management?
Or related field, I mean.
Or related field. Leadership, can we throw in leadership or management?
If that, want to make a motion to that effect? We need to start putting some stuff down. We have a couple lights on here, you can, see if we get, no, no, see if you, then we can get a second, and then go into discussion, so.
Well, just for this one section?
Yeah, just for this one section, yep, we need to start.
I just make a motion, then, that we change the wording on minimum qualifications, number one, education, master's degree in educational administration, management or leadership, management, comma, leadership or related field.
Okay, there's a motion on, and then, would you do anything about doctorate? You want to finish that line?
I wouldn't change that necessarily.
Okay.
But if we cover the first, and the related field under, oh, yes, it would, it would change the exact same wording for the PhD.
Or ADD, so you wanted to just say doctorate.
JJ, can you make that screen smaller, so that?
Okay, so it looks like there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second, and we can have some discussion around that? The motion is, and let me see if I can restate it, Trustee Church, is that under education, it says master's degree in educational administration, leadership, management or related field, semicolon, I put leadership first on, because there's something called educational leadership, so I put that first on purpose, right? Master's degree in educational administration, comma, leadership, comma, management or related field, semicolon, doctorate preferred. Is that what, I'm just, I'm trying to restate what you said, don't.
I think, yes. You just put the doctorate preferred at the end, not the beginning.
Yeah, I didn't list all the stuff after doctorate, it's just, I think, I was just trying to restate what I thought you were saying and keep it kind of tight. Okay, that's the motion on the floor. Is there a second to the motion?
I would second that, the way it's.
Okay, second to the motion, okay, so let's have discussion. Any further discussion? I'm looking, I don't see, that's low picture, okay. All right, so why don't we vote on this piece right here? Okay, because we were getting consensus, and here we didn't, so it's like, let's move it forward. So, all those in favor of the change to education as noted, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Okay, opposition? The motion is carried, it is seven to zero. Okay, so I think we've taken care of, of what, of what your concerns were. I think we took care of yours by consensus.
Yes.
Dr. Nicolet, so you're clear on those? Okay, any other questions, discussion?
Just to recap, that's adding knowledge of teaching.
Microphone, microphone.
That's adding knowledge of teaching and learning practices to the knowledge of section. Does a motion need to happen for that too?
We had consensus on that. I mean, we can certainly do it, but there was, there was consensus, so we didn't need to break that up. We got their work done, everybody nodded. Okay, so otherwise, otherwise, we're, we're at a place.
Quick comment.
Any other opinion on the word deliberates versus?
Keep, keep your microphone on. Can you point out to where that was again?
With section eight?
Section eight. I, I do think that it's appropriate at times for the, for the superintendent to have input and to participate in some of those, so I don't think that's necess, I mean, yes, we, we make the ultimate decision, but there are times when we say, what do you think, what do you think, Dr. McNair, what do you think superintendent? And sometimes that's helpful, because they have a perspective that we don't have, so that, that doesn't bother me. They don't get to vote, but sometimes they do participate in the deliberations, in my mind. Other, does that, I hear what you're saying, though, but I don't think it's misplaced, because sometimes we do ask our opinion, and one of the.
But I'm good with it. It's, it's.
Certainly not big, and then the final thing would be the word supervisor changing.
Keep, keep your mic on.
Supervisor.
You keep pushing it, going on.
Supervisor changing it to Board of Trustees.
And where is it?
That's in that big, bold letters at the bottom, capitalized.
That's, I think, I don't think anybody, I think that's consensus on that, because we're the supervisor. That's on page four.
What was he saying?
Page four, instead of supervisor, the last, in the bold, bold caps, instead of supervisor, it says by the Board of Trustees. We are the supervisor, so it's, yeah, okay, I don't, I don't see any, any objection to that, so we have consensus going forward, so, okay. I think that gives you what you need, Ms. Ellison. Okay, so let's do this. Why don't we have a motion to approve this, a job description, so that we have that, wouldn't that be cleaner? Why don't we have a motion to approve this job description as amended, as edited or amended or changed tonight? That way, we have a clear motion that this is our job description going forward.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, and a second, that this is the finalized approved job description. We've had plenty of discussion. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, all right, I see your aye. Motion carries, and let the record show a seven zip. All right, we stay on schedule, thank you very much. Someone can let the superintendent know that we are moving forward, we are moving forward. Okay, we'll go with board reports, board reports, and we'll start with, we'll start here on our, on our right side. We already had our student representative report, we'll start. Trustee Rodriguez, I'll just.
Uh, I was, I think, how long ago was our last board report? Um, trying to think. I did have the pleasure of visiting Alameda Valley Elementary School with Clerk Nicolet a while ago, I think that was my last school visit then. I did have.
Oh, oh, thank you, JJ.
I agree, thank you.
I agree, thank you. Thank you, everyone. So, um, and I've had a number, a number of constituent, it was like to say, neighbor interactions, Vice President Minetto and I got to meet a couple of our constituents for coffee. So, yeah, and then I was, you know, I was sick for a while, so not a whole lot going on there. But I do have two school board visits planned, and I'm meeting with one of our department heads next week, so I'm gonna, and then I'm going on a cruise, so I'm gonna be gone for about a couple weeks, so just saying.
Right, you missed the next meeting, correct?
Yep.
Yes, okay, thank you very much. Vice President Minetto.
And I am kind of like you, I have no clue how far back to go, but I...
Just give a couple highlights, we don't have to be...
Okay, well, I just wanna say, and I think this was mentioned before, the graduation of the two students at Sparks High School in October was fabulous. It was lovely. It was this long, but it was so exciting, those kids had worked so hard. And then I went to, last week, I went to CTE, oh, what are they called? CTAE, signature passport, passport for high schools, that means the middle schools going into high school. And it was really amazing and fun, and it well participated, it was just kind of amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Minetto. We're going, go to Clerk Nicolet.
Oh, you got it. I had the pleasure of visiting, I'll just say the names, just, 'cause I had such a wonderful time, and I was treated so respectfully, and had wonderful deep dive conversations. Huffaker, Pleasant Valley, Elmcrest, Swope, HUG, Trainer, Lemelson, O'Brien, and North Valleys. And I truly can say that I just had, I had so much fun when, when I was at North Valleys, I, oh, no, excuse me, when I was at McQueen, I, I didn't put that down. I walked into the, with the principal, into the choir, and they were seated around doing a lesson. And it was so cool, juniors and seniors, and, and I was introduced, and they were so polite, and I said, I don't suppose you guys would like to sing a song for me? They immediately popped up, and without missing a beat, that choir director, they sang a song, and it was absolutely wonderful, and it was, it was just wonderful. They didn't even miss a beat. And it was so much fun, and I really appreciate that. I had the pleasure of visiting Bailey Charter School, Sierra Nevada Academy Charter School, and attending the Coral Academy grand opening of their beautiful new facility with Stacy Cooper and Superintendent McNeil. Last but not least, I am official now on the government, the governor's Early Childhood Advisory Commission, actually, it's a council, and attended my first meeting, and it's a group of wonderful early childhood educators, owners, let me see, teachers, movers and shakers, and very intelligent, hardworking people who wanna have good things happen for our young children and their families, and our educators. So I've just, I've had a really good time representing Washoe County School District as a trustee. It's been an honor.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. Trustee Smith?
Thank you so much, President Taylor. There's, there's been a lot going on, super excited to share the following. I volunteered at Swope Middle School for their Panther Prowl, which is probably the most fun and gloriously messy school event I have ever seen. It's a color run for all the students there. Principal Nakashima went first and got hit with all the different colors. Everybody walks out of there looking like some version of Rainbow Bright, and it was just absolutely phenomenal to see the joy, the parents, the teachers, it was just wonderful. So great to be there. Staying on Swope, I also visited the school again, this time for my official school visit, and I toured the Swope Middle School expansion, which is a phenomenal project. It is such a wonderful example of continuing the promise of expanding and improving our schools and established neighborhoods. To see the work that they're doing while the students are still there, and what they're accomplishing is really best in class. Our facilities team and our construction partners are just doing amazing things. So I also met with parents, teachers, and principals at PTA and PFA meetings at Huffaker Elementary School, Baum Elementary School, Jesse Beck Elementary School. Principal Barker, on the day that I went, it was Boss's Day, and so she was dressed as a hot dog, because her school named her the Top Dog, and it was just absolutely glorious. And I think going to these PTA and PFA meetings, you hear the good news of the partnerships between the parents and the teachers and their schools, and it's just really amazing to get a feel for what's happening for those schools and those, those partnerships, really amazing. From afar, I supported the Harvest Festival at Levy Booth Elementary, so special thanks to Principal Pizar, or Pazarr, and then also Ms. Dolan, who made that so convenient, and so I'm really grateful for them. Lots of different fall festivals. I also personally attended the Fall Festival Trunk or Treat at Bernie's Matthews, and I can definitively say that Principal Coldani is the prettiest snow white I've ever seen. That was an amazing event, there was so much joy with those families being at that trunk or treat. I also attended the first ever trunk or treat at Collin Ranch Elementary School. Staying on Collin Ranch Elementary School, I was invited to join their continuous improvement process team, which is really amazing. So all of the schools, they have to set goals on areas where they want to improve, and they have to set specific paths for how they're gonna get there. It was really amazing to work with Principal Thurman and the leader teachers that were part of that group, so I was really honored to participate in that. I also supported Jesse Beck's Scarecrow Festival, and that was amazing to see the school all dressed up and all decorated. And if Principal Lane hears a recording of this later, I want you to know I need one of those famous pumpkin almond butter cookies that I was not able to get, but I want one next year. And then I'll close with a huge congratulations to Kevin Carroll, the principal of Sparks High School, for being named the Nevada Principal of the Year this past weekend. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Smith. Trustee Church?
Thank you, nothing controversial. The, starting Thursday, I believe it is, I'll be attending the Nevada Association of School Board Conference up at South Lake Tahoe, not to be confused with the national one, no relationship. And so I look forward to that, making many contacts and learning a lot about, you know, how they do it elsewhere in Nevada. Next week, I'll be up at Incline Village, visiting the various schools. And I have visited every school in my district in my ten months on the board, but I'll be heading back up there to have another look. I hope to get out to the Carlin Live-In Academy for At-Risk Kids, run by the state. I understand maybe there'll be some kind of a group effort later, that's kind of rumor control, but I do, at some point, definitely wanna get out and see that firsthand, that brand-new, run by the state for at-risk kids, kind of a military live-in type environment. So that concept really resonates with me, so I'd like to see how it, it works out. The other activity I was involved in was starting 8:00 AM today, I attended a special school board meeting, and it's 8:17 now, but it comes with the territory, I guess. I'd like, love to see meetings get a little shorter, because, you know, for the public and for us, but granted, we had meeting after meeting, it was just one of those things, but that was, that's what I did today, and that's about it. But I definitely look forward to the school board conference up in South Lake Tahoe.
Thank you, Trustee Church. We don't expect you to have board reports quite yet, Trustee Mayberry. Not, we don't expect you to have board reports quite yet, you haven't visited any schools or anything yet, but we'll certainly be in touch, and we'll make sure and get information to you about next week's State School Board Association meetings in Tahoe.
Thank you.
He has one scheduled, but he hasn't, he hasn't done it yet. Okay, hasn't done it yet, so we'll save that for when he does it. Two, okay, way to hit the ground running. For me, a couple things, the state, I had mentioned before that I'm on the executive committee for the state school board association, and we have a school, we actually, I represented us, Ellen went to the signature passport, I represent us on the, on the call for the state board, which, talking about some of the things going on nationally, as well as in preparation for the conference next week, I mean, yeah, is it next week or this week?
No, it's this week.
It's this week, I was gonna say, it's not next week, it's this week, right? Yes, this week, yes. Yes, I plan to be in Mexico, so I won't be there, so, Trustee Church, you gotta hold it down. Let's see, then on, oh, this past weekend, Saturday, I joined, did you have something for me?
No, it won't work.
Oh, man, we, I know, I heard, I heard the audio, dang it. Trustee Minetto and myself and the superintendent, and many members of the staff, we were out at Pumpkin Chunken? Yes, no, it's not Pumpkin Chunken, it's Pumpkin Chunken.
Pumpkin Chunken.
P-U-N-K-I-N, Chunken, and there, I believe, there were twenty-seven schools out, and they put, they, the STEM, the STEM, STEM teams put together little various apparatuses, some little, some big, right? And then for chunking pumpkins. And I had a great video that I took on my iPhone, but, but JJ, we can hear it, but we can't see it, so I'll work on that, I'll work on it.
If you come over afterwards, I can play it on my computer.
Okay, on her computer, but we can't get it to show, and it was, it was a really great chunk, probably the best chunk of the day.
It was a good chunk.
Yeah, it was a pretty, it was a pretty good chunk, but it was great, and, and then you're watching, the kids are all excited, and then, you know, somebody's apparatus will break right before, and then you get disappointed, but it was great. It was really great, great to, to be out there for that. And then on December 2nd, December 2nd, mark your calendars, you, I think all of my, all of my colleagues have this, we'll be doing a town hall, a town hall at HUG High School, and the topic on that, obviously open to the public, is getting some information, and would you like to see the new superintendent? And so I'll be doing that, and have an opportunity to hear from the community on that, as we begin to do that work, so. Okay, that's what we have. Superintendent?
Thank you very much, President Taylor. So just to reiterate, we had a great time at Pumpkin Chunken, and beyond just the, you know...
Pumpkin Chunken.
Pumpkin Chunken. Beyond just seeing pumpkins fly, it really is around STEM and physics, and the kids just spend a great amount of time on putting these apparatuses together and the catapults, but they couldn't do it without the teachers. And the teachers are there on a Saturday, but even beyond the Saturday, they help the kids put these apparatuses together. I wanna do a shout-out to our CTE Director, Josh Hartzog, just like totally blanked out, I know, Josh, I know. Josh, and, and Ms. Riley, or Ms. Smith, and then also Matthew McKay, without our administration being able to put all this together and getting our kids there. And then also, a very special thank you to Andaline Farms for hosting this every single year. I did some great school visits over at Lincoln Park and Maxwell, and I took Trustee Minetto with me, but it wasn't hard to get her there, she loved it, and we had a great time, seeing all of our kids and great instruction and professional learning communities in action. Attended the Coral Academy Elementary School grand opening, which was wonderful, recorded a video for jobs for Nevada graduates over at Reed High School. And then finally, we need to do a shout-out, last Friday was Clinic Aid Appreciation Day, and so we need to wrap our arms around all of our clinic aides and everything that they've been able to do to keep our kids, support our nurses, but they really do just a tremendous job on keeping our students and staff safe in our schools. So congratulations to all of our clinic aides, and happy, happy appreciation, late, related.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we'll move on to closing items, public comment. Do you have any closing public comment?
Kristen Dehan.
Welcome, Ms. Dehan.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Taylor, trustees, Dr. McNeil, and welcome, Trustee Mayberry, you are my at-large trustee. My name is Kristen Dehan, and I'm the parent of two AACT graduates, and I'm a social resource teacher at Drake Elementary School, which happens to be a neighborhood elementary school, or a neighborhood elementary school that begins at 8:30 in the morning. While I agree that the potential new bell schedule is a win for middle and high school students, there's so much research that points to tweens and teens learning better with a later start, I really feel it's a big loss for our elementary school students. I'm imagining students who live too close for the bus to pick them up, and yet they're also very far away, so that on those dark winter nights, the sun sometimes sets at 4:35, and so our elementary school kids would be walking home in the dark. Studies about start times for elementary school children are mixed, and while there are studies that show elementary school students may learn well in the afternoon when they sleep longer in the morning, many of these students would not be sleeping in, they would be in before-school care, so that they would not, they would still not be, they would still be getting up early, but instead of going to school, they would be going to their before-school care if their parents or guardians work. This leads to students who are already tired by the time that they arrive at school, and by 3:30, they are often dragging. My children went to Spanish Springs Elementary School, and at one point, they did have a 9:30 start time. It was rough. My kids were not the kids who slept in, ever, and I was a substitute teacher, and I often stayed at home. They regularly woke up between 5:00 and 6:00 AM, and by 3:00, they were dead tired and cranky. Something else to consider is the delayed starts. If our students start at 9:30 or 10:00, they wouldn't be starting school until 11:30 or 12:00. I feel that this would likely increase the absences, as many parents would just rather keep them home at that point. The options that made most sense to me, keeping the science in mind, were C, D, E, and F, because elementary school be starting early, 8:00 or 8:30, and middle and high school would either be starting at 9:00 or 9:30. If you decide to go with the nine or nine, with the 9:30 or 10:00 AM start time for elementary schools, I'm wondering about those neighborhood schools. Students live within walking distance to them, and the only busing is when there are special programs. The general education students are not on buses. They walk or are dropped off by their parents or guardians. I wasn't sure if all of the options that were in the survey were viable options or not. I don't know if the district has the fund, funding to be able to support all of those options, and so I'm unclear as to why they were included, if they aren't really viable options. Unrelated to that, I wanna thank you for the brave space training, because it was amazing, and probably one of the best trainings I have done in the district. So, thank you for your time, I appreciate everything.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Dehan, and thank you for your services, kids. Love it when the teacher show, other, other public comment?
Those are the cards I have. The district received emails from Janice and Patrick Flanagan, Heather Onis, John Ayers, Kidi Mosley, Emily Ayers, Allison Hatjacks, Nicole Griffith, Ashley Lavardur, Casey, Will Harper, Kristi Essa, Nicole Black, R. Scott Mead, Rachel Fisher, and Beth Martin.
Okay, thank you very much, JJ. Okay, this adjourns our meeting. Our next meeting is Thanksgiving week, November 23rd, right here, 2:00 PM, and Trustee Rodriguez, we know that you will be on a cruise. Okay, thank you, everybody, meeting's adjourned.